All right, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the California Coastal Commission Meeting Friday, May 9th, 2025. I'd like to ask Ms. Miller to please call the roll.
Commissioner Akiri.
Aki.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Present.
Commissioner Duhmlau. Commissioner Ecklerly.
Here.
Commissioner Escalante.
Here.
Commissioner Harmon.
Here.
Commissioner Redoni.
Here.
Commissioner Nadoff.
Here.
Commissioner Eranga.
Present.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
Chair Cummings.
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you very much. All right, today I'm going to get it right. We're going to go to virtual meeting procedures. So I'll turn it to Chris.
All right, thank you. Good morning. This Coastal Commission meeting is occurring both in person and through Zoom. This meeting is also being webcast and can be viewed online at cal-span.org. If you have access to the Internet and wish to watch or listen to the meeting only and not speak on an item, we recommend use the CalSpan website. Those who wish to address the commission today can do so in person, through the Zoom platform, or by phone. The speaker request forms may be found on the commission's webpage. Paper forms and a scannable QR code for paperless submittal are available on the commission's staff table just outside the meeting room. For those on Zoom, we have posted virtual hearing procedures on the commission's Agenda webpage, which is a guide on providing comments via Zoom or by phone. Members of the public speaking during general public comment may be given up to two minutes to speak at the discretion of the chair. Requests to speak during the general public comment period will not be accepted after 9:00 a.m. on each day of the meeting. In order to provide the opportunity for the broadest range of public participation, you may speak on a specific topic one time only each month. Those speaking on an agenda item that is not general public comment are typically allowed two to three minutes to speak at the discretion of the chair. We will accept a request to speak on an item up until the chair opens the hearing on that particular item. If you have access to the Internet, please go to the commission's webpage and click on the link to fill out a speaker request. If you do not have Internet access or prefer to testify by phone, please call the commission staff at (562) 477-9089. Again, that number is (562) 477-9089. Staff will provide you with a telephone call-in number and instructions for how to participate and provide testimony by phone. We will manage speakers coming in and out of the meeting through a meeting organizer. When it is your time to address the commission, the organizer will invite you to turn on your video and microphone or provide instructions on how to unmute the phone. Chair Cummings, that concludes the virtual hearing procedures.
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask County, or not County, the Commission Council to report out on closed session from yesterday.
Thank you, Chair Cummings. Yesterday, the commission met in closed session, and it received litigation information and advice, and took action on Friends of Oceanic Dunes versus Coastal Commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask staff if there's any changes to the regular agenda.
Good morning. We do have several changes this morning. And good morning, Chair Cummings, Vice Chair Aguirre, and commissioners. And those changes for today begin with Item 5B, which is postponed. That's the City of Long Beach CDP application. Item 9A is moved to consent. That's the County of Ventura LCP Amendment Time Extension for Density Bonus and Special Needs Housing. Item 10A is moved to consent, and that's the Santa Barbara City College Public Works Plan Amendment for a PE building replacement. Item 11A, the Santa Barbara City College Notice of Impending Development for the same PE building replacement. Item 11B, the Ventura County Channel Islands Harbor Public Works Plan Notice of Impending Development for Harborview Park. And Item 13A is postponed. That's the Villa Escondido Holdings LLC Amendment Application. Item 15B is moved to consent, and that is the Port of Los Angeles CDP application. And also, we have one change to the Agenda Changes Memo that you've received, and Item 16B, which was planned to be moved to consent, will keep on regular calendar today. That's the Consolidated Fire Protection District of Los Angeles CDP application. We had a significant number of speakers for that, about 12, so staff will be keeping that item on regular calendar. And we have one last change to the agenda today that was not listed in the Agenda Changes Memo, and that's Item 7A, the informational briefing on marine mammal research is postponed. So that concludes the changes to today's agenda. That brings us back to Item 4, General Public Comment. And with that, I'll turn the mic back to you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you very much. So we're on Item Number 4, General Public Comment. I'd like to turn it over to our AV staff for remarks on this. I did, I was contacted by a group, Trent Hodges and Save the Waves, as a group presentation, and so we can have the group presentation go first, and then we'll proceed with the rest of the people who are signed up for public comments. So I'll turn it over to you, Chris.
All right, thank you. For members of the public, I'll be announcing the names of the upcoming speakers and invite you to speak when it is your turn. Each speaker will be allowed two minutes to speak during general public comment at the discretion of the chair. In order to allow for live video testimony on Zoom, we will be bringing you in as panelists. As we bring you in, your Zoom will reload, and this may take a moment. To speed up this process, we will bring several people in at a time, but please remain muted and keep your video off until we ask you to speak. After your time is up, you'll be moved back to attendee mode. For members of the public present in the room, I will call your names in the order that they appear on our signup list. When you hear your name, please line up behind the podium and announce yourself with your name when you approach a speak. Several helpful tips, there is a raise your hand function that will help us find you in the attendee list. If you are using a phone for audio, you can raise your hand by dialing *9. If you are participating by Zoom, you should see a button on your Zoom screen. If you have signed up to speak for this item and are able to do so, please raise your hand now. When it is your time to speak, we will invite you to unmute and turn on your camera. You can unmute yourself on a phone by dialing *6. So today, we have 22 speakers signed up, and starting in the room, we have the group presentation, starting with Trent Hodges, David Revelle, and David Anning.
Trent Hodges.
Great, I think there's a presentation. Oh, sure. Great, thanks. My name is Trent Hodges, and I am the Senior Programs Manager for Save the Waves Coalition, an international nonprofit organization based in Santa Cruz with a mission to protect surf ecosystems around the globe. Today, I will speak about a project we are completing in collaboration with Integral Consulting and Black Surf Santa Cruz that reveals information about the importance of surf breaks in California to local economies and the impact of climate change on California's waves. I will speak generally about the project, and then my collaborators from Integral Consulting will detail some of the specific findings in our work. Next slide, please. As the official state sport, surfing is a revered activity in California and holds tremendous economic value for coastal communities. At the same time, surf breaks and their recreational, ecological, and economic value are highly vulnerable to climate change and associated sea level rise. This project determined the existing vulnerabilities and economic values of surfing locations in Santa Cruz, California, and evaluated what the future surf conditions and economic value could be under different adaptation approaches. Next slide, please. This project, oh, sorry, previous slide, thank you. This project, titled Climate Vulnerability of California's Natural Surfing Capital, is an Ocean Protection Council-funded project that utilized Santa Cruz as a pilot area to create a first-of-its-kind surf break vulnerability assessment, a detailed economic analysis of surfing, as well as a surf equity and historical barriers analysis. The project had three goals: demonstrate the importance of surfing and coastal management decision-making, provide critical information to decision-makers in the face of sea level rise, and finally, to understand and communicate the barriers to access for surf breaks in Santa Cruz. Next slide, please. This is the project area, which includes all 31 surf breaks inside the Santa Cruz World Surfing Reserve. With that, I will pass this to our partner, Integral Consulting, David Revelle, to discuss the results of the surf break vulnerability assessment, and I believe he's joining from Zoom. Thank you.
All right. Give us a second as we promote you as panelists.
We can pause the time, too.
Yeah, we had him signed up in person, but now we realize he's on Zoom.
Good morning, commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, great. Yeah, can I get the next slide, please? So this, so the surf break vulnerability assessment, we looked at 31 surf breaks in Santa Cruz. Most of these surf breaks are better at low tides, so as sea level rises, there's going to be less lower, low tides. The analysis of these breaks are primarily in cliff-backed areas, and so future analyses need to look at some other types of breaks around the state. But our data shows that with just one foot of sea level rise, all 31 of these breaks will start to see a decrease in the amount of surfable conditions. Without adaptation measures, by two feet of sea level rise, none of the surf breaks will function for more than half of the daylight hours, and five surf spots will be completely lost. For the adaptation strategies we considered, we considered the effect of adding or removing coastal armoring, changes from revetments to vertical seawalls, sand nourishment, and manager treat on sort of the number of surfable daylight hours. Next slide, please. This is, there's a lot to digest on this slide, but I really want, and a lot more results that will be coming out in our forthcoming report, but I wanted to give you a flavor of these results. For each break, results are compared to a baseline condition. So the top of each, the name of each break represents how frequently it currently breaks. If you look at natural bridges on the left, it breaks about 50% of the time during daylight hours. The top, the top of each of these, the bottom set of results, the top set of results on the relative surfability talks about how frequently that sea level rise elevations will decrease the amount of surfing time during daylight hours as sea level rises. The bottom set of dots shows what would happen if we take a different adaptation strategy than is currently being implemented under existing conditions. In some cases, we can see an increase in the amount of surfable time in the short term, perhaps when we exchange a revetment for a seawall, or over time, we can see that this becomes a difference in, we maintain surfability longer into the future. These have a lot of benefits, both to the community and to the economics of surfing, and for that, I'd like to pass it over to David Anning.
Hello, Commission. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you. Next slide, please.
Can you speak a little bit closer to the mic? Yeah, there you go.
Yeah. Hopefully, you can hear that better now. Okay, so we wanted to look at the economic values associated with use of surf breaks in Santa Cruz. As public trust resources, we don't have entry tickets. We need to do some sort of primary data collection to understand the values associated with the use of those surf breaks. And in this case, that's primarily through surveys. So we designed a survey. We have over 350 responses from people who surf in Santa Cruz, and that gives us information about how often they're visiting, when, where they're coming from, you know, demographic information about the uses of different breaks, including understanding which ones are most critical as kind of developmental breaks, that where people can come along as beginners and transition up to being able to surf the more advanced breaks. We had a number of objectives in designing that survey and working with Save the Waves and Black Surf Santa Cruz to ensure that we had good representation from previously underrepresented communities and people who don't participate in surfing as much as the general population, and that was supplemented with focus groups specifically led by Black Surf Santa Cruz. We also used cellphone data to understand how many people visit the breaks, and that also gives us information about the importance of surfing and access to people who live from much further afield. So anybody who's tried to rent or buy coastal property or to move close to surf breaks knows that there's a very high premium for people to live near the coast. That's not picked up in the figures that are on this slide. So really, here, we're presenting just the tip of the iceberg, and what that is telling us is that the recreational value, so the value of those trips that people are taking to recreate at the surf breaks is worth at least $162 million a year. And that's using very conservative assumptions on both the survey side and the cellphone data side. This was a pilot study. Santa Cruz is a World Surfing Reserve, has a measure of recognition, if not full, kind of regulatory protection. Our hope is to expand this out to a statewide study, and also, we're making policy recommendations for additional protections that can be afforded to surf breaks. That's linked to Assembly Bill 452, which is being considered at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers are Rachel Wilson, and then Steve Ray, and then we'll move on to our Zoom speakers.
Good morning, Rachel Wilson. I can't speak today on what an awesome job you do, because that was yesterday. So today, I am going to be moving on to battery energy storage systems. I was really excited to hear that there were new chemistries. By the way, I taught environmental science for about 10 years at the middle school level, and so it's close to my heart. And when I heard, wow, there is a great new chemistry out there called lithium-ion phosphate, and we have solved all of our battery energy storage systems, I thought, hmm, lithium still catches on fire, so I wanted to do some research, because that's what I taught my students to do. So here's what came up. While lithium-ion phosphate batteries are generally considered safer, okay, for a science teacher with middle school kids, safer is a huge difference from safe. It was explained to us that it would be safer to let a toddler sit in a bathtub full of water by themselves than to have them sit in a swimming pool by themselves, but no one would agree that that was safe. So safer is not necessarily safe. So anyway, they are not entirely immune to risk. And I was looking at Baker Risks reports, because they do energy risk surveys and studies. So then I said, well, have there been any problems? That's the next thing that went to my mind. Yes, there have been reports of fires in battery energy storage systems using lithium-ion phosphate batteries. While lithium-ion phosphate batteries are generally considered safer than lithium-ion chemistries, incidences have occurred. For example, in 2023, five out of the seven best fires involved lithium-ion phosphate batteries. I have asked San Luis Obispo County to create a moratorium for two years on any new projects until we can really get longitudinal safety data. Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you. Next is Steve Ray, and then our first Zoom speakers will be Susan Simon, followed by Walter Lamb, and then Mary Harrell. Steve Ray.
Well, good morning, Mr. Chair, commissioners, staff, and members of the public. My name is Steve Ray. I want to follow up on what Rachel Wilson was talking about in safe versus safer. It's safer to lay a loaded gun on the bedroom dresser rather than out on the living room coffee table. Is either one of them safe? Well, no. Leaving a loaded gun anywhere is not safe. Well, these lithium-ion battery plants are like a loaded gun. They're just waiting to go off. And like we wouldn't leave a loaded gun laying around, we're being asked now to leave these loaded guns, or build these loaded guns out there in our communities, endangering people generally, communities, endangering the environment, endangering wildlife. None of these are wise. So when we talk about safe versus safer, we need to talk about what's wise or wiser. If you saw great white sharks swimming in the ocean, would you go out and swim with them? No, you'd probably move down the coast a little and try to swim there. It might be safer, is it still safe? Because those sharks can move quickly through the water and come another 100 yards or 200 yards at you. So when we look at lithium-ion battery plants as a whole, we need to look at, are they safe at all? And if something is safer, what makes sense? What is wise to do and what is not, what is not wise? So we ask that, as these plants, projects come to you in the future, that you kind of keep this in mind, what is safe, what's safer, and what's unsafe just altogether, or what's wise, or what's not wise at all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, moving to our Zoom speakers, Susan Simon, followed by Walter Lamb, and then Mary Harrell. Susan Simon.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Susan Simon, co-chair of the Embarcadero Coalition. I appreciate the time to speak about the Seaport Project, and also say that myself and the Embarcadero Coalition stand in support of the California Coastal Commission against the affront that is Senate Bill 675. First slide, please. Second slide, please. I have three slides depicting the current scale and bulk of Seaport Village, this slide, as well as the massively overwhelming proposal known as the Seaport Project. Next. As you can see, the name is a total misnomer, as the current Seaport Village is but a portion of the central Embarcadero, while the Seaport Project seeks to redevelop the entirety of the central Embarcadero. Next slide, please. The developer, One Highway One, claims a project will add recreational open space to the central Embarcadero, but it doesn't. It has more concrete, but it deletes a ground-level green, often-used, three-plus-acre park in favor of a 320-foot-tall building. The buildings immediately near it get exponentially taller, creating a wall. The Port of San Diego's PMPU, next slide, please, has knowingly, I'm sorry, that was the slide I wanted, my apologies. The Port of San Diego's PMPU has knowingly and complicitly paved the way for this overdevelopment and seeks to fool the public and Coastal Commission with its lies. Lies such as the central Embarcadero will remain the same as it is today, even though they selected the developer in 2016 and had a detailed project description prior to approving the PMPU. Also, deleting several existing views in favor of only including ones that would still be present after the proposed redevelopment. The PMPU's EIR didn't include 40% of its managed lands, many with consequential projects underway, such as the Gaylord. Yet the EIR found 60% of the studied areas to be significant and unavoidable after mitigation, and they only studied periods during construction, not while in operation. Coastal Commission staff and the public asked the port to scale back the massive overdevelopment many times, yet the port's response was and is, we can do what we want. The grand jury didn't buy that response, and neither should any of us. Everyone should contact their state representatives to oppose Senate Bill 675 that is being used to handcuff the Coastal Commission in order to push through the Seaport Project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Walter Lamb, followed by Mary Harrell, and then Rachel Darling. Walter Lamb.
Good morning, commissioners. Walter Lamb, representing the Bino Wetlands Land Trust. I believe I have a video, and the purpose is to, you know, all state agencies right now are dealing with pressure from the federal administration, and I think there's a way to do it and a way not to do it, and this is kind of a case study of how not to do it. If you could play the video, please.
Last week, we had our Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission meeting. I sit on that commission in my role here as the representative for this board, and I just wanted to share a difficult conversation and vote that we had with regard to modifying the language that's in our current work plan so that it would comply with the new federal administration guidelines.
The text in highlight is referring to climate change, so we have reason to believe that if this phrase is included in the work plan, the work plan will be rejected by the U.S. EPA. It's actually with regard to ocean acidification hypoxia. We don't know, we don't know if that phrasing will be allowed, or we just don't know.
We need to do what we need to do in order to get grant funding, because grant funding is not by law, it's not by statute, it's just if they decide that they want to give it to us or not. The federal administration can do what they want and can decide not to give us money. There is no law that says they need to.
So I just want to, you know, again, this is something I think that every state agency, local agency, you know, universities, law firms is dealing with, and, you know, everyone needs to do that a little bit differently, but in this case, just some basic things. So first of all, almost all grant funding that comes from the government is governed by law and statute, and this one's no different. Clean Water Act, Section 320. The commission never asked for any legal guidance whatsoever, never contacted the Attorney General's office, never asked for what was being requested of them verbally, to be given to them in writing so that it could be analyzed. Just sort of a real panic, fear-based, you know, misinformation-based decision to water down a scientific work plan and remove, you know, scientific and terminology, things also taken out was environmental justice, equity, disadvantaged communities. So I just urge the commission and all state agencies to really put some thought into how you're going to address the pressure that's coming from the federal administration, this assault on the environment and on equity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mary Harrell, followed by Rachel Darling, and then Katie O'Donnell. Mary, I see that you're on a phone. You should be able to unmute now. You may need to dial, okay, there you go. I see that.
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you.
Okay. Hi, I'm Mary Harrell. I speak before you today, just not as a concerned resident of Hollywood Beach, but as a voice for our coast, our shared space, our fragile ecosystem, and our collective right to access and protect it. Recently, I learned and was shocked that Roundup, a chemical herbicide, will be sprayed on our coastal dunes. These dunes are not detachers of sand, they are living systems, home to native plants, wildlife, a natural defense against erosion and storm surge. Applying chemicals like Roundup in such a sensitive area raises serious concern, both environmentally and ethically. These cancer-causing chemicals have been banned in Europe. Also, the fact that access to many acres of our beach will be censored, restricting the public from enjoying a coastline that belongs to all of us. This was done without proper community consultation, without public notice, and without transparency. We were not informed. We were not asked, and this is not acceptable. Decisions that affect the environment and our access to public land must be made with the community, not behind closed doors. We demand to know, who approved Roundup? What environmental assessments were really done? And why were we not consulted before access to our beach was restricted? We're asking for accountability, for transparency, for respect for our rights, our health, and the land we live alongside. This is just not about sensors and chemicals. This is about trust, stewardship, and the kind of future we want to build for ourselves and for generations to come. Let's all stand together. Let's make sure our voices are not censored like our beach will be, and let's protect what is ours to share, not theirs to quietly take away. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Rachel Darling, Katie O'Donnell, and then Janet Rogers. Rachel Darling.
Hi all, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Good morning, commissioners and commission staff. My name's Rachel Darling, and I work at the University of Southern California Sea Grant Program. As some of you already may be aware, earlier this year, we published the results of the 2023 Survey of Coastal Practitioners. So this survey received responses from over 400 coastal practitioners who work throughout the state of California. So this assessment is the fourth in a series of surveys allowing for longitudinal insights into California's efforts to address sea level rise and other environmental change. The report discusses the areas in which coastal practitioners often face the most challenges and need the most resources. So the survey was conducted by us at USCC Grand in partnership with the Ocean and Coastal Policy Center at the University of California, Santa Barbara. We also want to express our thanks for the support by the California OPC and advice from the NOAA Office of Coastal Management. So this survey, along with a story map tool... So this survey, along with a story map tool that provides a quick overview of the major findings, can be found on the USCC Grant website at dorncif.usc.edu/usccgrant/costalpractitioner surveys, or you could simply just Google "USCC Grant Coastal Practitioner Survey", and it should be the first result that comes up. So we just wanted to share this work with the Commissioners and staff in hopes that this could be a useful tool for our shared work in protecting the coast. So thank you so much for your time and effort, and that's all I have for you today.
Thank you. Next is Katie O'Donnell, Janet Rogers, and then Rob Kent. Katie O'Donnell.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Awesome, thank you so much. Good morning, Chair Cummings and Commissioners. I'm Katie O'Donnell, representing WildCoast, an international coastal and marine conservation organization based in San Diego. Right now, the San De Guito Lagoon inlet in Del Mar is on the verge of closure due to a sand migration from Solano Beach Replenishment Project, a project funded by the state. We've seen catastrophic die-offs in other lagoon systems like San Alijo and the Tijuana River estuary within 72 hours of an inlet closure, and San De Gito is headed for the same fate. WildCoast is actively monitoring the situation with partner organizations and exploring emergency permits with the city of Del Mar, but this shouldn't be our only option. And while this current problem is taking place in Southern California, it could happen with any coastal sand replenishment project in the state. We urgently request your support to ensure that future state funding and permits for sand replenishment projects include crucial stipulations, including mandatory monitoring of sand movement, a proactive maintenance plans to prevent inlet closures, and pre-approved permits and funding for rapid inlet reopening within 72 hours if a closure occurs. To support us with this emergency, we ask for blanket emergency permits given to either the city of Del Mar and/or partnering NGOs to proactively address the situation before the San De Gito Lagoon inlet closes. Inaction will lead to another lagoon die-off jeopardizing species that rely on these lagoons and wasting countless resources used to protect these habitats and marine-protected areas. San De Gito can be home to many species, including federally listed endangered species, like the California lease turn, snowy plover, and light-footed ridgway rail, and fish species like California halibut. We need accountability and preventive measures to safeguard these vital coastal habitats and species. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next is Janet Rogers, Rob Kent, and then Sidney Harris. Janet Rogers.
I have a video.
Yes, give us a second to bring it up.
Okay. I'm Janet Rogers, co-chair of the Embarcadero Coalition. Please oppose Senate Bill 675. It establishes timelines to evaluate the central Embarcadero project. Next slide. It establishes timelines to evaluate the central Embarcadero project, but it limits your ability to deny the project and limits your ability to reduce the size of the project. This is not streamlining, this is legislative overreach, this is unique and new. Next slide. It sets a precedent for developers and local agencies to hobble state oversight agency in an attempt to force through unacceptable projects. This is a huge conflict of interest. The developers, local port agencies, city, and unions all have huge financial benefits enforcing the biggest project on the whole coast passed despite negative environmental impacts or failure to comply with the Coastal Act or Public Trust doctrine. Next slide. The massive Seaport Project is in the central Embarcadero. The port removed the central Embarcadero from the PMPU and stated that basically nothing is happening. Everyone knows that is not true and deceitful. Next slide. The developer and port are scared you're going to deny the project or request significant changes due to excessive density and environmental problems, so they're trying to manipulate the legislative process. Staff already warned the port of conflicts in 2022 with a detailed letter, but the Commissioners ignored it. Next slide. They identified problems with Section 30, 210, 211, 604, 233, and 234. Next slide. They questioned numerous aspects affecting Marocco Park, open space, visual resources, seismic fault zone, and the Public Trust doctrine. Do not let the developer and local agency eliminate your ability to protect the public interest, because they are scared of losing millions of dollars. Last slide. Please fight to reject SB 675. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob Kent, and then Sidney Harris, and then Catherine Rhodes. Except, I think we lost Rob Kent from the meeting. We'll move Rob Kent to be called later. Next will be Sidney Harris.
Hi, thank you, Commissioners, for this opportunity to speak today. I, my name is Sidney, and I live in Pacifica, just south of San Francisco. I spend almost every day for the past five years in the water, surfing or running around the trails in Pacifica, and I've been really passionate about getting involved with efforts and organizations to help protect the coastal spaces that I care a lot about. And I know this is near and dear to your hearts, since your mission is to protect and enhance the California coast. And two of the ways in which you do that is through strong public participation and education. And I wanted to highlight another organization that's doing incredible work in this space as well, and that's Queersurf. Next slide, please. Queersurf's mission is to connect queers to their bodies, the ocean, and an inclusive community, and to foster a sense of belonging in these coastal spaces. They're helping to build a strong connection to the coast among a community of people that has been underrepresented and continues to be underrepresented on the beaches and in the water. And over the past few years of my involvement with Queersurf, I've seen them do this by helping queers discover their own strength, joy, and creativity in and around the ocean, whether it's observing new to Bronx and tide pools and learning about marine ecosystems, or overcoming their fear of the ocean and ending a surf lesson by joyfully splashing in the water. And as a member of the queer community myself, and someone who's really passionate about helping people feel connected to the ocean, I think Queersurf is an incredible model for building strong, joyful, passionate, and diverse stewards of our coastal spaces, which we desperately need. And I wanted to highlight the importance of this organization and their work to the Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Catherine Rhodes, followed by Marcia Hanscom, and then Lydia Ponse. Catherine Rhodes.
Thank you so much. Please play my presentation, please.
Requested California Coastal Commission to encourage-
This is page two, can you start with page one, please?
If we can also just maybe start over with the time? Thanks.
Yeah, I think the audio isn't working with the PowerPoint.
Requested California Coastal Commission to encourage public use of government's entitled lands. Please tell the mayor to use the 77.2 million in capital outlay budgeted fund balance to keep the 18 public restrooms and 180 fire pits open, as final budget is released on May 14, 2025. Five restrooms are located at public beaches, including-
Five-
Fourteen restrooms are located in Mission Bay Park, including Brown Quads, Beach, Est Island, Ventura Cove, Hospitality Point, and along East Mission Bay Drive at Tackleody, North Yanza, and Playa Two. Closing public restrooms and fire pits in the coastal zone when existing funding from Public Trust tidelands are available will prevent the public, including children and low-income persons, from enjoying the use of those public access opportunities. Without public restrooms, many Californians will not visit or spend time at our public beaches in Mission Bay Park. Only people who live near the beach or can afford to stay at hotels or go to nearby restaurants will get to enjoy our public state lands. Closing all fire pits in Mission Bay and public beaches would discourage Californians from enjoying our public lands at night.
All right, we got the audio to work after all. Thank you. Next is Marcia Hanscom, followed by Lydia Ponse, and then Tank Sears. Marcia Hanscom, you should be able to turn your video on now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. Honorable Commissioners and staff, my name's Marcia Hanscom. This is not the video that I should have. Can you stop the timer, please, and put the correct one? This is for 16A. You should have-
Give us a second.
Okay, thank you. Great, thank you. Okay, so I want to speak about the fact that there is a war going on for the last 20 years against the waiting birds in Marina Del Rey on the Los Angeles coast. I'm coming to you from unceded occupied lands of the Gabrielino Shoshone Nation and Tongva people, and I'm speaking on behalf of Coastal Lands Action Network and Defend Bino Wetlands. Next slide, please. The birds here are attempting to live, that's all, but the humans at beaches and harbors don't want them to. Next slide, please. You can see, this is the kind of thing that happens constantly. Trees are being trimmed, quote trimmed, making them unsuitable for nesting. We have great blue herons, we have great, we used to have great egrets for a few years until this kind of trimming happened. We had snowy, we have snowy egrets, we have black-crowned night herons, and we now have yellow-crowned night herons because they're moving northward because of climate change. And so we have some very important waiting birds that are part of the coastal ecosystem here, and we really need a summit to save these egrets and herons, and we want your help, and here's why. There's a new report that Beaches and Harbors has posted that they caused a contractor to make, and that, that report says, let's just move the trees, let's just take them out, because all you have to do is replace them with one tree. Each tree can be just replaced, and we'll replace them with these small spidly trees that are completely not suitable for nesting. And so they're trying to get around the LCP, get around the Coastal Act, and your protection of coastal resources. We really need your help to work with the county supervisor, Holly Mitchell, to help us get the feedback in line. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Lydia Ponse, followed by Tank Sears, and then Leslie Purcell. Lydia Ponse.
Good morning, relatives. I wanted to talk about our connections, and this morning, with a heavy heart, as usual, I really want to speak to Women Nation in the room and on the phone. The Women Nation and our challenge that every day is a mother of a day, that's why every day is Mother's Day. We hold our children closer to our hearts, and we have this reverence of rising to our day, to all the executive orders that are signed, and we see that there's a beach cleanup, and it's very self-serving because it's only on our beach. We don't make the connection to our, the way that we live and the plastic waste and the fast fashion purchases that one makes on Third Street Promenade, or the businesses that survive. We cannot speak about the Tijuana River without speaking about the political implications of treating migrants as inhuman, that we're not seen as human. And we're also lifting up the word and the name of all the toxic poisons and chemicals in our oceans, and everything that globally we are doing to the ocean, and how unfit it is for all children of the world to put their feet and swim about and splash about and have that miracle and joy of celebrating the beach. I call upon these things to ask you to look up Hind Rajab, H-I-N-D-R-A-J-A-B, little girl who should have been seven years old, May 3rd, it was her birthday. But because of the bombing in Gaza, we are watching silently a genocide that is happening, and what of all the poisons, and what of all the chemicals there on these ocean shores that will eventually mix up and come around ours? So we are connected to everything that is being done over there and everything that is planned that doesn't have you or your children in mind, or the seven generations. I ask that we cease fire, that we call upon our so-called leaders, and that we call upon the divestment of this genocide. Long live Hind Rajab, free Palestine.
Thank you. Next is Tank Sears, followed by Leslie Purcell, and then Rob Kent. We see that you're back in the meeting. Tank Sears.
Hey, good morning, all. My name's Tank Sears, I'm a 45-year resident of the Hollywood Beach area and would like to discuss the proposed closure of a large swath of land on Hollywood Beach, spearheaded by Ventura County biologist Deborah Behringer. Her goal for the past 15 years has been to get the beach closed for the snowy plover, to protect the snowy plovers. On the surface, this appears to be a blatant violation of the minimum of the Coastal Act. Her mission to close the beach, the public has been conducted with zero community outreach or notification. Also, the issue that she refuses to acknowledge is the fact that a large portion of this area proposed to be closed is deeded private property to the mean high-tide line, overseen by an LLC, which in fact Deborah met with several years ago to ask permission to knock down the dunes and close off the area, but it was denied by the LLC due to the fact they wish to keep the beach open to the public for all to enjoy. So instead, she's backdoored her agenda in a clandestine manner via manipulation and half-truths. Bottom line, closing a large swath of public beach permanently for a bird that nesting pattern is only a small portion of the year is extreme and fanatical. The manner in which plovers have been cared for seasonally over the last 10-plus years with temporary fencing has been respected and worked well in the spirit of compromise, where the bird's nesting area is protected by temporary fencing. This allows the visitors the ability to enjoy the beach. In fact, the temporary fencing has been so successful that the plover numbers are increasing, according to Deborah's own studies via the Ventura County Arbon nesting reports, which, by the way, hasn't been updated since 2022. The proposed closure of Hollywood Beach is strongly contested by the vast majority of the homeowners in the area, since just recently having been made aware of this plan. I would beg the process be ceased immediately and at least a minimum looked into deeper to gain the true facts of the matter. Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Leslie Purcell, then Rob Kent, and then I'll start calling names that we aren't able to find in the Zoom meeting. Leslie Purcell.
Good morning, Commissioner. Leslie Purcell. I'm calling about an issue that I just fairly recently was made aware of again happening, which is the marine mammals washing up on our shores, and they're apparently dying from the effects of domoic acid and these large algae blooms. And it just is very distressing that part of the problem is runoff, and we have agricultural runoff with the nutrients and phosphorus and nitrogen, and apparently some of the runoff from the fire debris also could be contributing down in the LA area. But I'm up in Ventura County, and we've had humpback whales and other marine mammals washing up on shore. So I'm just bringing it up to the Coastal Commission, and I don't know if there's any policies that we could advocate for better farming practices and less use of these kinds of chemicals that might be helpful in some of these situations, but just wanted to bring up the attention of these marine mammals that, you know, we would like to be protecting and having, living their lives off our shores and not washing up as they have been. I'd also like to support Marcia Hanscom in providing habitat for great blue herons and the other shore birds, larger birds that live in the Marina Del Rey and Bino Wetlands area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rob Kent, we're having trouble promoting you as a panelist. I am allowing you to speak as an attendee. You should be able to unmute now.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, we can hear you.
I'd also like to support Marsha Hanscom in providing habitat for great blue herons and the other shore birds, larger birds that live in the Marina Del Rey and Biona Wetlands area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rob Kent, we're having trouble promoting you as a panelist. I am allowing you to speak as an attendee. You should be able to unmute now.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. My name is Rob Kent. I'm from the city of Los Angeles, USA. Just wanted to bring sort of a little attention to the issue of commercial advertising on the coast. We have guard towers here in Los Angeles that are used to promote commercial activities, and I really think we should stay away from that. The coast should, insofar as possible, be, be beautiful and not obstructed with commercial signs and not using lifeguard towers as billboards. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And now for the names that we aren't able to find in the Zoom meeting. If I call your name, please raise your hand. Jordan Gonzalez, Michael Walscheck, Julia Pinkham. Again, those names are Jordan Gonzalez, Michael Walscheck, Julia Pinkham. Okay, Michael Walscheck just popped in. Michael, when you're able to, please unmute and begin. Okay, Michael dropped out of the meeting again. And I'm seeing no other hands raised. We'll give it just one second if he comes back. Okay, I don't, I, uh... I'll turn it over to you, Chair.
All right, thank you very much. So I'll bring it back to the Commission. Any questions, comments, or anything that was brought up during public comment? Commissioner Gary.
Thank you very much. I just want to thank all the speakers for joining us today, and I also want to specifically thank Save the Waves. I thought their presentation was very interesting. I think it's very important to collect this data as we wrestle with sea level rise and to better understand the surfonomics of, of the sport of surfing. Obviously, I'm an avid surfer, and I did have some questions that I would like potentially address in the future relating to, you know, the effect of sea level rise on cliffs, because obviously cliffs, once the seas rise, there's not going to be a way for any surf break to be saved in that regard. But armaring effects, of course, I want to better understand what those are. And I would also ask if these, this study specifically, which I understand is funded by the OPC, is being done in other areas, and what the effects of man-made pollution potentially have as well on, you know, affecting access to surf spots up and down the coast. I think that would be incredibly important to not just understand, but understand the economic impact of losing that recreational opportunity, not just to sea level rise, but also to pollution. So I would love if in the future they could come back and, and help address those questions in a perhaps more formal presentation in the future. Thank you.
Commissioner Nala.
I was just going to also thank the speakers and all, and they would be helpful, I think, if the staffer, we could be given the links to the, both the study by Save the Waves and the Coastal Practitioners Survey that the USC put together. I think both of those are, have broad application that would be useful for our work.
Thank you. Just to note, we do have the second one you mentioned, the Practitioner Survey. They've actually come before, and we've, we've been, we've connected with them, and we have links to those surveys. So if you're, if anybody's interested, let me know, and I'm happy to pass it along. Thank you. But we'll look at the other one, too.
Commissioner Yaranga, and then Commissioner Echol.
Thank you, Chair. My comment mostly ended in a question about SB 675, the seaport development in San Diego. I recall we had a discussion on this several years back, and one of the issues that was there was the fact that the harbor or the port of San Diego was growing on its own, and crossing that line between a public entity doing private development. So I guess I'd like to know a little bit more about SB 675 and what it actually does in terms of empowering the port or the development that is proposed to take place in that area.
Thank you. To the Chair, Commissioner Yaranga, we, we discussed this a little bit on Wednesday when Sean was here doing the legislative report. So SB 675, I'll just be brief, and we can do a more fulsome report again next month. There's probably going to be changes to report at that time, anyway. So this was introduced by Senator Padilla. This bill, in its current form, does raise some concerns, I think, for the staff, but we were able to meet with Senator Padilla, and I was able to go to the Senate Resource, Natural Resources Committee hearing for this item, and I think that we're, we're working closely with the Senator's Office to focus on their issues related to timing and some of this certainty and what the review process would look like. But, and we did get some commitments from Senator Padilla about not wanting to undermine the Coastal Act and ensure that our review authority was intact. So it's an, it's an active discussion right now, and we're, and we're working with the Senator's Office and with committee staff on what the edits to the bill look like. So it's, it's a work in progress, and we'll report on it again next month.
Okay, thank you. I unfortunately would not be here next month, but, but of course, I'm still interested in, in the outcome of that discussion. And I just want to end with, it was said earlier, my constituent Ponse, Happy Mother's Day to everybody. On May 10th of every year, Mrs. Escalante knows, in Latina, Latin, Women's Day, no matter what day falls, but Happy Mother's Day to all you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Echol.
I appreciate those comments. I also want to thank Save the Waves and Integral for that presentation while the Ocean Protection Council funded that project. That was the first time that I had seen kind of the, the findings. It sounds like that grant is wrapping up, and so I really appreciated that overview and looking forward to digging in more to the full report. Commissioner Gary, I just also wanted to flag for you that OPC has funded the development of a beach resiliency plan in partnership with Dr. Lester at UCSB, and that is going to look at kind of where do we have places where we can have beach migration inland, and where are those places that are backed by cliffs or bluffs where we are probably going to lose our beaches and may have other impacts for places like surf breaks? So that is anticipated to be done in 2027, but I can keep the Commission updated as we have more near-term findings and deliverables.
Any other questions or comments from Commissioners? Seeing none, I just want to share the appreciation for the report that was brought forward by Save the Waves and Integral Consulting, and if they're still on, we just want to invite them to Santa Cruz County Board Meeting to provide that presentation. I think it's really important for us, as we're having discussions around sea level rise, to also think about the economic impacts, and given that surfing is something that's really important for the state of California, it's a part of our identity, to understand the potential fiscal impacts of losing surf breaks, I think is really important for us to take into consideration. So we can have a longer presentation in the future, and also maybe if they can do presentations in other communities, I think it's really important for us to understand how climate change will also impact surfing and how that financially will impact our state as well. So with that, we'll move on. The next item on our agenda is item number five, Consent Calendar, and so I'll turn it back to staff to provide just an intro on the items that are on Consent Calendar.
Thank you. And item five is the Consent Calendar for all districts on the agenda today. There's only one item on the Consent Calendar. We're not aware of any opposition to this item, and the applicant is in agreement with the staff recommendation. The staff is recommending the Commission vote and approve the Consent Calendar. Staff is available for questions.
All right. Are there any expartes? Seeing none. Are there any members of the public sign up to comment on any of the Consent Calendar items?
We just have the applicant available for questions.
Okay, bring it back to the Commission for action.
Make a motion to move to consent. Second.
Motion by O'Malley, second by Wilson, to move items. Maker of the motion is asking for a yes vote. Given that there's no one online, I want to see if the Commission's okay with unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, that passes unanimously. Okay, with that, we'll move on to the next item, which is Consent Calendar. Items removed from regular calendar to consent. I'll turn it back to staff for a brief overview of the items that are being removed.
Thank you. Item six is for applications to be moved from regular to the Consent Calendar today for all districts on the agenda. As mentioned, during the agenda changes this morning, there are six, five items, five items that staff recommends be moved to consent, and those are item 9A, County of Ventura LCP Amendment for Density Bonuses and Special Needs Housing Time Extension. Item 10A, Santa Barbara City College Public Works Plan Amendment for a physical education building replacement. Item 11A, the Related Notice of Impending Development for the same Santa Barbara City College Physical Education Building Replacement. Item 11B, Ventura County Channel Islands Harbor Public Works Plan Notice of Impending Development for the Harborview Park. And item 15B, the Port of Los Angeles Application, also for a park. Although staff was not aware of any opposition at the time, the staff reports were prepared. Staff did receive emails objecting to one of the items mentioned, and staff is recommend, that staff is recommending be moved to consent, and that was an anonymous email objecting to the Santa Barbara City College PWP Amendment and Related Notice of Impending Development for that school gym building. In regard to the objection to the Santa Barbara City College item, staff would note that project is the replacement of an existing campus gym building with a new gym building of approximately the same size and the same location, and it's not anticipated to result in any new impacts to coastal resources. The opponent generally raised issues that are not related to the proposed development itself, but to alleged violations on campus, which will be reviewed by Commission staff separately. The opponent also raised issues relative to concerns regarding liquefaction and geologic stability, and I would just note that the college did prepare a geotechnical engineering investigation, and their engineers found the project would ensure a geologic and engineering stability. So, and this issue was further and fully addressed in the staff report and in the addendum. Thus, staff continues to recommend this item be moved to the Consent Calendar today. Thus, in closing, staff is not aware of any opposition to the other items being moved to the Consent Calendar, and we're recommending that the Commission vote and approve this item. Staff is available for questions.
All right, thank you very much. Any expartes? Seeing none. Any members of the public sign up to speak on these items?
I know, just one available for questions.
Okay, bring it back to the board for, to move the items. I'll move the items on consent, move to consent, excuse me.
Second.
So a motion by Commissioner Wilson, second by Commissioner Harmon. The makers of the motion are asking for a yes vote. Do I see any objection to unanimous consent? Seeing none, that passes unanimously, and that moves us on to our next item on the agenda. Item number seven, Energy, Ocean Resources and Federal Consistency. So turn it back to staff to see if there's any information to be presented on this item.
Yes, thank you. Item seven is the Deputy Director Report for the Energy, Ocean Resources and Federal Consistency Division. We have two negative determinations to report this month, as well as one CDP waiver and one immaterial amendment for your consideration. No comments or objections have been received on these items, but we do have several speakers who are available for questions. We are asking whether three or more Commissioners object to any of the items in the Deputy Director's Report.
All right, any expartes? Seeing none. Any members of the public sign up to speak on this item?
We have, we have a number of people available for questions.
Okay, so we'll bring it back to the Commission. Do three or more Commissioners object to the Deputy Director's Report and Recommendations? Seeing none, Commission concurs. That moves us on to item number eight, South Central Coast Deputy Director's Report, and I'll turn it back to staff for the report on that item.
Thank you. Item eight is the Deputy Director's Report for the South Central Coast District. It includes two permit waivers, one emergency permit, one emergency waiver, and two certification reviews. In regard to that emergency permit, I would note that it was issued to the Ventura Port District for one-time removal of wind-blown sand from roadways, parking lots, pathways, sidewalks, and redistribution of that sand on the beach. In addition, the emergency permit waiver being reported today was for the Gleta West Sanitary District in Santa Barbara County for emergency clean activity, cleanup activities and repair of wastewater pipeline that occurred in November of 2024. And that cleanup was in response to a pipeline break and spill of approximately 10,000 gallons of untreated sewage, and that was necessary to prevent ongoing impacts to water quality and sensitive habitat. In regard to the two certification reviews being reported, there are therefore an LCP Amendment by the City of Carpinteria to modify its housing element zoning plan, and a long-range development plan amendment by the University of California at Santa Barbara, and that amendment was to facilitate a new student housing development. The city's amendment was approved by the Commission at its March meeting, and the university's LRDP Amendment at our April meeting, and the Executive Director has determined that both the local government and university's subsequent actions, excepting all of the Commission's suggested modifications pursuant to a resolution, is legally adequate, and that these amendments will become certified upon being reported to the Commission. These matters are being reported today pursuant to our regulations and do not require any additional action or concurrence by the Commission. Staff is not aware of any opposition to any of the other items being reported today, and we are asking whether three or more Commissioners object to any of the items in the Deputy Director's Report. I am available for questions.
All right. Any expartes? Seeing none. Any members of the public sign up to speak on this item?
Yes, we have one speaker, James Walker, who I believe wishes to speak on the emergency permit. James Walker, you're being moved in as a panelist right now. You should be able to unmute when you're ready.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. My name's James Walker. I'm the Athletic Director at Ventura College, and I'd like to discuss the possible removal of the beach volleyball courts at the Ventura Harbor. Since 2016, when our women's beach volleyball program started, we've had nearly 120 feet of.
Let me, let me pause you for a sec. This is actually an item that's on the agenda that's not the Deputy Director's Report, so we will bring you back in when that item is heard, so my apologies.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. All right, so no other comments?
There's no other comments.
Okay, so we'll bring it back to the Commission. Do three or more Commissioners object to the staff recommendation? Seeing none, Commission concurs. That brings us on to our next item, which is item number 12, Coastal Permit Applications, application number 4-23-0184, Sandu LLC, Santa Barbara. I'll turn it to staff for the presentation on this item.
All right, thank you. And item 12A will be presented by Michelle Cabron via Zoom. Michelle is the Commission's Coastal Resiliency Coordinator and Supervising Analyst in our South Central Coast District. If we could pull up the PowerPoint, please, and Michelle, please take it away.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Item 12A is a consolidated CDP application of Sandu LLC for the construction of a new single-family residence on a vacant parcel at the end of a sandspit in the Carpinteria area of unincorporated Santa Barbara County. Although the county of Santa Barbara has a certified local coastal program, the proposed development is partially within the Commission's retained permit jurisdiction, and both the county and the applicant have requested the Commission process a single consolidated CDP application for the development. Next slide, please. As you can see on this slide, the property outlined in yellow is located at the mouth of the Carpinteria Slough, which is a tidally-influenced salt marsh. The parcel size is 8.95 acres, however, the majority of the parcel is located in the ocean, with the dry usable portion of the parcel being about 1.15 acres. Next slide, please. The proposed residence includes 3,550 square feet of habitable living space on a raised single-story. On the ground floor, a 771-square-foot screened-in carport and a 416-square-foot utility vault and elevator would be located. The structure would also include a deck and two sets of stairs that would cover 1,667 square feet, and an elevated 335-square-foot pool and hot tub would be located on the same level as the habitable floor. The entire structure would be supported by 28 The entire structure would be supported by 28 concrete caissons. Next slide, please. Biological surveys of the site were conducted by the applicant's biologist, who identified the site's dominant habitats as dune mat, which consists primarily of native dune vegetation and is shown in yellow on this slide, and ice plant mat, which is dominated by non-native ice plant and other non-native species, shown in pink on this slide. Commission ecologist Dr. Johnna Engel also visited the site and found that in addition to the area identified as dune mat habitat, the area dominated by ice plant had a sandy substrate that supported subtle dune morphology. Additionally, Dr. Engel observed individuals and small patches of native southern fordune species throughout the ice plant mat area. For these reasons, Dr. Engel determined that the area identified as ice plant mat by the applicant's biologist is actually degraded southern fordune habitat that meets the definition of environmentally-sensitive habitat area or ESHA. And therefore, based on Dr. Engel's determination, the project site contains 1.07 acres of dune ESHA. The project proposes the permanent removal of .16 acre of dune ESHA, as well as temporary construction impacts to an additional .19 acre of dune ESHA. Coastal Act Section 30240 requires that only uses dependent on the resources within ESHA are allowed to be located in ESHA, and requires ESHA to be protected against significant disruption of habitat values. Because the development is proposed within dune ESHA, but is not a use dependent on the ESHA resources, it is inconsistent with Section 30240. Next slide, please. In addition to ESHA concerns, there are also concerns associated with coastal hazard risks to the site. The site is located within a designated coastal high-hazard area pursuant to the county's flood hazard overlay, as well as two FEMA-designated special flood hazard areas, which are defined as areas that would be inundated during a 100-year flood. These designations clearly indicate the site's vulnerability to coastal hazards today, and as the coastal hazards analysis for the project demonstrates, the site will become increasingly more vulnerable as sea level continues to rise. For example, the Cosmos Flood Model predicts that with 2.5 feet of sea level rise, portions of the road and the site will become permanently inundated, which are the blue areas shown on this slide. This could happen within the 75-year design life of the structure, which begs the question of how the development would be accessed and whether municipal services, which run through the road, would be maintained. Clearly, there are significant risks associated with having residents in this location, but that is the applicant's choice to develop here, and provided that they internalize and accept those risks, including by avoiding any future shoreline armoring, the project could be conditioned so that it is consistent with the coastal hazard policies of the Coastal Act. Next slide, please. As stated previously, Section 30240 of the Coastal Act limits allowable development within ESHA to resource-dependent uses only. A single-family residence is not an allowed use within ESHA, and on that basis alone, the Coastal Act directs that the CDP application be denied. However, denying the application would raise questions about whether such an action would result in an unconstitutional taking of private property without just compensation. As laid out in the staff report, commission staff conducted a full takings analysis, and we concluded that a court could find that the commission's denial of a CDP for this project could result in an unlawful taking of private property. But while Section 30010 of the Coastal Act states that the applicant is entitled to a reasonable economic use of the property, it does not authorize the commission to ignore the remaining provisions of the law when acting on this application. Therefore, staff recommends that the commission require a modified project that addresses its Coastal Act inconsistencies as much as possible while allowing for a project that provides a reasonable economic use of private property to avoid a taking. Staff considered several alternatives, including four that were initially provided by the applicant, as well as three that staff requested the applicant provide, including a 500-square-foot structure, a 1,000-square-foot structure, and a 1,500-square-foot structure. After considering all of the alternatives and analyzing the site-specific constraints, including setbacks from the marsh and the mean-high tideline on the seaward side of the property, staff concluded that protecting the ESHA that consists primarily of native dune species by providing a minimum 25-foot setback from that area, as shown here on this slide, while also minimizing the footprint of development encroaching into dune areas consisting of non-native vegetation to the extent feasible, would best serve to protect the dune habitat on-site and the surrounding ESHA while also providing a reasonable-sized area to construct a residence. The resulting development footprint would allow for an approximately 2,500-square-foot home and, as shown here, a small deck and swimming feature. Therefore, we recommend Special Condition 1 to require modification of the proposed residence to meet a 25-foot setback from the dune mat habitat. We also recommend Special Conditions 2 through 15 to minimize risks from coastal hazards, require mitigation for impacts to ESHA, and to ensure the development avoids other adverse impacts to biological resources, water quality, public access, visual resources, and tribal cultural resources. There are two addendums for this item. The first makes two minor corrections to Special Condition 1G and Special Condition 9, as well as to attach correspondence received from members of the public, and based on those comments, to make an additional change to Special Condition 1E to require window treatments in order to prevent nighttime light spillover from the interior of the residence. The second addendum responds to correspondence and revised site plans the applicant provided after publication of the staff report. The applicant's representatives informed commission staff that the applicant is generally in agreement with the staff recommendation, provided the changes to allow, to the allowable footprint of the residence shown on their revised site plans is approved by the commission. Commission staff worked with the applicant's agents to ensure the revised site plan meets the requirements of Special Condition 1, with the exception of allowing a staircase that would be sited further seaward than the proposed residence, but would also be sited entirely within the area of the existing gravel driveway, as shown in yellow on this slide. To allow for this exception, commission staff recommend changes to Special Condition 1A, which are included in the second addendum. In closing, staff recommends that to avoid a potential taking, the commission find that the proposed project, if modified, is as consistent as possible with the Chapter 3 policies of the Coastal Act and approve the CDP application with 15 special conditions, beginning on page 6 of the staff report. The motion to accomplish this recommendation can be found on page 5 of the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation, and in addition to myself, Jeremy Smith, our coastal engineer, as well as commission ecologist Dr. Johnna Engel are available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any expartes on this item? Okay, Commissioner Harmon.
Thank you, Chair Cummings. On Friday, 5/2, I spoke with Mark Masara and Jared Ficker via Teams. They were representing the applicant. We spoke briefly about the site and the process. They indicated that the applicant is generally in agreement with the staff report and recommended conditions, and they also noted that they were revising the plans to comply with those conditions. This morning, I guess 5/9, I spoke further with the, with the applicant's representatives in person for about 15 minutes, where they acknowledged that they were indeed able to revise the plans and expressed gratitude to staff for their work and that they're generally happy for the positive result all around.
Thank you very much. So then, I guess we will open up to the applicant. Is there a representative for the applicant here to speak on this item?
Yes, we have Mark Masara.
And then, how much time will you need?
I'm going to be very brief and maybe reserve a couple of minutes if rebuttals needed. Honorable Chair Commissioners, I'm Mark Masara, and I'm representative of the applicant. This project is the result of a rigorous seven-years review process. Over three years at the county of Santa Barbara and now over three years with your staff, we have collaborated very, very closely to ensure that over 99% of this nine-acre parcel will be permanently protected and that over $1 million of habitat restoration will occur as a result of this takings avoidance project. And, and while we are gratified to have been able to come to this result with your staff, this has taken a whole lot of work on our part to be able to fit what is now a very small home, the smallest house built on Sandpoint Road since 1948, into a very constrained envelope of previously disturbed area on this property. We very much appreciate your support of the staff recommendation, and thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So, are there any members of the public signed up to speak on this item?
I guess we have one person signed up, Dr. Andrew Brooks.
All right.
You're being promoted as a panelist right now. When you're able to, you can unmute and begin. Andrew Brooks, we see that you're in, okay, now that you're unmuted.
Members of the commission, thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Dr. Andrew Brooks, and I am the Reserve Director for the University of California Natural Reserve Systems Carpinteria Salt Marsh Reserve. I am here to speak in opposition to the proposed development of the property located at 501 Sandpoint Road. As a state trustee agency, the UC Natural Reserve System has jurisdiction by law over its natural resources and is tasked under the California Constitution with protecting these natural resources for the people of California. The Carpinteria Salt Marsh is a 230-acre state and federally-protected estuary and wetland immediately adjacent to the proposed development site. The marsh provides critical habitat to over 100 species of native plants, including the endangered salt marsh birdbie, salt marsh goldfields, and the once-thought-extinct Ventura marsh milkveach. The marsh is home to over 200 species of birds, including the endangered California leisurn, belving savanna sparrow, and westing snowy plover, and almost 40 species of marine fishes, including the commercially and recreationally important California halibut. Additionally, the Carpinteria Salt Marsh represents one of the most studied coastal wetlands on the planet, serving as a protected outdoor laboratory and classroom for local and international scientists, graduate and undergraduate students, and as an important reference site for the commission's own mandated restoration of the Sandy Agito Lagoon as mitigation for the operation of San Onofre Nuclear Generating Station Units 2 and 3. According to the commission's own staff report, the proposed development of the property located at 501 Sandpoint Road would result in the permanent loss of protected environmentally-sensitive habitat, specifically southern fordune and the unique plant and animal species supported by that habitat, resulting in a loss of marsh biodiversity. The proposed 20-foot setback from the marsh is insufficient to protect populations of fishes or invertebrates that utilize the mouth of the estuary as nursery or spawning habitats from increased freshwater runoff, motor vehicle waste and emissions, and general disturbance. Further, this 20-foot setback will only decrease over time due to sea level rise. The large expanses of windows, no matter how they are treated, increase bird strikes. In summary, the UC Natural Reserve System as a state trustee agency with jurisdiction by law over the Carpinteria Salt Marsh's natural reserves is in opposition to the proposed development of 501 Sandpoint Road and is in strong agreement with the conclusion reached in the commission's own staff report, which states in part, no amount of conditions.
Thank you so much.
... residents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. No other speakers.
Okay, so we'll bring it back to staff to see if there's any comments on what was just said during public comment.
Okay, thank you. I would just note in response to the speaker who noted that there would be impacts to environmentally-sensitive habitat, that as explained in the staff report, there will be impacts to environmentally-sensitive habitat. We do believe we've worked to minimize those. And of course, a residential use is not an allowed use with environmentally-sensitive habitat as only resource-dependent uses could ever be allowed within a sensitive habitat area pursuant to Section 30240 of the Coastal Act. Thus, as explained in our staff report, the only reason that staff is recommending approval of this is to avoid illegal takings. And that's why we have worked very closely with the applicant to minimize the footprint of the house. I think we have reached an appropriate balance of really minimizing adverse impacts to the dune habitat on-site, respecting all the constraints on this property, which, as Michelle had explained, was really this property that's sandwiched between a rock for vetment and the slough, and abiding by those setbacks to the extent feasible. So with that, I'll just note that staff is available for any questions, and we're happy to respond.
Thank you very much. All right, any questions, comments from commissioners? Commissioner Wilson.
There's a removal plan in here. There, there's a, and I was just wondering about that. It says that the, that the caisson foundations would be removed if the, if required, and I was just wondering, and then there would be a plan to do that? I was just kind of wondering, I mean, have we, we've never really gotten to that place yet in any of these projects, and this is pretty significant. I mean, these are caissons. This isn't just like some kind of foundation that's like on the hillside or, you know, perimeter foundations. It's literally caissons, and I was just, is there, what's the financial hook that actually requires someone to do that if they choose to walk away from this property?
The condition would ride with the land, so this is a condition on the, on all future property owners, that if any of those particular conditions are met, then that property owner is required to remove the caissons at that point in time.
Yeah, I mean, living in a county with abundant abandoned cannabis farms that were all required to remove much less substantial infrastructure than 28 caissons or whatever it is on here, I just, I find that to be somewhat dubious. But that's just me. And also, you know, I just have to make the point that the applicant made, which was, you know, this is the smallest house on this, on this, or footprint. But nonetheless, the reasonable expectation of economic use is based on the neighborhood and not on anything else, really, which is interesting to me because that means that, you know, that those resources, the public trust resources, the ESHA, are less protected in neighborhoods where the homes are bigger, right? And so it's an, it's just an entrenched sort of inequity, I guess I would say. It feels like to me a little bit, and maybe I'm wrong about that, but it just, because the expectation comes from its, from its location, not necessarily from what we imagine to be a house that you can live in. For instance, I live in a much smaller house than this. And so, I mean, it's just from my experience. And so I just, it's always something that's kind of like bugged me about this, this, this analysis. I just, I, and I know it's, it's something that is entrenched in that, and it's kind of longstanding. That being said, this is, you know, I think this is the best the staff can do in this, in this situation. I think it's an odd spot to have private property in general. I mean, it's in, from the perspective of, of, you know, it, it just completely overlays public trust resources. And it would be a weird place, at least in my neck of the woods, where, where someone would even consider building anything at all. But that's just me. I mean, I'm tepidly supportive of this, of this proposal as written by the staff. I do think it's the best they can do in a situation that I find a bit objectionable. That's just me. Thanks.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yeah, thank you. I just kind of want to echo Commissioner Wilson's comments, also kind of have tepid support. And I think, you know, you, you mentioned that the, the obligation runs with the land, but as I see it, I mean, if they're ordered to take out this caisson, that land is worthless anyway, and some, whoever owns it could, clearly bankruptcy, walk away or whatever, and so that's my concern. I guess my one question is, and I think the answer is no, is there any way for the commission to actually sort of have the applicant put funds in, in, you know, in hold for future possibilities? And I don't know if that's possible, but I just want to put that out there.
Yes, through the chair. That would require a condition. We have done that in certain limited cases, either through deposit of money into a special account or securing a bond. In this case, there is not a condition requiring that.
Thank you. All right, are there any other commissioners? Commissioner Hartman.
Thank you, Chair Cummings. Well, I'll just say, I, I want to recognize the comments of my colleagues who have spoken. This is obviously complex. It's not the first time we've faced a, a situation like this, and unfortunately, I don't think it will be the last. There are legal realities, though, that we're facing and trying to thread the needle between our constitutional obligations and our obligations to the Coastal Act. And, and I, I just want to recognize the complexity there and appreciate the work of our staff to really try to get to the best possible result and to the applicant as well, for his willingness to engage and to respect the conditions as they've been set forth. And I, I guess I want to just lift up. And I, I guess I want to just lift up that sort of tepidness. I, I hear you. I think this is going to be an ongoing conversation and challenge as, as we move forward and have more and more of these cases. So with that said, I'm, I'm willing to make the motion when the time is right.
Go for it.
Thank you, Chair. I move that the commission approve coastal development permit 4-23-0184 pursuant to the staff recommendation, and I am asking for a yes vote.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so a motion by Commissioner Hartman, second by Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner, do you have comments? Oh, no, okay. Before we move forward, I do want to thank staff for all their work on this and trying to minimize the impacts to the greatest extent feasible. I will just say, and I don't want anybody to follow me down this path, but I'm going to vote no out of protest because I just think that this is, I personally think this is a horrible location for putting housing, as we're experiencing sea level rise. And, you know, we've had a long discussion yesterday about, you know, trying to get communities to move away from the coast and trying, you know, providing armoring and time for people to move, like, infrastructure, and the fact that we're going to drop a house in this location makes absolutely no sense to me. I mean, the probability of it washing away is probably greater than anything else than that being there for the next 100 years, and good luck with insurance, but maybe you don't need it. So I'm going to entertain a protest vote, but I don't want anybody to go down that road with me. But I agree with the folks from UC, the UC Reserve. And, and so with that, I'll ask for Ms. Miller to make a roll call vote. We have a motion by Commissioner Hartman, second by Commissioner Wilson, maker of the motions asking for a yes vote, and so with that, let's do the roll call.
Commissioner Akurty?
Yes.
Akurty, yes. Commissioner O'Malley?
Tepid, yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Escalante?
Come back to me, please.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Hartman, yes. Commissioner Rodoni?
Yes.
Rodoni, yes. Commissioner Nada?
Come back to me, please.
Commissioner Uranga?
Reluctantly, yes, aye.
Uranga, yes. Commissioner Wilson?
No.
Wilson, no. Commissioner Escalante?
Yes.
Escalante, yes. Commissioner Nada?
No.
Nada, no. Chair Cummings?
No.
Cummings, no. The vote is six yes, three no.
All right, thank you very much. With that, let's move on to our next item, which is 12B, application number 4-24-0248, Ventura Point, Ventura Port District. I'll turn it to staff for the presentation on that item.
Thank you, and that does bring us to item 12B, which will be presented via Zoom by Tyler Ladell, a coastal program analyst in our South Central Coast District. We do have a PowerPoint, if we could pull that up, please, and Tyler, please take it away.
Good morning, commissioners. Item 12B is the CDP application of the Ventura Port District for a sand management plan for sand management activities and maintenance of roughly 30 acres of public beach along the shoreline of, of the city of Ventura's harbor. Next slide, please. The program area covers Harbor Cove, South Jetty, and Surfers Knoll beaches along Spinnaker Drive and the southern shoreline of Ventura Harbor, as shown here on this slide. These beaches offer a wide range of important uses. They provide public recreation opportunities like surfing, shoreline fishing, volleyball, and family beach day, serve as habitat for rare species and landforms such as western snowy plover, California least tern, California grunion, and coastal dunes, and operate as the staging and deposition area for annual harbor dredging operations conducted by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Next slide, please. The sand management plan would include clearing of wind-blown sand from areas where it could impact public safety, access, or infrastructure, infrastructure such as parking lots, walkways, and roads, and an approximately 15-wide area of the beach immediately seaward of these areas, redistributing this excess sand back onto the beach, removing large sand cliffs and hazardous debris from the beach, and beach grooming within the footprint of ADA beach access mats. Unfortunately, these activities have historically been conducted without the required coastal development permit for work in the commission's retained jurisdiction. In response to direction from commission's enforcement staff, the subject application would provide authorization for these activities moving forward. During the processing of this application, commission staff discovered additional violations had occurred on-site, including the grading and removal of vegetation from an approximately 26,000-square-foot area of sensitive dune habitat, in which the applicant later installed new beach volleyball courts and storage containers. The applicant is requesting after-the-fact approval for the unpermitted grading and removal of sensitive dune habitat in order to allow for the continued use of the unpermitted volleyball courts in this area. Next slide, please. Because heavy equipment operations have the potential to degrade environmentally sensitive habitat areas, or ESHA, the plan proposes certain limitations and protective measures of activities conducted within and around existing dunes. These areas are shown in green on the slide. Please note that while we are showing Harbor Cove as an example, the program and map dune areas extend across the other two beaches as well. However, the proposed sand management plans mapping of these sensitive areas fails to include or identify dune areas that were disturbed or removed without the required coastal development permit. The historic dune area, which has become the greatest source of disagreement and public concern, is the portion of Harbor Cove Beach where dune ESHA was graded, vegetation was removed, and volleyball courts and storage containers were installed without a required CDP. The sand management plan, as proposed by the applicant, includes continued grooming and grading of this area in order to maintain the volleyball facilities in their current location. Next slide, please. This slide shows the area in 2006 before the unpermitted removal of dune ESHA occurred. As laid out in the staff ecology team's memorandum, which is included as Exhibit Five to the staff report, we can see that the area in question once contained dune morphology and vegetation which constituted ESHA. Next slide, please. In this, in this second aerial photograph, taken in April 2013, we can see that though some vegetation has receded or is covered by sand, dune vegetation and morphology are still present throughout the area. As outlined in the staff ecology memo, this still constitutes ESHA. Next slide, please. As can be seen in this third aerial photograph, taken seven months after the previous one, the land where dunes have been cleared and flattened. Commission staff's ecology memo explains that this pattern of dune loss cannot be explained by anything but human disturbance. Next slide, please. The memo concludes that these dunes, though they may have undergone cycles of growth and retreat, would have persisted were it not for this disturbance and the grading, beach grooming, and sand redistribution undertaken for continued upkeep of the volleyball facilities. These facilities were installed by the following summer, as shown in this photograph. Next slide, please. In this photo from 2016, we can see that similar patterns of dune loss pointing to anthropogenic degradation were observed in the location now occupied by a storage container for outrigger canoe equipment. Though not pictured, this is also the case for the area seaward of the Surfers Knoll parking lot. Next slide, please. The applicant has indicated that they are willing to relocate the outrigger club equipment. However, the applicant continues to propose sand management activities in the area where dunes were removed without the required CDP and where volleyball courts are now located. However, Coastal Act Section 30240 specifically and clearly prohibits development within ESHA, such as the dunes on the subject site, with the exception of uses that are dependent on the resources within ESHA. Because the development proposed within dune ESHA, in this case volleyball courts and storage containers, are not uses dependent on the ESHA resource and may be located on portions of the beach or site where ESHA is not present, the proposed development is clearly inconsistent with Section 30240. Next slide, please. In an effort to help the applicant revise their sand management program in a manner that would comply with the requirements of the Coastal Act, commission staff met with port district staff and identified multiple alternative locations where volleyball courts could feasibly be relocated outside of ESHA. Some of these alternatives locations are indicated on this slide, including an area of Harbor Cove Beach approximately 200 feet south of the current volleyball courts. Next slide, please. Staff provided the applicant with the following illustration, which suggests an arrangement of six courts that would not require beach grooming in ESHA and would be situated a safe distance from the observed wet sandline. However, the applicant declined to amend their proposed application to relocate the unpermitted volleyball courts to another area of the site that does not contain ESHA. Members of the public are right to note that, in addition to protecting coastal ecosystems, the Coastal Act also strongly supports the provision of low-cost recreational opportunities and encourages decisions which reflect the interests and needs of the local community. Commission staff believes that it is possible for the project to meet all of these goals and reiterates its offer to work with the applicants to find a creative solution which achieves this. Next slide, please. Thus, staff is unable to recommend approval of the project as currently proposed because it includes grading of an area which, considered in its pre- violation condition, met the definition of ESHA. Continued grading and beach grooming of these areas for non-dune-dependent uses, especially when the range of alternative options has yet to be fully evaluated, is therefore inconsistent with the Coastal Act. To no longer consider sensitive habitat to be protected on the basis that it has been disturbed without a permit would be to incentivize the unpermitted removal of such habitat thought to be inconvenient. This conclusion does not arise out of a narrow or unforeseen interpretation of the Coastal Act, but is rather the manifestation of the deliberately high barrier to ecological destruction which the Act put in place. Therefore, to ensure the sand management plan would not authorize new development inconsistent with habitat protection policies of the Coastal Act, including Section 30240, which prohibits non-resource-dependent development within ESHA, Special Condition Three requires the applicant revise, to revise the sand management program to eliminate any reference to sand management activities within the area of the site where unpermitted grading and of the dunes occurred and the unpermitted volleyball courts and storage containers have been installed. Importantly, this condition does not require the actual removal of the volleyball courts or storage containers, as the applicant has designed, has declined to revise their position to do so. However, the condition does allow the applicants to relocate the volleyball courts and storage containers to an area of the site that does not contain ESHA pursuant to the revised plans, to revise plans if they so choose. Next slide, please. There is an addendum for this item, which includes and addresses correspondence received from the applicant's representative and the roughly 80 letters opposing staff's recommendations submitted by local representatives and other members of the public. These ask that the courts remain in their current location, which, as just explained, is not allowable under the Coastal Act. In addition, the applicant's letter requests several revisions to permit conditions. To incorporate some of these requests, the addendum includes revisions to Special Conditions Three and Five to increase the width of the public access corridors at Surfers Knoll Beach from 10 to 15, to provide greater flexibility when installing the seasonal beach mats, increases the number of times per year mechanized sand grooming and sand redistribution is allowed from three to five, and to make additional corrections and clarifications. Next slide, please. In conclusion, staff recommends approval with conditions of the Ventura Port District's sand management plan CDP. The motion and resolution to accomplish this can be found on page six of the staff report. I'll now, I'll now turn the mic over to District Director Steve Hudson, who is with you in person today. Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler. I just wanted to add a couple quick overarching observations of this, and also to thank the port district, who has their staff here today as well. Note that we've had several good conversations with the port district as we try to resolve the issues that we just heard about. First, I would like to point out that we have a number of speakers today, and the concerns that you're going to hear about are the concerns that they would like to keep volleyball courts at this, on this beach. And I would like to note that, as Tyler had mentioned, the action before us today, including the conditions of approval, does not include or require the removal of those volleyball courts. Because this issue is, is still a bit sticky and we're trying to work with the port district to resolve it, our recommendation has bifurcated that issue out from our recommendation. We're not able to recommend continued grading operations and sand management within the area where the sensitive dune habitat previously existed. But we're not requiring any resolution of that situation or the unpermitted development through this permit. This would remain an unresolved issue. We're committed to continuing to work with the port district, and as you saw in the presentation, we do believe that there's several feasible alternatives where this, these volleyball courts could simply be relocated in some areas as close as a few hundred feet, but there's other areas where we think that could be relocated as well. Ideally, we'd like to continue working in the future with the port district to resolve this through a permit action. And so I'll just leave it at that and note that our staff is available for questions, and with that, I'll conclude our staff comments.
Thank you very much. Are there any expertises on this item? Commissioner Hartman?
Thank you, Chair Cummings. Yes, I have one expertise to report. On Monday, May 5th, around 11:00 a.m. via phone, for 10 minutes, I spoke with Brian Pendleton, representing the Ventura Port District. In that conversation, he described the process generally and also their desire to keep the volleyball courts where they're located. He took me through his perspective on the history and evolution of the courts specifically. I also will note that I spoke with Mr. Pendleton, again, a few hours later, for less than two minutes, where I confirmed his understanding that the volleyball courts issue had been indeed removed from the application with the purpose of getting with staff to figure out how to best resolve. He indicated that he did understand that the volleyball courts were not being addressed in this application, but he still wished the commission to vote to permit or regularize the volleyball courts as is and where is, where they are currently located. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other expertises? Seeing none, so I'll turn it over to the applicant, if you can approach the podium, and please let me know how much time you'll need.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, and good morning. We do have five folks, including myself, representing the applicant. I think you'd have separate public speakers on the item. We did want to ask, we do have a PowerPoint presentation that's been provided, if we could have approximately in total 20 minutes, some of that time being for any follow-up, comments, communication that, that might be necessary.
How about we do 10 with five for rebuttal? Does that work?
We'll speak fast.
Okay.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners and Staff.
Before you begin, okay, I just wanted to make sure the slides were up and we had the time. Okay, go ahead.
There we go. I am Elizabeth Howell, Vice Chair of the Ventura Port Commission. Port District staff have been working diligently with coastal staff, commission staff for two years to finalize this CDP. While we have made a lot of progress with commission staff to develop a sustainable sand management plan, there are still a few areas in contention that we wish to speak on today. I'm joined by Brian Pendleton, Port District General Manager, Todd Mitchell, Deputy General Manager, Robert Smith, attorney with Kynell Gates, and Derek Lerma, Senior Marine Scientist with Rincon Consultants, to present our case for your approval of the CDP as submitted. Next slide, please. I would like to start out by discussing Harbor Cove Beach. This beach is the most heavily-used section, often seeing crowds of over 1,000 in summers and on holidays. It provides a frequent respite from, from the heat for inland visitors. Due to its two-attached and one-detached breakwaters, it is the safest beach in the region for young children or anyone who is not a confidence swimmer, and for those wishing to launch a variety of small watercraft. This beach hosts a very diverse community of users, supporting a number of sporting, Tumash Indian, and other cultural activities. You'll know from the outpouring of support that this includes outrigger canoes and beach volleyball, in addition to many other uses. All of these diverse constituencies coexist because of the available space. I'd like to dive into the issue of beach volleyball. There are so many users of this beach volleyball courts, I need to share with you who they are. To Ventura County High Schools of Oxnard, Santa Clara, Ventura, Buena, Foothill Technology, Santa Paula, Fillmore, and Camarillo, these courts are critical to student sports and their volleyball programs in particular. Ventura College Women's Beach Volleyball uses the, the courts for their practices and host regional competitions. Many of the comments you've received state how important these courts are to youth and women and scholarships. While these are the only women-centric volleyball courts in the region, the Los Angeles Volleyball Association has installed adjustable nets, making these courts accessible for every sand player, including local residents who simply want to play for fun. A non-exhaustive list of users also includes other volleyball courts- A non-exhaustive list of users also includes other volleyball courts, clubs, kids' summer camps, the California State Junior Life Guards, Ventura Corporate Games, Hot Shot Up, a fallen firefighter's memorial event. They deem these courts key to their fundraising tournament. The court's loss could result in the loss of opportunities and scholarships for athletes. These courts are oriented to consider prevailing winds and sun direction. They are oriented away from the lifeguard tower, where noise and fast-moving objects would be a distraction, which others have noted are critical to competitive volleyball tournaments. In addition, the current location does not conflict with other beach users and keeps others safe from errant balls. Moving the courts to the proposed location could restrict one-third to forty percent of the beach from public use. I want to finish by reiterating that this beach, I forgot some slides, but last slide, please. I'd like to finish by, or slide five, by reiterating that this beach supports so many deserving users, it is rare to have such a wonderful beach that plays such a central role in a vibrant and active community. It is imperative that it be kept operating where they are today in order to facilitate safe use by everyone. I'll now turn it over to our General Manager, Brian Pendleton.
Thank you, Commissioners. I would like to further discuss the issue of the proposed relocation of volleyball courts. While we appreciate the Commission staff attempt to problem-solve the issue, our preliminary analysis identifies serious concerns, including impacts to emergency response, impacts to public pedestrian and ADA access, conflicts with annual dredging activity, and inconsistencies with best management practices. But most of all, it is our concern that relocating the courts and abandoning the current location leaves insufficient space for the many users of Harbor Cove Beach. In particular, this beach, which is the only protected calm-water beach in the area, is essential for young children, elderly, and mobility impaired to be able to swim safely without exposure to strong waves. If those families were required to move south, they go out onto the most dangerous beach in Ventura with a high number of rescues and fatalities due to recurrence. If they go north, they are no longer close enough to lifeguard stations, which must be located adjacent to those same dangerous beaches. This issue is of serious concern to me and my harbor master. We do not take the issue lightly. This conclusion is based upon forty years' experience in managing these beaches for public enjoyment and recreation, while at the same time creating dune Esha and ensuring safe access and use by the public. We take each of these responsibilities, including the preservation of dune habitat, seriously. Having addressed the issue of volleyball, I'd like to turn to the sand management plan overall. I want to draw the Commission's attention to the fact that the district built the infrastructure at both of these beaches in the nineteen eighties, directed the Army Corps of Engineers to build dunes, planted them, and having operated a successful beach system ever since, balances these interests as the stewards of one of the most beloved coastal amenities in Ventura County. And not only has our public agency directly managed them, we have been the local sponsors for the core dredging program, which is an annual activity. While the program is designed to maintain the navigation channel as its core mission, we've been extremely successful in ensuring that the dredging project puts high-quality sand back on the beach rather than ocean disposal.
Next slide, please. Thank you, Commissioners, for your time. I'd like to take a quick opportunity to tell you about the challenges of managing the beaches and some of the significant dynamic natural forces that affect both our management program and the extent of dune Esha. As you see on this slide, significant shoreline erosion takes place annually over the winter. And while not all years are the same, twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four were particularly impactful in eroding the beaches, resulting in a significant retreat of dune Esha. Next slide, please. So it's unsurprising that the dune system continues to change since it was first established in the nineteen eighties. And despite storms such as the one in twenty twenty-three that removed one hundred feet of shore width near Surfers Knoll, including as much as forty feet of foredunes, the annual dredging program restores those beaches. But the dredging program is the course to execute, and the quantity of sand that's available changes from year to year. Therefore, how the beach actually looks, how flat it is, how wide it is, is not under our control. This requires constant management from the Port District to eliminate dangerous conditions, sand cliffs, and attempting to shore up and protect areas of existing dune Esha that contribute to being impacted by natural forces. Next slide.
Thank you. The coastal zone in this area, specifically beaches, experiences dynamic changes in daily, seasonal, and decadal timeframes. Ventura beaches are highly vulnerable to seasonal storms, erosion, and sea level rise. As you can see, some of these forces have resulted in the retreat of dune Esha and certain areas of this dune habitat are unlikely to return, specifically in the areas of Surfers Knoll Beach in this vision. Special Condition 3A and 6 requires the Port District to document Esha based on a twenty-year history, which would then be classified as Most Restrictive Area, Area A, and which would prohibit any uses or activities within those areas. This image shows the twenty-year timeframe by the Coastal Commission, the dotted line, and then also the twenty twenty-three Esha delineated by Rincon and approved by staff. I think you noticed a significant disconnect in the area and that also that accurate Esha baseline condition is really designed in order to guide management activities and assess future impacts. Next slide. The district is willing to work with the staff to identify an Esha map within a more reasonable timeframe, say, five years, to address temporal changes. These conditions have real consequences. They restrict operations and maintenance within these areas and require mitigation if impacts occur to within historical Esha. The sand management plan defines specific areas for public maintenance accessways and to avoid Esha mapped in twenty-two, twenty-three, and that allowed for the replacement of sand management of those areas and then emergency and maintenance access. Moving, these maps requires heavy equipment and it allows, is not consistent with mapping this area as Esha. Next slide. Our proposed revisions of this responding to this staff addendum requires that staff engage with the Commission. We believe that it's a more reasonable act to engage with staff for approvals to work in and around Esha. This slide shows the beach following annual sand nourishment performed by the Corps and coordinated with the district, and beaches built to benefit Esha, secure infrastructure, and improve public access. The Port proposes to restore and enhance areas between the groynes here in these jetties that, for areas that were impacted by the volleyball court, this area represents the most significant and functional Esha habitat throughout the region and is an optimal area for restoration and enhancement.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Smith of KNL Gates. Given time and considerations, I'll reserve my discussion for rebuttal. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, so are there any members of the public signed up to speak on this item?
Yes, we have a total of thirteen people signed up to speak.
Okay.
We'll start in the room with Brad Lyons and then Stephanie Caldwell. You may approach the podium.
Good morning, everybody. On your website, it says two to three minutes. Am I allowed three minutes?
Two minutes.
Two minutes. All right, thank you. My name is Brad Lyons and I'm the head coach of the Women's Beach Volleyball Team at Ventura College. Since two thousand sixteen, these courts have been more than sand and nets. They represent opportunity. They've been a home, a training ground, and a space where young women grow through sport into confident leaders. They are the only female-centric beach volleyball courts in the county and symbolize equity, empowerment, and access. Over the past decade, our program has served nearly a hundred and twenty female student athletes. Of those, eighty-four percent have earned associate degrees, sixty-five percent of them transferred to four-year universities, and thirty percent received scholarships. These courts have helped launch successful athletic and academic careers, including one athlete who has gone on to win two NCAA Division One national championships at USC. But their impact extends far beyond Ventura College. These courts are a true community hub used by over fifty high schools, colleges, and local groups. They were developed in partnership with the Ventura Port District and reflect meaningful community investment. Over the past two weeks, the same community has come together again. We have collected twenty-five hundred signatures on our petition to preserve the courts where they lie. We strongly oppose the proposed relocation for three key reasons. The new orientation is east-west, which creates sun glare, making it unsafe and unfair and non-compliant with NCAA and USA volleyball standards, meaning official high school, club, and collegiate matches couldn't be held there. The site is close to high tide line, posing erosion, flooding risk, and issue of public safety. The proposed layout under-represents the scale and daily usage of the current courts, which currently host multiple teams' events and community recreation. We also ask why now? They've stood for decades with no prior objections. If permitting was a concern, why wasn't it addressed then?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Caldwell and then our Zoom speakers. We'll start with David Callis, David Livingstone, and then Richard Lyons. Stephanie Caldwell.
Good morning. I am here in strong support of the Ventura Port District, and I ask that you approve their sand management program as submitted. The Port District has been an excellent steward of the beaches for the past forty years, providing high-quality experience for our residents and visitors alike. As the President and CEO of the Ventura Chamber of Commerce, I represent the businesses of Ventura. Economic vitality, job creation, recreation, environmental stewardship are all a part of the quality of life our members expect and enjoy in Ventura. The Ventura Harbor Village and beaches, including Harbor Cove Beach, are among the region's most valued assets, enjoyed by not only Ventura's one hundred and ten thousand residents, but our entire county and beyond. We are very fortunate to attract travelers from all over the country and the world. While we understand and value the importance of protecting and preserving coastal dune habitat, we ask that the Commission strike a balance when making your decision today. The Act also encourages the preservation of environmentally sensitive habitat and also development and retention of public coastal recreational uses and public beach access. A fundamental purpose of the Commission is to protect these areas for the public. The volleyball courts have been standing and serving in our community for more than ten years. They are a part of our culture that we enjoy in Ventura. Harbor Cove Beach, often referred to as Mother's Beach, you've heard, provides a family-friendly option for our youngest visitors due to its gentle waves and is a favorite, well-loved popular attraction. Relocating the courts would impinge upon that space. Please allow us to keep this special and unique asset open and available. I ask that you approve the Port District's proposal to retain the volleyball courts and recreational uses at their current location and enhance dune and coastal environment on other nearby areas. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Now moving to Zoom speakers, David Callis, followed by David Livingstone, and then Richard Lyons. David Callis.
Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Dave Callis, Director of Lava Beach. Beach volleyball is the fastest-growing sport in the history of NCAA, Olympic sport, and Southern California is considered to be its home. At Lava Beach, we currently support seventy athletes playing year-round, practicing three days a week at Harbor Cove. This includes students from fifth grades up through high school, seeking the opportunity to play in college. Over the past two years, in fact, we've had over twenty athletes realize that dream and many that are pursuing higher education wouldn't be able to without this sport and the scholarships they've received. On top of that, we host national juniors tournaments, bringing in over a hundred and twenty athletes, families, and supporters to Harbor Cove from all over the country, Florida, Colorado, Arizona, Texas, NorCal, San Diego, et cetera. This generates significant business for local hotels, restaurants, and shops, and aids to the recruit of athletes to local colleges. We also host local tournaments, summer camps, and have made many improvements, which you've already heard about, so the community can enjoy this facility and recreate in this fabulous sport year-round. So I ask the Coastal Commission, as I've reviewed and prepared and understood the goals of the Coastal Commission, to understand that to protect, enhance, and restore the coastal environment quality and resources, the Port has done that for forty years and has offered solutions to address USHA concerns in nearby areas. I also say that giving priority coastal-dependent development, the beach courts brings in business to the local coastal community as well as providing the opportunity for higher-level education that otherwise would not be realized. And finally, of course, maximizing public access to the coast. Not only will the sand management plan allow access, but the sand volleyball courts attract thousands to our coast to enjoy and protect our beautiful Harbor Cove. So please support the courts and this plan. Appreciate the time.
Thank you. David Livingstone, Richard Lyons, and then James Walker. David Livingstone, go ahead.
Thank you, Honorable Commissioners. My name is David Livingstone and I am the head coach and treasurer for Hokoloa Outrigger Canoe Club. Hokoloa strongly supports restoring the Ventura Port District Sand Management Plan as proposed in Application Number 4-24-0248. This plan is essential for maintaining safe pedestrian access, handicap access, and vital recreational opportunities in Ventura Harbor that fundamentally support the goals of the Coastal Act. The Ventura Port District plan ensures the public can continue to enjoy the valuable coastal resources this Commission is entrusted to protect. Hokoloa, with over one hundred members, has been active as a nonprofit organization based at Harbor Cove Beach for over thirty-five years. As athletic and recreational users of the harbor, we rely on the services provided by the Port District and support its continued ability to manage sand and beach resources effectively, as it has done for decades. Additionally, we support the beach volleyball courts remaining at Harbor Cove Beach in their current location. The beach volleyball courts and outrigger canoe clubs exemplify the valuable public recreational assets the Port District provides. These activities offer healthy, accessible, inclusive, and low-cost recreation for the entire community. They benefit the economy of the city and county of Ventura. Hokoloa actively contributes to public access and coastal enjoyment throughout various initiatives, including free community paddling clinics year-round and educational partnerships with California Junior Lifeguards Program, local middle and high schools, and nonprofit organizations. We are committed to sharing our support with Ventura County and we are deeply grateful for many years of support from the Ventura Port District and their efforts to facilitate safe and enjoyable coastal access for the public and our club. We ask that you seriously consider the value of retaining all current recreational activities in Ventura Harbor and the importance of restoring the Port District's sand management plan in order to ensure safe beach access, handicap access, and vital water-oriented recreational opportunities at Ventura Harbor. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next is Richard Lyons, James Walker, and then Trevor Julian. Richard Lyons. Is Richard Julian as a panelist? Okay, there you go.
There, I had to unmute, sorry. There, can you hear me now?
Oh, yes, we can hear you.
Okay, yeah. I'm here to speak in favor of the sand volleyball courts in Ventura Harbor. These courts, they do service the women of Ventura College and help them grow and learn their everyday life skills and learning to work together as a team. They service many other community members from club teams, firefighters, many different organizations, not to mention the support they give to the local businesses. When we visit to watch the matches, we always go over and buy something and support the local businesses. We also, we support that you leave the courts in the location there and now so that they don't hurt the views and the way the players use the court and the way the spectators are able to view the matches and make it almost unplayable for the players with the light, with the sun shining in their eyes. I don't know if any of you have been out and watched any of these volleyball matches. If you haven't, I really suggest that you do. And watch the, how much joy they bring to the players and their families. If you hadn't, haven't, you should. I urge you, no, we beg you, to retain the volleyball courts as they are now and work on the many other areas and the dunes that you need to restore to. But anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is James Walker, followed by Trevor Julian, and then Nabeel Mardini. James Walker, go ahead.
Thank you to the Coastal Commission. My name is James Walker, the director at Ventura College, and I want to say that approving the plan as presented to keep the courts in the current location. Access to these Access to these courts has led to success on the beach and in the classroom for our female student athletes. This location has helped us recruit high-caliber local female student athletes to build up our program, to elevate our beach volleyball program as well as our athletic program. Our teams have appeared in the state tournament two of the last three years, and these courts are a main reason why. Possible change of location or having the courts not be playable to NCAA standards could lead to a possible loss of our program since we do not have an on-campus facility. A possible loss will be that 20 to 30 female student athletes that live in our county would not have access to play collegiate beach volleyball. I urge the Coastal Commission to please keep these courts in the current location to help not only our college, but our local student athletes, to give them a chance to play collegiate beach volleyball and to be stewards of our community when they volunteer to help with camps, clinics, or fundraising events held by other organizations. Again, thank you for your time and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next is Trevor Julian, Nabil Mardini, and then Anthony Powers. Trevor Julian.
Good morning, members and staff of the Coastal Commission. Greatly appreciate you hearing our voices today. My name is Trevor Julian. I'm the director of the Los Angeles Volleyball Academy and one of thousands of men, women, and children of the community voicing our wholehearted support for keeping the Ventura Harbor Beach volleyball courts in place at their current location with no changes, no relocation, and allowing the Ventura Port District full renewed command of the sand management of the area. First, I'd like to say how impressed and grateful I am to the Ventura Port District, their unwavering support, and the manner in which they address issues and handle the business of governance is a shining example of what public service should be. Ventura is very lucky to have this group running point for our community, and their voice on this issue is paramount. Second, I support the Coastal Commission in its efforts, important efforts, to safeguard our coastal California environment. I'm a big believer in the necessity of that mission. I will say that the 2006 slide image shown in the opening by Mr. Liddell shows dunes, but it's kind of selectively chosen, not really indicative, as 2012, 2013 images of the space shows naturally retreated dunes with minimal vegetation. I do dispute the idea as implied that members of the community degraded the area prior to court installation in 2015. It was natural dune retreat in that area. But regarding the volleyball courts, the beach volleyball courts, the recommendation from regional staff members to relocate the beach courts from their current location is essentially a Solomon-esque attempt to split the baby. This recommendation is untenable from a volleyball perspective and will render the courts largely unusable outside of mild, public picnic-style volleyball use. Not good for schools, not good for colleges, not good for competitive play, as other speakers have noted. The line of the sun over the courts, the spacing of the courts, the proximity of the courts to the tides, et cetera, all negatives that speak to the dramatic unsuitability of moving the courts from their current position. As a volleyball expert, it just won't work. So we would love the Coastal Commission to follow the recommendations of the Port District and the overwhelming of the desire to keep the courts in place as is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Nabil Mardini, Anthony Powers, and then Chris Gulat. Nabil Mardini.
Yeah, my name is Nabil Mardini. I'm the CEO of the Los Angeles Volleyball Academy. Thank you for giving me the time, commissioners. These courts have become far more than a recreational facility. They have become a hub for service, support, and opportunity. Over the years, the beach courts have played a vital role in hosting numerous community fundraisers in partnership with various nonprofit organizations. Notably, the Ventura Fire Department holds an annual fundraiser at the courts to support families of fallen firefighters, an event that brings the community together in remembrance and solidarity. Ventura College also relies heavily on these courts. Due to limited athletic funding, both the women's indoor and beach volleyball programs depend on clinics and tournaments held at these courts to raise essential funds. Without access to the space, their ability to maintain competitive and educational opportunities for student athletes would be significantly compromised. Additionally, the Los Angeles Volleyball Academy, LAVA, regularly organizes fundraisers at the court to assist families who are unable to afford the costs associated with club volleyball. These efforts ensure that young athletes from all backgrounds have a chance to play, learn, and grow through the sport. So thank you for giving me the time to speak.
Thank you. Anthony Powers, Chris Gulat, Samantha Calisto, and then Viola Barrios. Anthony Powers. Anthony, see your cameras on?
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi. Good afternoon. We're almost noon. My name is Anthony Powers. I'm the president of Hot Shot Up and also an active-duty firefighter. I'm here to support the whole realm of this community. Ventura Harbor, Ventura County Fire Department, my vice president is a member of them. I work for another fire department, but this location is sacred to us, basically because we are able to help those who fall under an unintended outcome, whether it be a line-of-duty death, whether it be a line-of-duty injury. We gather here annually, every single year. We love Ventura Harbor. They're so supportive of us. We love Ventura College volleyball, the Pirates, the girls. They come out. What an awesome program. They come out, they support, they referee our event, and we raise money. We just raised over $20,000 for an individual that was injured in a vehicle rollover that works for Orange County Fire Authority. Last year, we helped another, who's actually, and that individual's suffering from a traumatic brain injury, and we will be delivering a check to his family next week. The year prior, again, over $20,000 to another individual who was involved on a fire incident to a tree strike. And without any hesitation, this community opens up their location, and it's the perfect location because it's the calm waters, so that families can come and enjoy a day supporting a serious incident, right? In a gathering, but it does so much more, and it brings the community together. It allows us an opportunity to get a day to meet each other before the wind blows, and this goes back to sand management, right? But we groom these courts by hand. Meanwhile, there's heavy equipment that's coming in that can get it done in hours. That's how important it is to us and why you should leave this in state. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Chris Gulat, Samantha Calisto, and then Viola Barrios. Chris Gulat.
Hi, everyone. Yeah, my name is Chris Gulat, and I'm a local volleyball coach and club director in the area. I have been, had the unique blessing of being able to use these courts since inception. I was there when they were first put in and been running programs on those courts, essentially since they've been there. But I've grown up in Ventura, and my kids have been going to that beach since they were little. I don't know if anyone's talked about it yet, but the local name for that beach is Mother's Beach because indeed that is where all the families go to bring their kids. So within the 10 years that I've been a part of that area, I've seen thousands and thousands of youth. I want to add to and advocate for the remaining of the courts in the location they are in currently. Looking at the relocation and that proposal, it just doesn't make sense from what I've observed. I've been watching those courts for the last 10 years and been on them pretty much year-round, and all the activity that I see in that area that's being proposed for the relocation, it just doesn't seem consistent with putting new courts there, along with what Coach Lyons had mentioned about the orientation of those courts so that no competitions can be held there, which is pivotal to the youth programs in the area and also the college program in the area. I've worked hand-in-hand with the local vendors and shops and restaurant owners inside the harbor to have such a great relationship with them and know that we bring the support from all the athletes and the families that use those courts in that location within the capacity that's in right now to support their local businesses. And it has been such a nice, harmonious, synergistic relationship of knowing that we're benefiting the community in so many different ways. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Samantha Calisto and Viola Barrios. I believe you're sharing your device. Or that was indicated to us. Samantha Calisto.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, we are actually currently, I'm with Shai Daniels and Viola Barrios, and we're currently at the state championships. And Brad Lyons, the first speaker, is the head coach of this program. I'm the assistant coach. He is missing the state championship tournament with his number-one team to be there because of how passionate he is about this issue because of everybody that he's coached over the years. So I just want to point that out first. Viola will be speaking next, but I support everything that everybody's set up to this point, starting with Brad. But I also would like to point out that in the proposed relocation of the courts, there is more exposure to just open sand areas. And due to the high winds in Ventura, part of the reason that they have to do sand management is because the sand is, the soft sand is moved from the ocean toward the mountains. And in that area specifically, there would be a lot of exposed hard sand without weekly maintenance of sand, and the area that the courts are currently in is better protected from that. It still has those issues, which is why sand management is key, but it is much safer for athletes playing beach volleyball to dive and even walk around the courts because as the sand moves off of the ocean, it's taken away from the courts, especially in the areas proposed by the local staff. So that's the first issue I wanted to bring up. And then that's pretty much it because everybody else has said everything. So I'll just pass the phone to Viola because she's the next speaker.
My name is Viola Barrios, and I play for Ventura College Beach volleyball. And I've been playing on those harbor courts for about five years now, since my freshman year of high school, and this is my freshman year of college. And those have helped me through so much success, especially the way that they are as of right now. As an athlete, it's very hard to play and dangerous to play when the sun is in your eyes and just how the wind, as Sam said, pushes the sand around. It's just, it's not efficient. The new proposed area for the beach courts would be a completely different configuration than in which no efficient beach volleyball courts are currently made. The tide comes high on the beach, but it doesn't affect our courts currently. And that new proposed location, it would affect them. So there's just many difficulties and safety concerns as an athlete that I would be concerned about due to the sun, space availability, and high tides. I hope that it's taken into deep consideration to preserve the courts as they are right now, as this would help my future success in playing past Ventura College. Thank you.
Thank you. And we had no other speakers lined up.
All right, great. With that, if you need five minutes for rebuttal, please feel free to come forward to speak.
Good morning, commissioners. Ken Roberts-Smith of KNL Gates, representing the applicant. We believe that the Port District's proposal represents a win-win that appropriately balances Coastal Commission goals and objectives. First, as further described in our letter, we disagree with staff that retention of existing volleyball courts in their current location violates Commission ESHA policies. The Commission has previously found other recreational uses to be permitted within ESHA. For example, in the Hubbard case cited in our letter, the court found that Malibu equestrian trails were permitted in ESHA habitat. In fact, the impact from the volleyball courts, which have an overlap of no more than 0.5 acres of historic but currently nonexistent ESHA, is less than the miles to develop equestrian trails that both this commission and the court approved in Hubbard. Staff responded that the existing volleyball courts are not resource-dependent because they do not depend on dune ESHA. But that interpretation is far more limiting than what the Hubbard Court evaluated. The court found that equestrian trails were generally dependent upon the riparian habitat they went through, not the specific stream crossings that were, that they did not consider to be essential for the equestrian use. It was the larger habitat rather than the specific stream habitat they considered. Similarly, there is no question that beach volleyball must be played on the beach. And as you heard today, it appears there are no other feasible locations where the courts could be relocated. Based on the analysis in Hubbard, that is sufficient to determine that the existing recreational uses are permissible under Public Resources Code 3240. It would be difficult for any project to meet staff's strict interpretation of that section. Staff talked about the incentivizing of somehow, that somehow people would go out and interfere with dune ESHA if this were approved. We respectfully disagree with that position. There wasn't a glut of additional development after this commission's and the court's decision in Hubbard, and particularly given the unique circumstances of this, where these courts have been out there for 10 years and there is no dune habitat there currently, we think this is a unique situation. The case cited by staff is simply comparing apples to oranges. The Bolsachica case denied the development of 3,400 residential homes that would destroy five acres of Critical Raptor habitat. The proposed uses were not resource-dependent and had a huge proposed ecological impact. They are comparing with the removal of a couple of mounds of sand to the massive deforestation of an entire ESHA grove. Even if the commission does not agree with the Port District on this point, Public Resources Code Section 30007.5 authorizes the commission to balance competing coastal act policies and objectives. It does not appear that staff is in disagreement that the volleyball courts further core Coastal Act goals and objectives regarding providing public coastal recreational opportunities and public access. We list six such goals and objectives in our letter. Coastal recreation and public access are significant coastal resources. Sometimes the commission is called upon to make these tough calls. While the Port District supports the goal of preserving dune ESHA, we believe that the unique community recreational uses provided by the volleyball courts for the past decade outweigh any potential benefit from theoretical dune ESHA, particularly when all existing ESHA and four-dune environments seaward of the volleyball courts has disappeared over the years due to natural causes. There are no dune ESHA environments that's been in that area whatsoever since 2015, including in areas not occupied currently by the volleyball courts. And that is the second part of this win-win. There is no coastal commission policy or regulation which prohibits offsite mitigation. While we question whether mitigation will be required at all, given that volleyball courts are permitted to use, we propose enhancement of dune ESHA where our environmental consultants have testified will result in the greatest ecological benefit for the long-term retention and utilization by protected species. The commission is entrusted with maintaining California's coastline to protect coastal resources for public use and enjoyment. I can think of no stronger case than what has been discussed in the letters from the community and today as to why these uses cannot be removed or relocated without resulting in significant harm to schools, youth, and girls' volleyball programs, and the community at large. With all due respect, while we respect commission staff's expertise and knowledge of ecological issues, the district's 40 years of experience in managing the area and the community members that you heard from today are the experts in maintaining the area for public access, public recreation, safe public use, and community events. These are the lived experiences that tell a different story than the aerial images relied upon by commission staff. The district's proposal would serve vital public recreational resources and will result in better ecological conditions than it exists today. For those reasons, we respectfully request the commission authorize continued use of the volleyball courts in their current location. And I'll just have one more comment, which is a technical one. We have requested a permit to three different conditions. One of them is in their addendum, which we're still requesting, which is Condition 3E. That's already been discussed. If the commission decides to, as staff recommends, bifurcate the issue of the volleyball courts, we also request bifurcation of Conditions 3A and 6, which specifically talk about where, how we should consider a map dune ESHA because that is going to be fundamentally tied to the question of resolution of volleyball courts.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for my time.
All right. So with that, we'll bring it back to staff for any follow-up comments.
All right, thank you. I do have a few comments just to respond to some of the speakers. But first, I would like to just acknowledge and thank all the members of the public who just spoke in support of providing beach volleyball facilities. And I would like to note that our staff shares that desire to provide volleyball and other recreational opportunities on the beach. The Coastal Act, of course, is premised on providing public access and recreational opportunities, but it also protects other coastal resources, including environmentally sensitive habitat. And some of the public speakers asked, "Why now?" Have the volleyball courts become an issue? And that answer is simple, is because we, our staff, has only just found out during the processing of this permit application that unpermitted removal of dunes and dune vegetation had occurred without the required CDP to accommodate the volleyball courts in question. I would just note that the Coastal Act has strong policy protection of ESHA and dunes, constitutes some of the rarest and most important types of ESHA. Under the Coastal Act, only development dependent upon the habitat resource may be allowed. And we simply disagree with what we just heard from the port that volleyball courts could be considered a resource-dependent use within dune ESHA. We would have to believe that such recreational facilities must be located within dunes, and we simply do not agree. we simply do not agree. We do concur that in past Commission actions, the Commission has allowed low-intensity developments such as public trails within ESHA, and we do believe that's appropriate. Clearly, we still have more work to do with the Port District to address those volleyball courts and those potential alternatives. And that's why we're recommending the, this issue be separated out from the coastal permit today. We felt it was too important that we needed to move forward quickly to address and allow for the Port District's important sand management program, which will allow them to deal with important public safety and sand management concerns while allowing for additional time to work with the applicant on this volleyball court issue. And with that, before we close, staff comment, I'm just going to turn the mic over to Executive Director Hucklebridge.
Thank you. I just wanted to give, first of all, a quick shout out to all of the speakers that came today, the, especially the folks coming from the tournament. That was, we appreciate you taking your time out of your day to share your comments. My son is a new volleyball enthusiast, and I am frankly trying to push him into beach volleyball because if I'm going to spend my day watching kids play volleyball all day, I'd rather do it on the beach than do it in a gym. So we definitely, as Steve said, appreciate how important these courts are to this community. So we have heard that, we, again, as Steve said, recreation and different types of recreation is a critical component of the, of the Coastal Act, and we appreciate that. The challenge we have here is that we are not, you know, again, as Steve said, we are here because this didn't go through the right process the first time. We just found out about this. The, you know, we weren't given the opportunity to weigh in on alternatives before the courts went in in the first place. This is, you know, so we have not had time to think through how to do this enough, in a way that works for the community that is consistent with the Coastal Act. Some of the ideas about some of the legal findings that were, you know, recommended by the port are things that we would need to consider in action, and we don't, we have not had time to do that. Now, I do think, we didn't want to hold up the rest of the sand management plan, and that's why we're recommending this today. But again, I want to remind us that this is, you know, this, we're here because this is a violation. These courts were put in without the benefit of a permit and the analysis that would have looked at alternatives in the first place before these courts went in, and this community has, has, has coalesced around these, this area. And I just think that's unfortunate, but that's the situation that we find ourselves in today. So we do continue to strongly recommend that we take that issue. We know we need to work with the port, with the community to address all the concerns and come back to you with a different recommendation on that. We just, we have not had time to work it out yet. So just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. I'll bring it back to the Commission. Questions, comments, actions. Commissioner Wilson?
Thanks. I just, on that, and I, I don't want to get into the volleyball part of this because, because that's not what we're going to do today. But there was a question around part, or Condition 3A and 6, and its nexus to that, and I just wanted to ask staff about that particular item.
Yes, I'm going to ask Tyler to take the first stab at responding to that, please.
Hey, yeah. So you're asking about the condition that requires the applicant to map historic dune ESHA, correct?
I don't have that list in front of me, but that is what was referred to by the applicant, so I'm just going to trust that.
Yes. Condition 6 requires that the applicant complete and submit a historic coastal dune system delineation, mapping all areas which previously contained dune morphology in the past, since 2004. And then Commission, and then, sorry, Condition 3A requires that that be implemented into the sand management plan as mapped and treated as ESHA.
And just as a follow-up then, is there any reason why we wouldn't do that as part of this plan that we're doing right now? Or is that completely attached to the volleyball element of this?
We, we don't have the delineation of all of that ESHA. We've asked first in an incomplete letter in April 2024 for that delineation, and then later, when we found out about volleyball issue, we asked for that again, and we currently do not have a mapping of all that dune ESHA.
And just to add to the staff response, that is for the entire area. It's for the sand management plan, not the volleyball courts.
Okay, thanks. I just, I appreciate, I just wanted the clarification. It was brought up, and I wanted to make sure that we addressed it directly. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Harmon?
Thank you, Chair Cummings. Well, I just, I want to say that I, I completely agree and understand and appreciate everything that Director Hucklebridge and Mr. Hudson said in their comments. They are right that these courts went in without the benefit of a review, that there's engagement that needs to be done. I'm confident that they have heard the passion around these volleyball courts. That said, for me personally, as a representative, a local government representative from this region, respectfully, I will not be voting in favor of the staff recommendation today because the volleyball courts are just so central to the community's enjoyment of the coast in that area that personally, though I, I agree and respect with everything that I heard from our staff and believe that there will be a meeting of the minds on how to move forward here. And just for me, out of, out of solidarity with the community that utilizes these courts and are so passionate about them, I will be voting no today. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Aguirre?
Thank you. I have a question. So hypothetically, if this were to be bifurcated, what is the timeline that we're thinking about? And then additionally, would the use of the courts be temporarily suspended, or will there be an informal agreement that it could continue while those negotiations take place?
Yes. So the timeline is, the timeline would be dependent on the Port District. This action would not require anything, any sort of removal or change in how the Port District is currently managing that area. It would remain an unresolved violation. So our hope is that we could work ideally quickly with the Port District to bring back a solution that could include an alternative. I'd like to do that through the permit process. Other alternatives is that this could be resolved through enforcement actions, and our Commission enforcement unit would evaluate potential alternatives. So again, my hope is that that would be fairly quickly. We don't have any new authorization for the activities that have been ongoing and currently occurring with that area, but nothing in this action today would change the current paradigm or the circumstances on how the port is continuing to manage the volleyball courts. My understanding is that they would continue as they have been while we work on this solution together.
Okay, thank you for that. That's helpful because I think nobody's contesting that recreational opportunities at the coast are important, incredibly important, especially when it's, you know, a type of sport that helps people stay healthy and especially uplifting minorities such as women. So I want to thank the coach for taking the time and missing out on the state championship for being here, you know, and volleyball is great. I mean, San Diego has a huge population at Ocean Beach that tends to practice volleyball, and it's great. I wish I could do that. I'm vertically challenged for volleyball. But this gives me hope in the sense of, you know, we now know that there has been a violation, and it might have been that, you know, the users didn't know that, but under the Coastal Act, it is absolutely our responsibility and mandate to protect ESHA and make sure that especially sand dunes, such as sensitive habitat as sand dunes. So that being said, I think there's an incredible opportunity here to coalesce and come together and figure a path forward where we can balance the needs of recreational opportunities while, you know, conserving and fulfilling our mandate under the Coastal Act. So I will support the recommendation to bifurcate and strongly encourage the port to continue this work, knowing our staff and how amazing they are at finding those balances. I know that a resolution will come before us quite soon. Thank you.
Commissioner Escalante, and then Commissioner Nardo.
Thank you, Chair. And I fully align myself with Commissioner Aguirre on this, except for the fact that I might be the only volleyball player on this diet, as a former volleyball player. I know. As short people are thrown into the setting position, and then we, we bust our fingers for a lifetime. So just make sure that your son takes care of his tendons. So, you know, obviously, I mean, it's, it's incredible passion of mine, and I totally feel for, for everybody in the community that gets so much joy and builds so much community around it. So I completely feel that, and I appreciate the sort of extra level of process and, and grace, you know, from, including from the, from the Commission's side, because it has been a long-lasting violation. And, you know, if we were just being strict by law, we'd get really cranky about it, but we want to work something out. So I do, I do appreciate that. And, and what I would encourage folks is, you know, it is, and it will be an opportunity for, you know, two-way dialogue where the community can also, just as we being educated about how valuable this is, this asset is for recreation in this area, it is for the community to understand how incredibly important it is for us to protect dune ESHA in particular across the state. That is, it is one of the, you know, fastest diminishing valuable ecosystems that have enormous benefits to the communities behind them, which are protected and buffered. So I hope that we can get to that place where we can find, find that balance. So I'm fully aligned with you guys today. And in always, you know, that balance between is not just protecting public access and, but it's also protecting all the, all the natural resources around it. So thanks staff for that.
I wanted to say that I, if, what, I'm reassured by staff's assurance that nothing's going to happen to the current use in this area right now, and that by going through a permitting process, the port and the staff will be able to work through and apply all the coastal commission and all the coastal act policies. So for example, since this volleyball court was established, the coastal act now has sea level rise planning requirements in it. So that could affect how we come to resolution here. The coastal act also has balancing conflicts, when there are conflicts between different policies in the coastal act, so that that's, that balance, conflict balancing and resolution for things that are most, least environmentally damaging, that's a conflict resolution that could be applied in the permit. And I urge the staff and the port to apply all of those balancing things so that we do come out with something that meets the needs of the community as well as satisfies the coastal act. And I think that that can be done just going through a process. And I would urge the port to engage in that fully. And I know I trust our staff to engage in that as fully and creatively as they have done in many instances. So with the assurance that nothing, that no doors are closed here, there's lots of opportunities to figure out how to make this work going forward, I will be supporting the staff recommendation.
All right. Commissioner Wilson?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Second?
Let me, I just, I, I'm ready to make the motion to move this forward. I do say that I actually have a lean towards the applicants in this case, but I don't know what those findings would be, and I don't know how we would get there. So I just want to be really clear that when this comes back, be prepared for some, some in-depth discussion around these, around these issues. That's, I just want to be prepared for that. And so, but I do think with the bifurcation, we can move forward, and I'm happy about, about that. So I'm going to go with the motion. I move that the Commission approve Coastal Development Permit 4-23-0184 pursuant to staff recommendation, and I recommend a yes vote.
Could I point a clarification?
Yeah.
The applicant asked that if the Commission were to move forward with this staff recommendation that they requested bifurcation of a couple of the conditions?
We discussed those, and, and I think, I think the staff made a case for why we would still move forward with those studies, and I think that those are reasonable under the conditions of what we're talking about. But again, we're going to get back to really what is the meat of this, and, and I just wanted to signal to the, to the staff that we'll have a, we'll have a good discussion, and I'm looking forward to that.
And I'll second. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion by Mike Wilson, seconded by Commissioner Aguirre. Just to make some comments, I'm not going to be long-winded because everything that I kind of feel and was thinking was already said. But I do agree that with the staff's recommendations on this, I do think that we need to figure out how to balance what has occurred in the past with impacts that, then, the impacts that we've seen on ESHA and figuring out to the greatest extent possible whether it means moving the courts or whether it means retaining the courts there and doing, you know, restoration in other parts of the area. I mean, I think that we want to explore to the greatest extent possible all the options that, that are available to us. And I think that it's really critical in evaluating those options that we're working closely with the Port District and the community as well. And so I'm hoping we can get to some mutual resolution on this item, and I hope that it can come back to us pretty soon. And with that...
I made a technical error in my motion, so I want to make sure I get it on the record.
Okay, so we'll revisit the motion.
So the motion is, I just got the number wrong. I apologize. So I move that the, that the Commission approved Coastal Development Permit Number 4-24-0248 pursuant to staff recommendations. I recommend a yes vote. And as part of that discussion in the future, my question, one of my questions will be like, where did they have these activities before this happened? Thanks.
And I'll second again.
Okay. And then I forgot to also say that I'm actually really happy about the fact that we have this sand replenishment plan moving forward. We, I think we've all been focused on the volleyball issue, but I think this is also a really important thing that we're approving today as it relates to sand replenishment, which, you know, will ultimately help us maintain and retain our beaches. And so with that, I'll ask Ms. Miller for the roll call vote.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Escalante?
Yes.
Escalante, yes. Commissioner Harmon?
No.
Harmon, no. Commissioner Redoni?
Yes.
Redoni, yes. Commissioner Nardo?
Aye.
Nardo, yes. Commissioner Uranga?
Aye.
Uranga, yes. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner Aguirre?
Yes.
Aguirre, yes. Chair Cummings?
Aye.
Cummings, yes. The vote is eight yes, one no.
All right. So let's move on to the South Coast District Deputy Director's Report for Los Angeles County.
Can we get a break at some point?
Yeah, I was, well, I was going to, I mean, I figured that'll go quick. And then, actually, so that I'll actually ask, that's going to be a pretty quick item, but it's 11:50. We could break for lunch after the Deputy Director's Report for Los Angeles, or we could take a short break, come back and kind of push through the agenda. But I'll just look to the Commissioners to see. Okay. So let's get through the Deputy Director's Report, and then we'll take an hour break for lunch. Okay. All right. So Deputy Director's Report for Los Angeles.
Thank you. Item 14 is the Deputy Director's Report for the South Coast District. It includes three waivers, one emergency permit. In regard to that emergency permit, it was issued to the Catalina Yacht Club, which was in imminent danger of collapse, and they needed to replace six 12-inch timber piles and repair two 12-inch diameter timber piles with plastic wrapping that were damaged during a storm event. Now, staff did receive one email from Mr. Andrew Rice objecting to one of the waivers being reported today, the VOA application. That's CDP 5-24-1051-W. It's for an interior remodel in addition to an existing one-story, 920-square-foot single-family residence, resulting in a two-story, 27-foot-high, 2,303-square-foot residence. Mr. Rice makes various assertions, including that the remodel was not reviewed by the city's Architectural Review Board, that the plans may not be accurate, and other non-coastal resource-related issues. However, staff has confirmed the accuracy of the plans and would note that a local government ARB review is a local government process, not a coastal act requirement. The primary concern raised in his letter was that the new addition would not be set back adequately from an accessory structure on the neighbor's property, which encroaches onto the subject property where the remodel would occur. The applicant has worked with our staff to address that issue by redesigning the project to ensure an adequate minimum five-foot setback between the two structures. And Mr. Rice is, well, I'll just note that finally, staff has one correction to that waiver, to correct a clerical error. The waiver included language that it would not become effective until reported at our April meeting because this item had been pre- April meeting because this item had been previously postponed. That language is corrected to read, it will not become effective until it's reported at this, the commission's May meeting. With that change, staff continues to recommend this waiver be approved as part of the Deputy Director's Report today. In addition, last month's hearing in response to public comment, the commission requested a brief update on the status of the City of Ramosa Beach's short-term rental regulations. And to provide that update, I would note that the City of Ramosa Beach began prohibiting short-term rentals around 2016. However, the city never applied for or obtained authorization from this commission. Staff notified the city by letter at that time that they must obtain either an amendment to their land use plan, as they don't yet have a certified LCP, or a coastal permit for those regulations. The city initially declined to submit an application, however, last year, the city did submit an application for an LUP amendment. It was incomplete due to lacking several informational requirements. We informed the city by letter. They have not provided any response. And our staff is working to reach out. Our staff is reaching out to the city to work with them to try to complete that application, but that effort has been slowed by the city staff having a high turnover. Most recently, they lost their planning director. And so, we'll be continuing to reach out to the city to hopefully move that item forward. Now, in regard to the other items in the Deputy Director's Report that require action today, we're not aware of any opposition to those items and we're asking whether three or more commissioners object to any of the items in the Deputy Director's Report. Staff is available for questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Any expertes? Seeing none. Any members of the public sign up to speak during public comment on this item?
Yes, we have two speakers. We have Tang Vo and Barum Badi. Tang Vo, you may unmute.
Good morning, Commissioner, how are you? So, my name is Tang Vo and my family owns the property 129 Hart and in Santa Monica, California. So, the house was built in 1906 and we are seeking to renovate it in a cell that's consistent with the neighborhood. So, we have an Architectural Review Board approval and the redesign won architectural awards and we're here to seek some work. So, we've actually hired Su Lin Lapintain to oversee the construction of our forever home. She's actually our next-door neighbor directly to the right of us. She has impeccable taste and has, has very detail. So, she has renovated a number of houses on the block and is uniquely sensitive to minimizing the disruption to neighborhood owners. We ourselves want to be good neighbors and a strong contributor to the neighborhood. Andrew Rice, who's objecting, is a tenant in the neighboring home at 125-127 Hart, which my parents recently purchased. So, he has been served a 120-day notice to vacate via the ALICE Act as my parents will be moving in and making this as their primary residence. 125-127 Hart and 129 Hart will serve as a generational home for our entire family. We hope to have your approval. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Barum Badi?
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I'm the principal in charge of the design for Mahlaan Badi Architects and also I'm the professor, adjunct professor for Los Angeles Community College District. We designed this project with utmost notice to its historical context and have remained extremely sensitive to all the issues relevant to maintaining the character of the existing building and adding to the second floor with utmost care so it does not interfere with the existence of what was there already. I mean, Santa Monica Conservancy have supported us 100% with letters and recommended that the project was an excellent project in design and to be approved. I just wanted to draw your attention to the fact that all the items that we have been dealing with and the complaint or the expressions that Mr. Rice, Mr. Andrew did, we all addressed all of this in Design Review Board and also in the subsequent Planning Commission hearing, is all the technical issues. And I summarized them in four, five items. First of all, did we exceeded the height? No, we are below the limit of the height for three feet. Did we exceeded the area? No, we are below the allowed area to work with. Did we design as such to remove any structure on the neighboring that is intruding to our property? No, we designed around it. We considered the proportions of the existing and just built on that and added to it. Our building sits back 30 feet from the property line, the addition. So, we have considered all of these issues and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. All right, let's bring it back to the commission. Any questions, comments? Do three or more commissioners object to the staff's recommendation? Seeing none, commission concurs. We're gonna take a break. We will be back at 1 o'clock to resume the rest of the meeting.
Pardon me, Chair. May I? Before we break, I just wanted to make a quick statement. The next item up is 15A and I am recusing myself from the hearing on item 15A, application five twenty-five zero-zero-two due to potential conflict of interest under Government Code Section 87-100, so thank you.
And with that, we'll break for lunch. Thanks. All right, welcome back to the Friday, May 9th, meeting of the California Coastal Commission. The next item on our agenda is item number 15A, application number five dash two-five dash zero-zero-zero-two Naples Restaurant Group LLC, Long Beach. I'll turn it to staff for the presentation on this item.
All right, thank you. And item 15A will be presented by Jeff Palm, a coastal program analyst in our South Coast District. We do have a PowerPoint, please, and Jeff, take it away.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Item 15A is the hearing for a coastal development permit application for the annual Big Bang on the Bay event, a one-day event that includes a ticketed block party and fireworks display. The applicant is Naples Restaurant Group LLC. Next slide, please. To provide some background, Big Bang on the Bay has been held as an annual private event since 2011. Until 2023, a CDP was not required for this event pursuant to the commission's guidelines for the exclusion of temporary events. The commission approved CDPs for the event in 2023 and 2024, which included 11 special conditions to comply with the coastal access and recreation policies of the coastal act and to address concerns about impacts to water quality and marine mammals, birds, and other species of concern. The 2024 event was held on September 1st rather than July 3rd due to the lateness of the CDP application's submittal and its incomplete status, primarily due to the application's failure to include an analysis of alternatives to fireworks given the environmental impacts associated with fireworks at this location. Last year, several commissioners provided direction to the applicant and staff that they would be unlikely to support future fireworks shows for the private Big Bang on the Bay event due to growing concerns regarding potential adverse impacts fireworks shows may have on coastal resources in the event vicinity, and requested the applicant consider alternatives, including the use of drone shows for future events. The subject CDP application was received on December 31st and included a request for five years of the annual fireworks show and associated block party. Commission staff deemed the application incomplete due to missing application materials, including but not limited to the alternatives analysis required by the previous year's permit, event staging plans, fireworks best management practices, a noticing list, and local approval, and requested a meeting with the applicant team. Commission staff met with the applicant on February 11th to discuss the proposed event and recommended the applicant consider revising their proposal to eliminate the fireworks component of the event and seriously evaluate a drone show alternative, however, the applicant did not choose to revise their application. Next slide, please. As shown on this slide, the proposed block party would be primarily located within Alamitos Bay Landing in southeast Long Beach. The proposed fireworks display would launch from a barge in open coastal waters of Alamitos Bay, equidistant from Alamitos Bay Landing, Naples Island, and the Long Beach Peninsula. The entire event is located on open bay waters and filled state tidelands, therefore, the site is within the commission's area of original permit jurisdiction and the standard of review is the Chapter III policies of the coastal act. Next slide, please. As proposed, the private block party would begin at 5:00 PM and end at 9:30 PM on July 3rd annually for five years and includes the temporary use and closure of public walkways, public areas, approximately 50 parking spaces, and part of the Marina Drive right away north of the Boathouse on the Bay Restaurant. The block party area would be fee-ticketed and perimeter fenced, highlighted in yellow on this slide. The fee is proposed to be $85 per adult and $35 per child with options for VIP, for premium VIP seating at higher price points. The applicant has indicated that net proceeds would be distributed to local beneficiaries. Public access adjacent to the site would be maintained, which is represented with blue dashed lines. Temporary development within the private block party area includes the installation of vendor booths, food trucks, a DJ concert stage, seating areas, as well as a fireworks staging area and safety zone. Following the 2023 Big Bang on the Bay event, commission enforcement staff confirmed the event was held in noncompliance with several special conditions related to public access. The Boys and Girls Club of Long Beach was the applicant of last year's event and submitted a public access compliance report confirming last year's event was held in compliance with the public access conditions of the CDP. Commission staff are recommending the same public access conditions previously imposed for the 2023 and 2024 events. The proposed fireworks show would begin at 9:00 PM each year and last approximately 20 minutes. Since the applicant was the permutee of the 2023 Big Bang on the Bay event and is aware of last year's commission action in relation to the 2024 event, the applicant has proposed to adhere to the conditions previously imposed by the commission. Next slide, please. According to monitoring reports for the 2023 and 2024 Big Bang on the Bay events, there have been some coastal resource impacts associated with the fireworks display at this site. Regarding marine resources, coastal bird species known to nest at this site play an important role to the local ecosystem. While the reports conclude that there were no observed permanent disruptions to coastal birds in the vicinity since all nestlings aberved the day before and the day of the event were still present following the events, the reports also acknowledge that multiple adult birds were observed flying away from the nest due to noises associated with the event. Additionally, local environmental organizations have provided evidence of the temporary disturbance during previous Big Bang on the Bay fireworks displays. A recent study concluded that fireworks can result in nest abandonment, cause fledging birds to fall out of nests, and cause birds to experience disrupted sleep and increased distress, vigilance, and fear. Section 25.1.1 of Title 14 of the California Code of Regulations defines harassment of animals as an irrelevant part, quote, "an intentional act in which disrupts an animal's behavior, normal behavior patterns, which includes but is not limited to breeding, feeding, or sheltering," end quote. Therefore, the proposed event, which has historically caused adult birds to temporarily abandon nests, may constitute harassment under Section 25.1.1 of Title 14 of the California Code of Regulations. Next slide, please. Past monitoring reports also indicate that 0.6 and 0.84 pounds of fireworks debris were collected from the waters of Alamitos Bay and adjacent shoreline after the Big Bang on the Bay events in 2023 and 2024 respectively. Using the applicant's estimation that 5% of the pre-ignited firework weight would result in debris and that the net explosive weight is about 375 pounds, the fireworks display would thus be anticipated to produce 18.75 pounds of debris. Therefore, approximately 97% of the fireworks debris from the last two events were unaccounted for in the post-event debris collection. Special Condition 6 of last year's CDP required the applicant to collect additional marine debris to account for the difference in expected versus collected debris from the fireworks display. However, the monitoring reports did not provide information on any additional marine debris collection efforts, therefore, it is unclear how much debris remains in the marine environment following each event. Next slide, please. Regarding other water quality issues, the monitoring report submitted for last year's event identified numerically significant increases in eight pollutant concentrations following the fireworks display, including metals commonly found in fireworks such as lead, titanium, and copper. In addition, 62% of known-related firework pollutants had elevated concentrations in post-firework water samples as compared to pre-event samples. According to the commission's Water Quality Senior Environmental Scientist, Dr. Holly Hall, although post-event pollutant concentrations did not exceed established toxicity thresholds, several showed substantial increases and provide clear evidence that the event led to measurable water quality degradation. Next slide, please. Given past concerns about environmental impacts from fireworks displays, the commission required in its CDP actions a comprehensive analysis of alternatives to fireworks display. The analysis provided by the applicant maintained the applicant's preference for a water-based fireworks show despite the conclusion that a drone show would result in fewer adverse environmental impacts. Given this underlying conclusion, commission staff recommends Special Condition 1, requiring the applicant to submit revised final plans to eliminate the use of fireworks display while still allowing for a drone show, which has been identified as the least environmentally damaging aerial display alternative to fireworks. Fireworks displays commonly cause distress to veterans and other sensitive populations due to the sounds, intense light, and smells they produce. The recommended drone show alternative would not produce such sounds, intense light, or smells, thereby providing an aerial display alternative that is more inclusive of individuals who experience various forms of sensory sensitivities, which would expand public access to the event. Next slide, please. The applicant asserts that it is not possible to hold a drone show over Alamitos Bay due to health and safety concerns, but did not provide sufficient detail as to why. Commission staff are aware of several drone shows that have occurred in the coastal zone, thus, commission staff contacted a local drone operator to learn about the feasibility of preparing a drone show over Alamitos Bay. The local operator confirmed there are several locations adjacent to Alamitos Bay that could be used as a staging area for the drone show as shown on this slide. These locations include a staging area shown in yellow to be used for takeoff and landing of the drones, as well as a flight path and show area that would avoid flight over members of the public. Moreover, staff also coordinated with staff from other harbors such as Ventura Harbor, who have previously held drone show events, to confirm that such shows are feasible and have been held successfully in similar harbor areas. Based on this research, staff believes that the use of a drone show is feasible in this case. Next slide, please. In closing, staff believes the proposed event as conditioned is consistent with the Chapter III policies of the coastal act and recommends that the commission approve this application with nine special conditions, to submit revised final plans for a drone show, prepare a marine debris reduction plan, monitor nesting bird sites, maintain public access, and obtain necessary agency approvals. The motion and resolution can be found in Page 6 of the staff report. Staff would like to note that an addendum was posted to the commission's website to address comments received following publication of the staff report. All comments received were in support of the Big Bang on the Bay event, but varied in preference for a fireworks display or drone show. This concludes the staff presentation and staff is available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, are there any expertes on this item? Commissioner Uranga?
Thank you, Chair. On, excuse me, April 30th, excuse me, I had a meeting with Anna Christensen and Ann Cantrell, myself and my administrative assistant, where we talked about the, the negative effects of the drone show. Let me rephrase that. Negative effects of removing the fireworks and having a drone show in its place. They are, they contend that the damage to the quality of birds, the nesting birds, the water and the environment is much more harmful than what a drone show would provide. That was a formal expertise that I had. I had informal expertise with Christina Dugan, who represents that area. During a council retreat that we had, she moved aside and she talked about her concerns with the staff recommendation. On August, no, on April 30th, I had a meeting, also an informal meeting with a constituent who also moved aside during another event to talk about his concerns regarding the Big Bang on the Bay. On May, on April, no, on May 5th, I had an informal expertise with city manager Tom Otica. We were talking about other issues related to city council matters, but this issue came up and we, and we talked about his concerns with the Big Bang on the Bay and the, specifically Special Condition 1 requiring a drone show. And his concern was the ability of the city to have a staging area that would work for the drones. And then finally, on May 6th, I also had an informal meeting with Mayor Richard, Mayor Rex Richardson, where he also discussed his concern about staging areas for a drone show and the effects that a removal of a fireworks show would have on the event and its ability to raise funds for beneficiaries like the Boys and Girls Club and other nonprofits who use this event as an opportunity for fundraising. I also have other comments, but I'll reserve those for afterwards, but those are my... I also have other comments, but I'll reserve those for afterwards, but those are my, my ex parte's.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other commissioners with ex parte's? Seeing none, is the applicant here or online? Looks like they're here present with us.
Yes, we have both in person and online. John Morris here in person, and Caroline Wilson online.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, thank you commissioners. My name is John Morris.
Okay, one second before you start. How much time will you need? We can...
10 minutes?
10 minutes. So, get 10 minutes on the clock, and once we get that up and running, you can go ahead.
Okay, thank you for hearing me today. I started this project that the, it was the 10-year anniversary of 9/11 when the city approached me to put on an event to celebrate, to do a celebration of life, and they wanted fireworks. So, we did the fireworks in the bay. It was a massive success. And then we decided, and we raised money at that time for the Firefighters Association. And then we tied it in with local charities, and we have raised $1.7 million for local charities, and most of the beneficiaries for Mr. Oranga, well, most of them were in his district. $500,000 was raised for Children Today, which is a homeless center for kids, and we raised a lot of money for them over the years, and the Boys and Girls Clubs, the YMCA, the Autism Center. We have about 10 charities we've raised a lot of money for over the years. Since 2011, I'm sorry, I get emotional about this topic. I've been doing this for 15 years, and it's just gone unbelievably well for the community. And what I didn't mention today, I believe there's like 360 or 400 emails sent in from the public in support of this event. And the people that are against the event are people that have been against the event from day one. The Ann Cantrells and the Ann Christiansens, they've done nothing but attack this event constantly. Yet, for 11 years, PI Environmental is the company we hired to check the water before the event, check the water after the event, send a robo-camera down to make sure there's no debris on the bottom of the bay. Two years ago, the coastal staff added that the next day, I also had to have a diver go in the water to make sure what the cameras tell us is true. So, we did all that. We have never, in 11 years, ever had a negative report come back from coastal staff regarding our environmental report. Switch to birds. We use a lady, Bettina Eastman. She's been doing this bird program for 30 years. None of her reports that she's submitted, I hear what Jeffrey's saying, because the Ann Cantrells and the Ann Christians, very passionate about what they're about, and I get all that. I totally get the passionate side. But there's no compromise. We do the bird program, and you come back with not one issue, again, never anything from coastal staff that we've had an issue. I have never received one thing in the 15 years I've been doing it, in writing, to tell me what I'm doing wrong. Never. So, all we get is added increments of, let's make it more difficult, let's make it more difficult. 100, and he calls it a, a private event. Private? 1,300 people fit in that way that he showed you. Every one of those dollars from that 1,300 people goes to the local charities. In the meantime, there's 125,000 people around the bay. That's the city's number, not mine. Seal Beach, which is adjacent to the venue, has 25,000 to 35,000 people sitting on their beach enjoying the fireworks. We're celebrating this country's birthday. Everything's been fireworks for 200 years. So, I'm going to be the first fireworks show, I believe, that the coastal commission is not going to allow. Jeffrey and two other staff members met with the city two weeks ago to talk about drones. They met with the Special Events Officer, they met with the Fire Department, and they met with the Police Department. They were totally told 100%, you cannot do a drone show in the bay. We can't have people underneath the drones. You can't have people sitting on the beach underneath the drones. You can't have boats in the bay with the drones. Okay, what's the option we have next? They came up with an idea of moving it five miles down the beach. Five miles. So, the people that live, totally live around that bay, pay for these fireworks. I don't pay for it. I'm just the guy that organizes it, and I raise the money. All the households around the bay write checks to the charity. I give the bills for the fireworks to the charity, they pay the bills, and they keep the money that's left over. The same people that have done negativity towards the event sued me. I just spent three years in federal court. We won our first case in federal court to prove all the environmental people at that time wrong. They appealed it, and then I had to go before the three-judge panel of the Ninth Circuit Court. I won that case. Now, they're appealing it again. And even the judges asked them, what do you get out of this? You're not going to get any money. No, we just want to make sure he doesn't get it. So, they're driving, my business has paid $200,000 in attorney fees, just fighting this program, because I totally believe in it 100%. If I thought for one minute that I was causing an issue in the water, or I was causing an issue with birds, why would I do that and negatively impact my restaurant? Because people would be ticked off. But they're not. They love what we're doing. It's a community event, a true, true community event. And we're, we're talking about the Block Party. It's 36 parking places. 18 on this side is city vehicles, 18 on this side is boat owners. There is no sidewalk, there's no accessibility, it's a little street that dead-ends. So, we take those cars out, and I put tables and chairs where those cars would have been parked. There's nowhere else for anybody to go. The public access, 125,000 people versus 1,300 that are paying for the fireworks to help raise money for the programs in Long Beach. And I, I just find it hard to believe that it's, it's come to this. Nine weeks ago, you got a call from the gentleman that's putting on the San Diego show. Hey, I've been told to call you by the coastal commission staff and CERF, the C-E-R-F group out of San Diego, the ones that sued me, you need to call John Morris, because he uses the most environmentally friendly fireworks. And I said, who said that? Who told you to call me? And it's just amazing to me that through that process, those same people thank him for working with them. So, I call him. What did you do to work with them? Nothing, John. You told me who to get the fireworks from, and I've got the same conditions you have on my deal. Oh, and you get a two-year deal for fireworks? Nice. I don't know, I don't understand this at all. It's mind-boggling to me that nobody has ever said a negative thing about the PI environmentalist that checks the water. Nobody has ever said anything against the lady that does the bird deal, except the Long Beach locals, like I said, that are so passionate about everything, they just don't give in. They do not give in. It's a, I don't, it's a community event to the max. And again, for 200 years, we do fireworks, and they're going to continue doing fireworks. A lot of people don't do the usual illegal fireworks, because they're now going to see the greatest fireworks show in the bay. It's reduced the number of people that are setting up their own personal fireworks. And I thought that'd be a good thing. But it doesn't seem like it for the people that are opposed to it, and they're opposed to every project in the city. It's just, I don't know what to say about this other than the fact that you need to do the right thing on this one. This is a public event. It's not a private event, and we should be treated equally as what San Diego is. We have big plans for the 250th birthday next year for this country. Of course, it's going to be about fireworks. So, we might be the only one in the whole country that can't do fireworks? You've got to be kidding me. What the hell have we done to get to this point? We've done everything you've asked us to do for the last 15 years, every single year, but they come up with something, they always twist it. It's a private event? What? Private? That's the way they spin it to make us look bad. You need to do the right thing on this one. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any members of the public signed up to speak on this item?
We have an additional member with the applicant, Representative Caroline Wilson on Zoom.
Uh, wait, hang on a second. Because I think the intent was to give 10 minutes to the applicant as a whole, and so that time's expired.
Uh, there's 32 seconds.
Okay, 32 seconds, go for it.
Yeah, if we can save that for rebuttal, please, thank you.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you. And then, next, we have Christina Dugan, Councilmember from Long Beach. Give us a second as we promote you as a panelist. Christina Dugan, you're in as a panelist. You should be able to unmute and begin.
Can you hear me?
Uh, yes, I can hear you.
Wonderful, wonderful. Good afternoon, I'm Christina Dugan, Councilmember representing Long Beach's 3rd District, which is home to Big Bang on the Bay. Thank you for your time today. For years, as John Morris was stating, this event has brought families from across Long Beach and throughout Southern California to our coastline to celebrate together on July 3rd. I regularly hear people who tell me that this is sometimes the only time each year they make it to the beach. For many years, Big Bang on the Bay is their one connection to the ocean, an annual reminder of the beauty and vibrancy of our coast. Some in the community would prefer to see this event go away, they'd like it quieter, they'd like it to be a more private coastline. Although I can understand that perspective, the majority of residents enjoy welcoming visitors and celebrating what makes Long Beach special. And that's this event. Big Bang on the Bay isn't just a fireworks show, it's a series of events that support local nonprofits. And these fundraisers raise critical dollars for organizing, doing important work in our city. And they took a financial hit when the event was paused last year. I know there are concerns about fireworks and the environmental impact, but this show is no more disruptive than many fireworks displays already approved across the state. If the commission wants to revisit firework policy, then I believe it should be done statewide with a clear, consistent standard. But until then, I ask, you give our community the same opportunity to celebrate as others across California. Big Bang on the Bay brings people together, supports good causes, and opens up our coast to those who might not experience it otherwise. Please, let it continue. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Moving on to the general public, we have Anna Christensen, George Two-Horses Christensen, and then Tahisha Nap Christensen. Anna Christensen, go ahead. And we have your presentation.
Yeah, slideshow, please.
Just give us a second to bring it up.
Sure. Whose bay? Our bay. Alameda's Bay in Long Beach is a popular water recreational site and home to coastal birds and marine life. Next slide. Basta to Big Bang fireworks. Annual Big Bang fireworks shows harm our air and water quality. Exploding fireworks traumatize wildlife and pets and trigger PTSD in combat zone survivors. Toxic chemicals and debris from fireworks remain in the bay, contributing to elevated levels of heavy metal. Next. Coastal residents and visitors deserve a safe and healthy bay. They don't come for fireworks, in the dark, by the way. Next. Alameda's Bay marine life depends on these calm waters as well, including a seahorse nursery. Next. Coastal birds nest, roost, and forage in Alameda's Bay. Next. Rookeries are failing as nesting sites on Alameda's Bay are destroyed or abandoned on the peninsula, on Marina Drive, and within Alameda's Bay Marina. Next. Fireworks exacerbate an ongoing air quality crisis. The American Lung Association ranked LA Long Beach as the nation's most ozone-polluted region in '23 and '24. Next. Same communities are choosing better, smarter ways to celebrate with drone and laser shows. Next. Fundraise without fear. Long Beach doesn't need fireworks to open our hearts and pocketbooks in 2024. Long Beach gives raised over $2 million in a single day, more than John Morris has raised in, if that's even true, in 11 years. Next. Don't bang the bay. Approve the 2025 Big Bang event CDP without fireworks shows as conditioned by staff. Thank you very much.
And then Anna Christensen, do you have George Two-Horses Christensen with you?
Yeah, he is separately, he has a separate thing, a separate two minutes.
I guess, yeah, I'm just making sure you're sharing the same device.
Okay, got it. Oh, hold on a second. We're gonna maybe call him late in a bit, can we call him later?
Okay, we can call you next, after Tahisha Nap Christensen. I see that you're on a phone. You should be able to unmute now and begin. And you may need to dial *6 to unmute, but you should be able to unmute now.
Hello? Hello, this is Tahisha Nap Christensen. I'm sorry, I thought I had a minute, let me just, I have a statement here. I'm representing, my name's Tahisha Nap Christensen. I'm an indigenous person as well, so this comes from an indigenous perspective, but I'm also a founder of the Pavugna Wetlands Protectors nonprofit. So, I have a statement here I'd like to read on behalf of our nonprofit, from the indigenous perspective as well. Dear Commissioners, and thank you for your time today as well, Commissioners, I appreciate that, your time. Dear Commissioners, Pavugna Wetlands Protectors formed in 2019 to protect the Pavugna Los Cerritos wetlands from expanding oil and gas operations and to preserve the existing wetland ecosystem and tribal sites from destruction. We take direction from Tongla and Ahashaman culturekeepers, working to preserve sacred sites and to ensure the survival of all of our relations. Alameda's Bay is critical to the well-being of the Los Cerritos wetlands. Not only do tidal flows circulate between the bay and the wetlands, but wildlife and marine life rely on both for food and shelter. As industrial, commercial, and residential development dramatically expands in the area, the health of these interdependent coastal ecosystems is increasingly at risk. We appreciate that the Coastal Commission has decided to require CDPs for fireworks shows, as these temporary events have a significant impact on coastal communities and environments. Sincere efforts to reduce harm have been made by conditioning CDPS to better monitor impacts and to limit and retrieve discharged debris. However, fireworks shows continue to have serious health consequences, especially for those within the blast range. Firework smokes contain harmful particulate matter that can irritate the lungs, trigger asthma attacks, and worsen existing lung diseases. Loud noises from fireworks can also lead to temporary or permanently, permanent hearing loss, triggering PTSD in survivors of combat and panicked pets and wildlife, especially birds.
Thank you.
We can confirm...
Thank you. And next, we're coming back to George Two-Horses Christensen, and then we'll follow And then you're still muted, Anna Christensen. Okay, now you're unmuted. Okay, go ahead.
For those of us who have been attending Big Bang fireworks shows to document flushing birds and to be able to rescue injured birds, it is an incredible relief that Coastal Commission's staff does not support another Big Bang's fireworks show over Alameda's Bay. While the final decision will be up to you, Commissioners, we are very hopeful that you will concur with the staff's recommendation for a drone show alternative to fireworks. Last year, many of you stated that you would not support fireworks show again in this location. We thank the Coastal Commission staff for a thorough analysis of a drone show... We thank the Coastal Commission staff for a thorough analysis of a drone show as a preferable alternative to a fireworks display. We appreciate the fact that for multiple years, the applicants have been afforded opportunities to improve this event with respect to both environmental and public safety. Insisting that a private fundraiser for local charities is overly burdened by coastal act compliance is unnecessarily and unrealistically adversarial. It is possible to do good without harm. Hopefully, the support of the Coastal Commission, with the support of the Coastal Commission, we can look forward to a magical display of lights over Alameda's Bay this coming July that does not involve ear deafening explosions of toxins. I would also like to say, Mr. Morris made a bevy of misrepresentations in his presentation. I hope you can pinpoint those. And like my mom said, Long Beach Gives raised over $2 million in one day without any fireworks. It's possible to give money without blowing up, you know, without these explosions in the sky. And I'm glad Mr. Oranga had all those meetings with the staff that had concerns over the staging area. I'm glad those concerns were allayed by the drone show company that identified several staging locations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Ann Cantrell, followed by Marcia Hanscom, and then Gordana Cager. Ann Cantrell. We have your video as well, please let us know when you want us to start it.
Yes, Ann Cantrell Sierra Club, please play the video of last year's Big Bang on the Bay. This was taken. I don't hear any sound.
Now give us a second, we're working on the audio.
Do I have my time back?
You'll get the full time.
Thank you. This was taken under the trees, the nesting trees. On Fuel Dock Road.
Just give us one sec while we bring up the video and get the clock running. So just please, thank you for your patience. There you go.
Taken under the nesting trees on Fuel Dock Road. If you missed the very beginning, there were egrets flying out of the trees. This is only 20, 30 seconds of a 20-minute assault on and pollution from the fireworks. I'd like to read these comments from Jill Brennan, who is a Long Beach bird rescuer. She says, "Thank you for following the Federal Migratory Bird Act, which prohibits harassment and disruption of nesting birds." "Alameda's Park and Fuel Dock Road adjacent to the proposed Big Bang on the Bay are both active rookeries and nesting sites for egrets, herons, western gulls, and songbirds." "Last year, I witnessed ear-splitting fireworks and nonstop car alarms going off due to the loud booms. Herons and egrets fled their nests, some never returning and abandoning young chicks. I also saw the aftermath of a young great blue heron falling out of the nest into the bay. It struggled to swim to a dock as it was too young to fly. It was not seen the next day. In the week following the explosions, I pulled two young dead black-crowned night herons and a dead snowy egret juvenile out of the marina. How many other birds died that were never found?" Birds can die from a cardiac opus similar to heart attacks in people. Thank you.
And next is Marcia Hanscom, followed by Gordana Cager, and then Kristin Northrop. Marcia, you should be able to turn your camera back on.
You're not being able to hear me. Great, can you hear me?
Not Gordana yet, Marcia Hanscom, please go ahead.
Great, thank you. Marcia Hanscom, with the Coastal Lands Action Network. Honorable Commissioners and staff, I want to say we support this staff report. We love the idea that you want to change to drones. We've been very, very concerned about fireworks and the impacts to our coastal resources for some time. As a little girl, I loved fireworks, and I loved them until in my 40s, I got involved with a biologist. And we went to a fireworks show off the coast of Malibu that some wealthy people along Malibu Road put on, and he said to me, "Well, what about the dolphins and their echolocation that they have? They, you know, these bangs are not good for them." And that opened my eyes and my heart and my mind. And then we moved to Playa del Rey, next to the Biono Wetlands Ecological Reserve in Marina Del Rey. And he came home one day on July 5th with a bag full of marine debris, like you saw in the staff report. And I said, "What's that? Oh, my gosh, all this said danger, toxic, all of these wires and cardboard things," and that opened my eyes further. So I want to correct a couple of things that were said by Mr. Morris. Water quality is an issue, and SeaWorld has been shut down on fireworks by the Water Board. Same with Redondo Beach. Also, in Marina Del Rey this last year at the Christmas Boat Parade, we had a drone show they want to experiment with, and there were boats in the marina. So they can do this with boats there. And behind me, you can see a picture of a heron in a box getting ready to be sent to a wildlife rescue after fireworks, which is what happens every year.
Thank you. And next is Gordana Cager, Kristin Northrop, and then Robert Roy Van de Hook.
Gordana Cager.
Can you, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you Commissioners for the opportunity to speak. My name is Gordana Cager. I live in Long Beach, and I'm a proud member of SURF. I enjoy walking around Alameda's Bay and the marina almost daily. I appreciate the huge effort your staff has made in the course of this Big Bang permit application. It hasn't been easy. I support the recommendation to transition to a drone show. This effort to stop the awful impacts over Alameda's Bay started 10 years ago with Coast Law Group, the finest group of attorneys practicing law on behalf of California residents and protecting our California coast. Their efforts to protect the recreational water quality in Alameda's Bay is to be celebrated. Please approve Condition 1 in the coastal development permit before you today and end this fireworks show in Long Beach. And on a personal note, I would like to thank Commissioner Roberto Oronga for his many years of service on the California Coastal Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kristin Northrop, Robert Roy Van de Hook, and then Susan Kirks. Kristin Northrop. Uh, we see that you're still muted.
Sorry about that. Good afternoon Commissioners, my name is Kristin Northrop, and I am here as policy advocate for Coastal Environmental Rights Foundation, also known as SURF. We are all aware of the impacts fireworks have on our environment and our health, from the debris polluting our waters to the toxic plumes contaminating the air we breathe. SURF is encouraged to see staff supporting the move towards drone shows as an alternative to fireworks. Last year, several Commissioners stated it would be their last year they approved fireworks. We sincerely hope that commitment still stands. I spoke with the drone show owner and operator, who had planned to testify, but unfortunately was called into the field. He confirmed the drone show would be entirely feasible for the July 3rd event. Advances in drone technology have significantly reduced the required space for takeoff and landing. Only a 30-by-50-foot area is needed to stage a show with 1,000 drones, or half that for 500. The show can be launched from any open space, such as the beach, provided there's a restricted flight path. According to the Los Angeles Water Board, the applicant still has not provided video footage from the last event capturing the extent of the debris and potential fallout zone in the immediate vicinity of the barge, any discharge in the water, or potential discharge from the barge itself, as required by the NPDES permit. There's no confirmation whether this video footage exists. Drones offer a safer, smarter, and more environmentally friendly, responsible alternative. We're not asking for the event to stop just for a compromise by using drones. There are many shows across the country that are making this transition, such as Imperial Beach. We thank staff for their work on this item and fully support the staff report with the condition to replace fireworks with drones. We look forward to celebrating in a way that promotes a cleaner, safer environment. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next is Robert Roy Van de Hook, Susan Kirks, and then Nancy Okada. Robert Roy Van de Hook.
Okay, hello, good afternoon Coastal Commissioners and staff. I support the staff report. My name is Robert Yon Van de Hook, my nickname is Roy. And I'm an environmental biological scientist, wildlife biologist, and archaeologist. And I am thankful for Marcia to mention the scientist friend of hers, partner, that alerted her to the effect of the bottlenose dolphin, impact on bottlenose dolphin. And it is a nearshore dolphin that stays right in the surf zone and does like to go into estuaries and harbors and is endemic to a short stretch of the California coast from about San Francisco Bay into northwest Baja. And that's it for this special population. We need to be mindful of that. We don't have studies yet on that, but science talks about precaution. And I have some personal information from monitoring bottlenose dolphin in Marina Del Rey that for several weeks after the July 4th annual fireworks, the bottlenose dolphin does not come into the marina. And then after a certain amount of time, they begin to come in again in small pods of three to four birds. I also would like to thank Roberto Orango for his interest in wildlife and all the years in being on the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission. Good to see you. Hola, Roberto, and como estas? And I would like to give a little bit of a science statement on the great blue heron and the fish and game codes. I worked with Scott Harris and Lieutenant Smurl Warden in Marina Del Rey. And there, we were able to document history in the manual and no impact or noise or any kind of within 500 feet of a great blue heron nest. And we stopped that and got it determined in Escha in Marina Del Rey for saving the great blue heron. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Susan Kirks, Nancy Okada, and then Michael Walczek. Susan Kirks.
Thank you. Good afternoon Commissioners and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Susan Kirks, and I am with Madrone Audubon in Northern California. We're based in Sonoma County. I have spoken to your commission in the past about the benefits of changing from fireworks to drone light shows, which, as your staff has discovered in their very good research and reporting, is a trend that is really taking hold all along the California coast and in California. Last year, our Audubon organization began an advocacy in our area to change from fireworks to drone light shows. We have received some very promising inquiries from two of our cities. And over Christmas of this year, or over the holiday season in December, a San Diego-based drone light show company produced and provided an excellent drone light show in our area. So I want to also acknowledge your staff's very good work on this particular issue. I support the staff recommendation. I support the research that has been done. And I also support the comments by previous speakers, Anna Christensen, Ann Cantrell, and others regarding the benefits of changing from explosive violent fireworks to drone light shows, which are very colorful, are tailored to communities, and can be beautiful experiences, and also support very significant fundraising. So thank you very much, and I do hope that the Commission will vote in accordance with your staff's recommendation. It is the right recommendation. This is what is occurring, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, Nancy Okada, Michael Walczek, and then Philip Musakis. Nancy Okada. You should be able to unmute now.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Nancy Okada, Sierra Club California Coastal Subcommittee chair. And I'd like to thank the staff for its thorough report on this topic. We're in favor of the staff report, and we hope that, in fact, we will see more drone shows up and down the coast because of the environmentally sensitive nature of the environment and as well as the animals and other pets and people that would benefit from a drone show. So we hope that you, in fact, will vote in favor of the staff report because this is the future, a positive future for the environment and for all the living beings around. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Michael Walczek, and then Philip Musakis. Michael Walczek, you seem to be popping in and out of the meeting. And there you are again. You should be able to unmute as an attendee. Michael Walczek. All right, I seem to be not seeing a mic active. We'll move on to Philip Musakis. Philip, you should be able to unmute and begin.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good afternoon, Members of the Commission. My name is Philip Musakis. I'm the Executive Director of San Diego Coastkeeper. We are a clean water advocacy organization working in San Diego County to protect coastal waters. I am here to urge the Commission to support the staff recommendation. We also signed on to comments from SURF regarding this matter that go into more detail on why we believe transitioning the drones is a good idea and is a reasonable alternative for the fireworks display. Just to give you our experience, Coastkeeper has seen firsthand the impacts of numerous fireworks displays in Mission Bay, which is also is place host to many endangered seabirds and nesting birds, lots of aquatic life. And so we have seen the impacts from air, water, and noise impacts to the community around Mission Bay. We have done water quality monitoring in Mission Bay that shows or that detected elevated levels of metals, such as barium and cadmium, that are related directly to fireworks. We found elevated levels in the ambient water quality samples that we took. And we've also done diver surveys and other things to show how much debris accumulates when fireworks are exploited over water. So we urge the Commission to support the staff. We think that drones are a reasonable and available alternative to fireworks. And so we appreciate your time, and we hope you will make this transition for the Big Bang. Thank you.
Thank you. And then our last speaker is Michael Walczek. I still see you popping in and out of the meeting. It seems like we're not able to unmute you because there's no microphone connected. There's no other speakers. Chair Cummings.
Okay, I'll give the applicant five minutes for rebuttal.
And I'd like to clarify from one of the guests, I was not the applicant last year with the Big Bang, so I had nothing to do with if they didn't do the video or anything, because I know I did it in 2023. Also, one of the, Jeffrey brought up the lead and copper. Well, he's already gotten notification on there is zero lead and copper in fireworks. So that shouldn't be an issue regarding me. There must be 3,000 boats in the water in Alameda's Bay, so I'm sure that's where the lead and copper comes from. Here we have, let me see, Redondo Beach and Laguna Beach both went to drones last year. Here we have, let me see, Redondo Beach and Laguna Beach both went to drones last year. And you can look it up. Laguna is not doing it again. Their community went crazy. They want fireworks back. So this year, it's fireworks. Redondo Beach, this year, fireworks. I guess they don't have to go through the same process. I do. Everybody else just seems to skirt this issue. I don't know. Laguna Beach, Redondo Beach, San Francisco, Monterey Bay, the Queen Mary, Catalina, they're all doing shows. But we're the only one that's not going to because we have like 15 people that just go ballistic about fireworks. There's no compromise. We've compromised every year. We've done everything you've said to us, everything. There's not much more I can do other than fireworks are not illegal. Fireworks are not creating a problem in the water. And fireworks, they're not hurting the birds. They may create some issues at the time it's coming, but they all come back. So we can all use our own specialist, and they'll all give us different variations. But if it was so bad, why doesn't the fish and game just shut down every fireworks show in California? If they thought it was bad, why aren't they doing it? LA Water Board doesn't think it's bad. They've issued the permit to everybody. So I'm just asking, you know, I know you didn't hear it, but we got, how many emails did we receive in favor of the fireworks? Am I allowed to ask staff that question?
We can follow up after your time is up.
Okay.
And then somebody else was online as well as an applicant, if I remember correctly.
That was, that was my attorney, who was actually the person that worked with Jeff this whole process.
Okay. Seeing as how we have two minutes and 40 seconds left, we'll ask them if they wanted to speak because it sounded like they wanted to speak earlier.
Hi, commissioners. This is Caroline Wilson. As John mentioned, we are his lawyers who've been helping him out on this matter. I don't have too much more to add other than to emphasize that the Big Bang on the bay is a cherished tradition that brings our community, my community, together. It's a celebration of unity, of family, of our shared love of Long Beach, and the overwhelming community support for the fireworks show shouldn't go unrecognized. To answer Mr. Morris's question, over 300 individuals submitted letters in support of the fireworks show. They are the voices of our community, and they're speaking very loud and very clear. This event isn't just about those who attend the block party. It's about the thousands of residents who gather at Alameda's Bay, families who camp out for the day around Naples Island in anticipation of the fireworks show. It's about the surrounding businesses that plan special events and rely on the crowds to sustain their businesses. It's about local nonprofits that depend on the funds raised to support those in need. The city of Long Beach has been clear that a drone show is not workable in this area. Even if one could be done safely, it would require blocking large portions of the beach or public parking lots right on the eve of a national holiday. The Big Bang is meant to serve those who come out to the beach in Alameda's Bay for the holiday, not reduce access. Blocking this event as planned doesn't just impact Mr. Morris. It doesn't just cut off critical funding for nonprofits. It doesn't just hurt local businesses. It takes away a beloved celebration for the entire community. The city of Long Beach supports this event. The mayor supports this event, but more importantly, the people of Long Beach support this event. I urge the commissioners to listen to the voices of their community. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. With that, I'll bring it back to staff to see if there's any comments that they would like to make in response.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I have a few comments that I would like to make in response, and then I'll turn it over to some of our other staff here. I'll try to be brief. And Chris, while I begin speaking here, could you please pull up slide number 12 from the PowerPoint? And I'll just get started, and then we'll get to that slide in a moment. You heard the applicant, you know, assert that there have not been negative impacts associated with this event in the past according to the monitoring reports and that we had not issued them any notice about our findings regarding the previous events. And I just wanted to kind of clarify our process here. As I mentioned in our presentation, we had permits for this event in 2023 and 2024. And with those, we required monitoring of the event, including monitoring of birds, water quality, and marine debris. And we outlined our findings from those reports in the staff reports for the 2023 and 2024 permits, as well as the permit for this year's event. And so we carefully analyzed the impacts from the event. I think we disagree that we believe that there are impacts associated with the event, particularly the disruption of birds, the marine debris and water quality degradation. And if you'd like to ask additional questions regarding our findings on that, our technical staff are available online as well. We have Dr. Holly Hall with our water quality unit and Dr. John Angle available with our ecology unit that are happy to elaborate on those impacts. Next thing I want to just discuss briefly here is that we did have a meeting with the city. They raised some concerns regarding the feasibility of preparing a drone show. A couple of things that were identified is the issue of spacing. And so on the slide here, you can see the event footprint. And depicted in yellow, there's the fireworks display. It's required by law that for a fireworks show, you have to have a 600-foot fallout radius closed off during the show. And so in previous years, since this event has occurred, they've utilized the city of Long Beach staff to close off that 600-foot fallout radius for 30 minutes prior to the fireworks show and then during the fireworks show. So about an hour, that area depicted in yellow on the slide is closed off to members of the public. You can see in comparison, the drone show is depicted in blue, and that would be the footprint of the drone show, including the staging area, flight path, and show event space. That area is two and a half times smaller than the area required for a fireworks show. And so it's a little bit unclear to commission staff why it would not be possible to close off that area given it is a smaller space, of course, acknowledging that there's some space on the beach. But as you can also see depicted in that image, the entire flight path would not occur over members of the public. And during the presentation, Chris, if you want to jump up quickly to slide number nine, we depicted three different locations where we believe a drone show would in fact be feasible. This includes the event staging areas, which require a 3,600 square foot space, and then the flight path, all of which, as you can see, would not fly over members of the public. I just want to mention, though, that the condition also allows the applicant, if these locations are determined to not be feasible, they may present other options to us for the review and written approval of the executive director. So if those are limiting in the feasibility preparing the show, we do have that option within the conditional language as well. And additionally, the condition also allows the applicant to hold the event for one day annually for five years, any day between July 3rd and September 30th. So should there be issues with, you know, preparing for the event and preparing a drone show in time for the July 3rd event date, there is some wiggle room with the timing of that as well. The other thing I wanted to just address is there was this discussion regarding this event being labeled as a private event or a public event. The reason that commission staff have defined it as a private event is because that is what is before us, is the private block party, which is associated with the fireworks display. Commission staff in the staff report do acknowledge that thousands of people do attend the fireworks shows in previous years. We also, again, acknowledge the fact that members of the public are welcome to attend the drone show as well similarly, and acknowledge the fact that that is an option that would likely open up the access for members of the public who have those sensory sensitivities associated with fireworks displays. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Hudson for additional comments.
Thank you, Jeff. I would just like to add to what Jeff just mentioned, respond to the point that this recommendation could somehow be taken as a surprise or new direction by the applicant. And just as a reminder, that direction to the applicant about this very issue was given by this commission at a previous hearing to evaluate the feasibility of drones as an alternative for future shows. And if they were feasible, that strong direction to use that as an alternative. Now, in regard to other, I would note that other fireworks shows have been regulated by the commission. This is not a unique instance. And just a few months ago, this commission took action on the Port of San Diego's fireworks show, again grappling with the same issue and giving direction to the applicant to continue evaluating the use of drones. City of Santa Barbara fireworks show, previously approved by this commission, and in the past, the Wallala fireworks show in Northern California, where it was found that fireworks were not appropriate due to unique habitat and water quality concerns. Clearly, other local governments do have these public shows, and it continues to be an emerging issue as we continue to coordinate with other local governments about regulation of those shows. In regard to Mr. Morris's objection that the show is private, I would just like to add to what Jeff just explained, that of course, this show is private, but the relevance of noting that is that there are several other public fireworks displays within this vicinity. And so it was important that the public is not being precluded from those opportunities to view fireworks shows on the Fourth of July. There are other shows, other alternatives. But to differentiate that this is a small private show within this unique harbor area. And our recommendation is done on a case-by-case basis. Now, the commission is not making a determination today that about fireworks shows in general, but that in this specific case, there are alternatives to fireworks, including a drone show that would be less environmentally damaging in this unique location, given the presence of bird nesting habitat and water quality that would be potentially impacted by this particular show. And with that, I'm going to just turn to our executive director. No, I believe that concludes our comments.
Yeah, that can conclude our comments, but we are here for questions.
Okay. All right. Well, I'll bring it back to the commission for questions, comments, action. Commissioner Yaranga.
First of all, thank you to staff for bringing this item on the last Friday, on the last month of my appointment. Thank you very much. I'm having a lot of fun. And, but I want to thank staff for bringing it forward and doing the research. And I think at this point, I better clear up some things. The reason my voice sounds like it does is because I have what is called dyspnea. I can't swallow. So I get a buildup every now and then, and I have to clear my throat. And it has a effect on my, on the quality of my speech. So thank you for marrying with me as my voice fluctuates and whatever. But I want to thank the commission for their indulgence last year, for providing the opportunity to continue with the fireworks show last year, although there was some strong feelings of denying the permit, but you came through, and thank you very much for that. This year, it was under my understanding, by the way, that under the condition that the applicant and the applicants were going to deal for having a transition. Keyword, transition from fireworks to drones. What we have today is not a transition. It is a cutoff. It is saying, we'll give you five years to have an event only if you have drones, no fireworks. I see that as, as a very negative impact on this event, especially one that has such a potential for fundraising, for helping other organizations raise money, raise funds to help kids. And what we're discussing here is, I know at the end, the way I see it is 20 minutes of fireworks versus what can be a lifetime of effects on kids if they don't receive the funds necessary for them to continue with programs, tutoring, counseling, field trips, whatever, that is a result of the fundraising that takes place because of this event taking place. 20 minutes versus a lifetime. And I see that as not being fair. What I do appreciate is that staff has considered a five-year window for this, which is great. But a complete absence of fireworks is, in my opinion, a culture change. This culture that we have of having fireworks to celebrate our Fourth of July or other events is ingrained in our culture, and we shouldn't and can't just cut that off. Yes, there are other options. We're going more inner-city to see fireworks, but that's not what's happening here. This event is very specific to Long Beach, very specific to organizations that would benefit from the Long Beach event. So the transition is not, is not a transition. It's a direct cutoff, which I take offense to. Finally, I just want to say that the concerns that are being raised regarding the environment, regarding the water quality, regarding the ocean quality, is temporary. They heal themselves. But the effects on kids who aren't able to take advantage of the benefits of receiving funds for them to proceed with tutoring and funding and field trips is much longer and farther reach than that is for the effect that it would have temporarily. So permanent versus temporary is where I'm coming from. And I want to thank the commission again for your indulgence, for your listening. And I'm sure that at the end, your decision will be more, will be beneficial for the community as well as for the environment. And I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson, were you?
I don't want to speak to Commissioner Yaranga's concern, and I wasn't one of those diehards from the last time, so I want to be, you know, put myself in, make sure that we weren't in that. Not everybody was in the same place. And speaking to the transition concept, I was wondering if there, if there is a way to bifurcate this into a two-three split, where it's a two-year continuation of the existing conditions that were from last year on the fireworks, but then really actually putting the hard stop in 2027 to move to drones. I think part of this is like a lot of times, we, we think of projects and things moving forward. There are kind of new, new things we build and, or that we do, or there are new programs. And in this case, when we're really modifying sort of longstanding, existing programs, you know, part of what the physical things that need to be rewired are really the synopses in our, in our collective consciousness about what we're doing as we move forward. And that really is, it's, I think it's a bit more difficult than we might imagine sometimes. And so from that perspective, I'm just wondering about how this might be, if it's, you know, if we can entertain that conceptually, really actually talking about this five years actually as the transition, not the transition is today, but like we're moving through time and then we'll get to that place. This is a proposal. I don't know how comfortable my other commissioners would feel about that necessarily, but I want to throw it on the table for some analysis from staff. Thank you.
Yes, and through the, through the chair, I'm happy to respond. First, I'd just like to note that your staff did consider all those potential alternatives, including a longer transition period, similar to the commission's action on the San, Port of San Diego show a few months ago. Our recommend, of course, what we brought to you was based on our interpretation of previous commission direction and that those previous years might be considered some of that transition period where warning and direction was given to the applicant of what should be considered. But we do have, we can provide guidance today to the commission on how, I believe easily, the conditions could be modified to accomplish what Commissioner Wilson just described. So the phasing and terms of those conditions could be modified to allow for a fireworks show for a period of time within the five-year period. And if the commission desired, you could also continue to require that drones be required after a certain period of time. So we do have those ideas. We do know which other conditions would need to be added in from previous years, such as water quarter, water quality monitoring. So we'll just say, well, we are available to provide that guidance if the commission so wishes.
I would just add, too, that would be effectuated through an amending motion. So once the motion is made, there could be an amending motion to carry out this. So once the motion is made, there could be an amending motion to carry out this, what Steve just described. And if that's what the commission desires, we can walk you through that.
Thank you. Looking forward to what the other commissioners have to say about that. And I think Commissioner Oranga and I can probably put together an amending motion if that's, if it looks like we can move in that direction. Thanks.
All right. Commissioner Aguirre.
Thank you, Chair. So just to clarify and go over the impacts that were mentioned before, there are impacts to water quality, correct? There are impacts to wildlife as well, correct?
Correct.
Can you just summarize all of the impacts again, please, for the record?
Yeah, happy to do so. And again, if you'd like to have our water quality and our ecology staff join in to discuss further, I'm happy to do so. But in short, the disruption to birds in terms of causing adult birds to fledge and nest during the event due to noises associated with the event, measurable numerically significant increases in pollutant concentrations following the fireworks display, as well as measurable marine debris collection efforts that, again, per the applicant's estimation, only collecting and accounting for about 97% of the expected marine debris with the collection efforts, if that makes sense.
Yes. And then my understanding, there's been different applicants in the last few years. Yes?
Correct. The 2023 applicant is the same applicant. That's before you today. And last year was the Boys and Girls Club. We just note that this year's applicant has been the organizer of the event since its beginning, or, you know, conception in 2011.
Since its inception.
Correct.
So it would be safe to assume that you all have been working with the applicant for that time?
Correct.
And if I remember correctly, in 2023, there was mention of starting to transition into the use of drones, correct?
Correct.
So this is not a surprise or a last-minute, nine weeks ago?
That's correct.
Situation, as the applicant has mentioned?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that for the record. I will also just add that, as was mentioned by one of the commenters earlier on Zoom, Imperial Beach has hosted a drone show, and it is spectacular. And I think it actually adds to the sentiment of patriotism, because you have the ability to form very patriotic images. Not that that's why we're here as a commission to oversee patriotism or celebration, but just want to mention that, that it was really great and without any impacts to our coastal resources, which is indeed under our jurisdiction and mandate as a coastal commission. So the, you know, the coastal impacts are of great concern to me, you know, understanding that this event is for the benefit of children, and that's that's very commendable. And I mentioned this last year as well. But I think that both the applicant and the organizer have had ample opportunity to see the direction that this commission intended to take for now a few years. So in my opinion, that constitutes a transition in itself. And I'll just add that, you know, things evolve as we make the best available science. Things have to adapt and evolve. I mean, there was a time where makeup was made with radium, radioactive element, and lead was found in paint. And cigarettes were advised to be used for health purposes. So just to put a little bit of contrast there on how health has evolved, so has our responsibilities to protect the coast, which is entirely under our mandate. So with that, I will just finish my comments by saying that I appreciate staff's work and multiple efforts to engage the organizer and the applicant and to reach a happy medium. So I'll be supporting the staff's recommendation. Thank you.
Commissioner Nala.
I, too, feel like, you know, last, two years ago, we had this same conversation. And I think that Commissioner Wilson's idea about, you know, doing two and three might make sense if we had an applicant who was willing to work with staff. But the last two years has shown that the applicant doesn't want to work with staff to come up with an agreeable summary. I just, the other day, I just read about how in Boston Harbor, they celebrated the ride of Paul Revere with a fantastic drone show over Boston Harbor. Why is that something that is so unacceptable that we can't even explore it in Long Beach Harbor? So I don't really understand the resistance, but we are seeing repeated, you know, evidence of resistance. So I would, I would be entertain an idea of staging it the way Commissioner Wilson said, only with the express agreement of the applicant or some commitment that there would be, they'd work together. And I don't, you know, I don't, I feel very much that the testimony we heard from the applicant today is like what we heard in 2023, when we were in, I think we were in Sacramento in May of 2023. So I'm concerned about that.
Commissioner Escalante.
I'll be quick, just going, since we're going down memory lane. Definitely been talking about this Long Beach issue for even further before 2023. I think the commission has been discussing this for many years. And I think that throughout those stages, everybody's sort of compromised and agreed that we'll move this along if we get to this point where we're going to have a real transition, meaning like the drones up and the fireworks down. So I just, I align myself fully with Commissioner Aguirre and with the staff recommendation on that. And although I appreciate sort of the efforts of the commission to maybe stage it and do some sort of other negotiation, at least where I'm at, I'm satisfied with what you guys have put forward. So thanks.
Any further comments?
Just thanks for the opportunity to make the comment. I appreciate the opinion and the positions of all the commissioners. It seems like, I wanted to listen to the other commissioners, because obviously those that were here in previous years had made some determinations. I'm just not sure if it was clear enough for everyone. I would entertain an amendment, but I wouldn't go out more than a year more of fireworks in that amendment. Maybe one more year, I might entertain that, but definitely a definite cutoff at that point in the transition, so.
Commissioner Oranga.
I think that, well, thank you, Chair, for your time. I thank you, like all commissioners, for your comments, very well taken. But again, there's one factor that is not being addressed here, and that's the effect on the community, on the effect regionally of all the people that will be impacted by it should not happen. I mean, and we could get specific about the water, the air, the birds in the area, but the effect that it has regionally for kids and the effects on them, I think is greater than what it is locally. So I want to keep that in mind. And at the appropriate time, probably want to make a substitute motion. Actually, just for clarification, it's not a substitute motion per se, but it is a modification of special of Special Condition One. Is that what it is?
So if you would like to modify Special Condition One, it's best to put the main motion on the table and then bring an amending motion, because otherwise, if you don't have enough, if you make the motion with your amendment in the motion and you don't have enough votes for the for the motion, then the entire permit is denied. So if you put the main motion on the floor first and then amend it, then if your amendment doesn't pass, you can still approve the permit.
Well, now, that's basically what I mean. And that's the way this commission functions. You do the motion first, and then you do the amending motion, whatever, right?
Exactly.
So you have no idea in time now, or?
Commissioner Aguirre has a question. I'll make some comments, and I'll bring it back to you for the motion when the time is ready.
Thank you so much, Chair. I just want to acknowledge Commissioner Oranga, your your concerns and the importance of uplifting communities, which is extremely important, especially when you represent underserved communities, such as you and I do. So I just want to acknowledge that, that that was a difficult decision for me last year. But I do have a question regarding, to your point about fundraising and the concern of losing that ability to support the Boys and Girls Club. My understanding is only the closed area is the area that, you know, where they're able to fundraise an entry fee and which therefore is raising the funds to support Boys and Girls Club, correct?
Correct. Yeah, the ticketed block party is what generates the funds.
The ticketed block party, thank you.
Yes.
So how will we know if transitioning to, the natural resources protection aside, considering the support for the Boys and Girls Club, how would, how will we know that people will or will not come just because we transitioned to the drone show versus the fireworks until we try it? It could be the case that you get the same amount of attendees, if not more, potentially, because it might attract crowds that are interested in seeing the drone show, right? And this is a rhetorical question, but I'm just putting that out there in the sense of potentially, it could still continue to benefit and meet the goal of uplifting your community.
Well, and that was my point regarding a transition. Make it smooth as opposed to, yeah, yes, a cutoff of fireworks. Let's try to work with the applicant. I know Commissioner, Commissioner, and, and not off, there you go. And has, you know, more voice to pack that. Maybe there's an unwillingness to have drones, but I think we emphasize that during this, for both five years, two years, three years, even one, to have that transition, where maybe we could have both, light show and fireworks and see when they turn on and then engage what what the interest is of the population to do that. Excuse me.
All right. I have a couple comments to make. The first is that, you know, in the past, there were some comments made about, you know, 200 years of fireworks. And I think, you know, one of the reasons why that's been the case is because there have not been alternatives. And now we are seeing drone shows pop up all over the country, and they're really demonstrating to be a successful alternative to fireworks. I actually just found out yesterday that Santa Cruz is going to have a drone show next Saturday for the first time at the boardwalk. And so really going to be looking to see how turnout, how we have turnout around that and what that's going to look like. That being said, I am somewhat sympathetic to Commissioner Oranga's request to have more of a transition. And I think that if that is the route that we go down, there has to be meaningful engagement between the applicant and our staff. And I would actually even say the city of Long Beach, given that city council members have said they want to continue this. But I think it's, you know, I think that the conversation that we're having and the intent of this commission needs to be taken seriously as it pertains to the impacts on our environment and nesting birds. And I'm, again, totally sympathetic to, you know, the funding and what we're raising for kids and the impact that that's going to have on their lives. And then I'm also, at the same time, grappling with our responsibility as it pertains to the Coastal Act. And so, so should there be meaningful engagement? Or, or actually, if there's not meaningful engagement, I think there'd be worth us bringing this permit back for reconsideration if the applicant is unwilling to work with our staff and if the city is unwilling to work with our staff, that that should be one of the conditions in terms of moving forward through this transitioning process. But I, as it stands today, I would be willing to entertain more of a transition if that if that commitment is is made by the applicant in the city of Long Beach. So actually, so a couple of questions. One, there's been some questions from the commissioners around the number of votes needed for, it's just four, right? It's a majority. That's what I thought, but I just wanted to confirm with staff. Okay. And so I guess there has been a request that the applicant approaches the podium to respond to our request for engagement.
You know, I stand here thinking, I have been engaging. I just, I just have the mindset, I'm a fireworks guy. All right. So, and I raise the money from all the houses around the bay. I'm willing to go into it. I just, I just don't, I can't fathom that everybody's going to write the checks. I mean, I got 300 houses around the bay that write checks for fireworks. Now, will half of them write a check for drones? I don't know. I mean, if this is what it means, I'll try it. But I just don't, I don't know. I really don't know, because I read about Laguna and what people did in Laguna just recently and Redondo Beach. It's July the 4th. It's just a different deal, but I am more than willing to work, and I have been. I just, I told Jeff, you're giving me a drone deal. I don't want to do drones. I'm more of a fireworks guy. But if somebody else will step into my shoes in Long Beach and do, please do it. I'm in the restaurant business. I don't get paid to do what I'm doing. I'm volunteering. So I'm just a different mindset in terms of the fireworks and the drones. I love watching the drone show. I've seen a couple of them. They're great, but they're not July 4th to me. That's all. I mean, but I'm more than willing to work, and I have, I believe I have. My attorneys worked with Jeff. I can't, they've had like 70 emails this year. I'm not exaggerating that number. So we're trying to work with you. We kind of just have a different mindset on it, that's all. So I'm willing to work.
Thank you. And I would also say, if there is, because for all, for full disclosure, I do have my drone pilot's license, and so I do know that there are, and I did actually look at the airspace, and there are some regulations around the airspace, but that could, that can get worked out with the FAA, similar to if you're going to have a fireworks show, because if you're shooting fireworks up in the air, it's probably about the same height as the drones would be and would have the same impact on flight patterns in those areas. So with that, I'll turn it back to Commissioner Oranga for for motion, and we'll just see how this goes.
If you don't mind, Chair, I'd like to pass it over to my colleague, Commissioner Wilson.
Okay, Commissioner Wilson.
Yeah, I'll just make the motion here for Mr. Oranga, for Commissioner Oranga, but I'll, you can put it under my name. Motion, I move the commission approved coastal development permit number five dash two-five dash zero zero two pursuant to staff recommendation. Recommend a yes vote. Give me one second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Wilson, seconded by Commissioner Oranga. The maker of the motion is asking for a yes vote.
And now we do the amended motion?
No, no, because we got to vote on this, and then you come back.
No, you do the amending motion first.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
We got to, we got to do the amended motion first. Okay, so I'm looking, I'm looking, I'm looking at my commission here, and I heard two-year, two-year, one-year, maybe a two-year down at the end. One, okay, so we're going to go with one. That's, that's what's, and my amended motion is going to be that, and I'm going to phrase this the best way I can right now, and then you guys are going to correct me and let me know how we, how we, how we get through this. So this is an amended motion to, to make this a transitional permit whereby which there's an allowance for the fireworks show to go for one more year of this. And so the, so the permit would be one year fireworks, four years drone. It would include all the language and protections of what we had before associated with with the fireworks elements of this, but then moving into the drone show coming up here. So I don't know if that language was clear enough, and you guys can work with that?
Yes, I understand.
Yes, I understand what, what you'd like to do and what I would recommend, we can provide the language that you would then propose. It would just require a change to special condition one. That's the condition that says revised final plans. And as it reads now, it requires that prior to issuance of the coastal permit, the applicant submit these final plans eliminating fireworks. So, sentence one A, or part one A that reads eliminate use of fireworks, we would just add, you would add the phrase eliminate use of fireworks after the first year in 2025. The second change to that is we would need to change that language that says prior to issuance of the coastal permit at the very beginning because that was intended to provide revised plans this year. If the intent is a transition, you could say prior to January 31st, 2026, the app, use the same language, the applicant shall submit for review and approval of the executive director these revised plans unless the executive director determines an amendment is needed.
That's exactly what I said.
Yes. So we could just, that was for the record and you can reference the language I just said without having to repeat it. And then Jeff does have a list of the other conditions from last year that we can also reference into the record that would need to be added.
Please do that.
Yeah, just briefly for the record, the intent then would be to incorporate special condition three from last year's permit. That includes fireworks limitations, limiting the duration and type of fireworks that may be used. Special condition four of last year's permit, which includes fireworks best management practices. Special condition six incorporating cleanup of adjacent coastal waters and shorelines. And then special conditions nine A and C, including required reporter, water quality monitoring reporting as well as marine life reporting associated with the fireworks display.
Yes, that's exactly what I was saying. So with the understanding of what staff has just outlined, that, that is my proposal for an amended motion and I'm looking for a second.
Second.
And I want to speak to that amended motion just for one second, which is a, I really do feel like what Commissioner Aguirre says is, is really valid. If this is really about bringing in the dollars for these very important institutions and programs for, that are really, I, I believe that to be true. And I also want to say that I believe in the sincerity of the applicant to do that. It seems like, it seems like someone's very motivated to, to bring in the dollars and talk to their neighbors about what it is that's really important here, which is the fundraising. That is the most important part of what we're talking about. And, and I think, I think the, I think the applicant has the juice to do that. And so I'm, and considering all the effort and work that he's done to do all the things that, that it takes to create this event and for all the right reasons, I'm just going to assume that, that the intentions are, are real and, and I look forward to future success for all those institutions and all those organizations that will benefit. With that, I'm ready for that vote. Thanks. Oh, wait, we offer discussion to the, to the commission, so thanks.
First of all, I want to thank Commissioner Wilson for reading my voice in this. I can't talk for a length of time without getting my throat, but I want to second the motion that he said. And then finally, I want to just notice that my colleagues on the city council, Council Member Nugent, Mayor Rick Richardson, and City Manager Tom Odenka are all willing to work with the applicant to make something great happen in Long Beach regarding this issue. Thank you.
Commissioner Aguirre.
Thank you, Chair. I offer a friendly amendment to your substitute motion if you are amenable to it. I would suggest that we add something like bi-monthly progress meetings between the applicant and staff, given some of the concerns that were, and if bi-monthly is too frequent, we can do quarterly, but recorded communications between the applicant and staff so that we could truly see the progress that's being made because there's been some miscommunication that staff hasn't responded or that the communication started very late in the process. This way, we memorialize and keep record of the efforts from staff and from the applicant to communicate on progress because to, to your point, Commissioner Wilson, if obviously the, the motivation and intent behind this big celebration is to benefit the children of Boys and Girls Club, then if the particular past donors that the applicant referenced may not be, you know, excited because of the transition of the drones of, from the fireworks, it could be that there are other folks that are interested in supporting this program and that way we all hold each other accountable. Thank you.
If the secondary is amenable to that, then I'm okay with that change.
We're going to add the city of Long Beach to that as well.
Yep. So, did staff catch that?
Are you saying quarterly?
Quarterly? Okay, so quarterly updates, it sounds like we'll come back to the commission and then...
No, wait, I hadn't, I hadn't understood that it would be quarterly coming back to the commission, but quarterly that the condition would require a quarterly meeting among staff, the city and the applicant. Is that what you meant?
Correct. And, and recorded the, you know, the, the dates and times of communication to be brought back to the commission.
I see. Okay, thank you.
All right, and, I'm sorry, through the chair, just because I just heard Anne the city mentioned, I believe what you meant was quarterly meetings between the applicant and the commission.
Correct, that was my original suggestion. And then someone suggested we add the city of Long Beach, which I believe that makes sense. So, the three parties, quarterly meetings, memorialized, recorded, and reported back.
Yeah, I, thank you. I would just suggest that, of course, the city we can't require, but we can invite.
Yes, because they're not present, but the applicant and staff, of course, yes.
And for clarity, I would recommend that there be, that it not be in perpetuity, that we would say if the intent was that this coordination occur prior to the submittal of the January 31st, 2026 plans, that we just say that this occurred prior to the submittal of the revised plans by January 31st, 2026.
That's exactly what I meant, yes.
Okay. The only other thing that I would add, and I'm not going to add this as a friendly amendment, but I do think that it would be, well, unless it has to be added, but I do think that we should get some report back on the financials in terms of donations received with fireworks and then as they transition to the drone. So just so that we can see whether or not there has been some kind of fiscal shift as we transition from drone show, from fireworks to drone shows.
Put a order. Normally nonprofits don't report their financials when it comes to this. Would be something that we can do?
So one option I think that might work here is for us to do an informational item. If, if the amending motion passes, and this is the plan going forward, post-January 31, when we are to receive this plan and pre-July, and before July of that year, we could do an informational briefing for you all to let you know where things stand. And with the expectation, of course, this is next year, that we should be moving towards a drone show, again, assuming the amending motion does pass. So is that acceptable? We don't, I don't think we need to change the staff recommendation or do a motion, but we can just, we can put that, we'll offer that as staff and make sure we, we do that.
Okay. And then I maybe want to, maybe a friendly amendment to the friendly amendment, minimum of quarterly meetings because if there's, because that provides flexibility. If there's an opportunity to meet more frequently and there's a need to meet more frequently, then just don't want to constrain our staff. Okay. All right, with that, let's move on. So we have a motion by Wilson, seconded by Uranga, friendly amendment by Commissioner Aguirre. With that, I'll ask Ms. Miller for the roll call vote.
Commissioner Escalante?
Yes.
Escalante, yes. Commissioner Redoni?
Yes.
Redoni, yes. Commissioner Nardoff?
Yes.
Nardoff, yes. Commissioner Uranga?
Aye.
Uranga, yes. Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner Aguirre?
Yes.
Aguirre, yes. Chair Cummings?
Aye.
Cummings, yes. The vote is unanimous.
All right, thank you very much. And let's continue, move on before...
We need to vote on the main motion.
Oh, okay. Wait, so we need to make the main motion?
You just need to vote on it because now the motion on the floor is to approve the project with the amendments you all just approved.
Okay. All right, Ms. Miller, please.
Commissioner Redoni?
Yes.
Redoni, yes. Commissioner Nardoff?
Aye.
Nardoff, yes. Commissioner Uranga?
Aye.
Uranga, yes. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner Aguirre?
Yes.
Aguirre, yes. Commissioner Escalante?
Yes.
Escalante, yes. Chair Cummings?
Aye.
Cummings, yes. The vote is unanimous.
All right, now we can move on to the next item. Before we move on to that item, I just, there's a, we had some new information about item number 16B and so I want to turn it to staff for an announcement about 16B.
Thank you. Yes, item 16B, staff is postponing due to a noticing issue that opponents brought to our detention today. So staff will intend to most likely bring that back at our June meeting.
Thank you very much. Which brings us to our last item on the agenda for today, item number six, oh, and we'll call Commissioner O'Malley back in. But that brings us to item number 16A, permit number A-5-MDR-19-0217-A1, E and S Ring Management Corp. Marina Del Rey. Turn it to staff for the presentation on this item.
Thank you. And item 16A will be presented by Elisa Tate Polium, a coastal program analyst in our South Coast District. We do, oh, you already have the PowerPoint. I don't even need to say that. I'll just turn it over to Elisa, if you could take it away, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Item 16A is a request by the E and S Ring Management Corporation to amend a previously approved coastal development permit mitigation plan, which included the installation of two nesting pools with three platforms each and the planting of five cypress trees in Marina Del Rey. As part of a mitigation resolution effort associated with the commission's claim for penalties for the unpermitted removal of 11 unoccupied nests from four trees in Mariners Village apartment complex in Marina Del Rey. This amendment would revise the previous mitigation plan to allow for a donation by the applicant in the amount of $134,847 to the Los Angeles Audubon Society in lieu of installing the nesting platforms and planting the trees due to concerns raised by the California Department of Fish and Wildlife regarding potential impacts to a nearby Venice Beach, California eastern colony. Next slide, please. The project site is located in Venice in Los Angeles County, as shown in this slide. Next slide, please. In 2013, LA County approved a local CDP for the after-the-fact approval for removal of 11 unoccupied nests from four trees that exceeded the applicant's, I'm sorry, the applicant's authorized tree pruning and trimming activities with a mitigation plan, which was appealed by the Biona Institute in Marsha Hanscom. In 2021, the commission determined that the appeal raised a substantial issue and approved a de novo CDP for a revised mitigation plan, which included the installation of two nesting pools and the planting of five trees, as well as the removal of existing concrete debris from Biona Lagoon Canal to improve foraging habitat for wading birds. Next slide, please. Pursuant to special condition six of the de novo CDP, the applicant was required to obtain Resource Agency approval for the mitigation plan, including approval from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife or CDFW. However, CDFW ultimately did not support increasing nesting opportunities for great blue herons because they were concerned that herons would potentially prey upon endangered lease tern chicks that are located within the nearby Venice Beach colony. In correspondence between CDFW and commission staff, CDFW echoed similar concerns regarding the planting of the proposed cypress trees. Thus, the applicant is seeking to amend the approved plan to modify the component requiring the installation of the nesting platforms and planting of tall trees to conform CDFW requirements. Next slide, please. Commission staff coordinated with the applicant and CDFW staff to explore potential alternatives to improve habitat for water birds, including great blue herons that would not endanger the local eastern colony. Therefore, consisting of the direction from CDFW, the requested modification would allow for a one-time donation in the amount of $134,847 to the Los Angeles Audubon Society to support a three-year lease-tern breeding monitoring plan with the education and outreach component for local residents. While the proposed monitoring would target the lease terns rather than great blue herons, the commission, the commission's senior ecologist, Dr. John, John Engel, has reviewed the proposed plan and has determined that it is appropriate since great blue herons are not sensitive species and can prey upon the endangered lease tern chicks that are nearby. And because great blue herons are not historically a part of the Biona ecosystem. The proposed three-year breeding monitoring plan is designed to document the breeding, habitat, and survival of the colony via weekly monitoring between April 15th and August 31st each year. The plan will be funded by the applicant and implemented and managed through the combined efforts of state parks, CDFW, and the United States Fish and Wildlife Service. Volunteered coordination will be managed by a qualified biologist. Additionally, a portion of the funds will be allocated for an education and outreach component for local residents via collaborative efforts with various partners to support and promote lease-tern conservation efforts. In addition, the applicant continues to propose removal of the approximately 10 cubic yards of concrete debris from Biona Lagoon to make more of the muddy bank available for foraging habitat for wading birds. There is an addendum for this item that addresses the opponent's concerns, which are also posted on the commission's website. Commission staff met with the opponents of this amendment last week, including Marsha Hanscom and Roy Vanda Hope, and commission staff received four letters from members of the public that are similarly opposed to the project, which are posted as correspondence for this item. Opponents of the project argued that the amendment would result in out-of-time mitigation for the impacts associated with the great blue herons nests that were removed without the permit, that the great blue herons have not been seen for dating upon California lease-tern chicks, and that the amount of funding proposed was not adequate as a penalty. In addition, project opponents state that they would like to see the new fees allocated to monitoring for great blue herons and the colony in Mariners Village, which is the location of the original violation. The commission's enforcement team and ecology team have reviewed the information and maintained that the proposed plan strikes the appropriate balance in improving habitat for the great blue herons by improving breeding and foraging habitat in Biona Lagoon and in the monitoring plan that is proposed by LA Audubon, which also proposes to remove invasive vegetation in Venice Beach. Furthermore, LA County maintains a robust rating third monitoring program in accordance with policy number 34 of the Marina Del Rey Certified LEP, which includes annual monitoring for leasehold properties as implemented by the LA County Department of Fish and Waters. In conclusion, commission staff recommends approval of the project with three new conditions listed on pages 17 through 20 of your reports. The motion to approve the project can be found on page five of the staff report. This concludes staff presentation and we are available for questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any expertises on this item? Seeing none, I'll take it out to the, I guess, the applicant?
We have Marsha Hanscom on Zoom, as well as Mark Wagner and Leo Simone with the applicant as well, available for questions. But Marsha Hanscom, you're on and you can unmute and be in.
Do we have my presentation, please?
Yes, coming right up.
She's not the applicant?
Sorry, yes, through the chair, just a correction, she's not the applicant.
Right, that's right, I'm not.
The applicant is E and S Ring Management Corporation.
Okay, so is there a representative from them available for a presentation or do they want to give a presentation?
We have a representative for them available for questions.
Okay.
Mark Wagner.
Okay, so then if they're just available for questions, we'll go to public comment. How many people do we have on for public comment?
We have 19.
Okay, we'll get two minutes each.
Marsha Hanscom, go ahead.
Great, I'd like my presentation, please. Great. Honorable Commissioners and staff, Marsha Hanscom would defend Biona Wetlands and also representing the Coastal Lands Action Network. Here's the issue. The great blue heron rookery was harmed by the... by the violations of removing these 11 nests. 11 nests is a huge number of nests. Next, next slide, please. This is our charismatic megafauna in the Biona Valley. It is at the top of the food chain in the greater Biona Wetlands, similar to when wolves were brought back to Yosemite. When the great blue herons started nesting here again after decades of being away, after being hunted and taken for feathers, they came back.
Can we pause real quick?
Oh, sure.
Hey, Matt. Okay, we can continue. Sorry about that.
Okay. So, one of the things that's important is that 60% of the food of the great blue heron are small mammals. And so, and in the first year out of the nest, 100% of it. And so that keeps the small mammals in check in this ecosystem. Next slide, please. The great blue heron, something staff apparently doesn't know yet, but we just learned, in April 2025, it is now on the special animals list for the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. And in fact, the previous governor, Governor Davis, agreed with that, and the LA Times agreed with it, with the editorial, "The Heron's Park Forever." And this, this heronry is at risk. Next slide, please. So while the great blue herons can prey on California lease turn chicks, there is no evidence in any of the monitoring reports about that. Next slide. And Departments of Beaches and Harbors doesn't like the birds or the trees. So in the addendum, it says they stated planting the trees was not possible. But they are not, they are not experts at this. So.
Thank you very much.
Great.
So, just going to make a quick announcement, real quick. We're running into potential quorum issues. And so, I'm, out of respect for the people who came, I do want to thank you, and I do want to apologize for this. But we're going to have to move to one minute. Because after this, we still have to.
We would love to have this postponed, so that some.
Thank you. So we will reduce the time to one minute for everybody who's left, and then we'll bring it back. And then we're going to have to move into closed session, so. So.
Okay, continuing with our speakers, we have Steve Ray, followed by Suzanne Cummings, and then Robin Rudisil.
Question here. What is the time now? Where are we?
You'll have one minute.
I have one minute?
Yeah, sorry.
I can hardly breathe in a minute. Okay. Well, Commissioners, I'm Steve Ray again. I want to dedicate my last remarks in front of Commissioner Uranga to Uranga. So, anyway, I just want to say I'm, I'm opposed to this. I seldom disagree with the, with the staff, but I disagree here. I do not like in-lufes. I spent too many years as a planning commission chair dealing with in-lufes. They're terrible. They never work. Nothing ever gets done properly with them. I think the, the applicant here needs to be responsible for doing the work as necessary and, and in accordance with the staff overseeing that. So I'm opposed to this altogether because of the handing it as an in-luffy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And due to the one-minute comment, I will not be moving people in as panelists. I will just allow you to speak in as an attendee. This means that you won't be able to turn your cameras on, though. Continuing, we'll do Suzanne Cummings, Robin Rudisil, and then Chris Koo. Suzanne Cummings, you should be able to unmute. Suzanne, I see that you're on a phone.
Am I unmuted?
Yes.
Okay. Good afternoon, honorable chairs, Commissioners and staff. I'm Suzanne Cummings, member of Sierra Club and resident of Mariners Village. Please deny or continue this matter. A feasible alternative exists. Firstly, mature trees can be planted at Mariners Village where the harm occurred. Platforms could be installed. Mariners Village is undergoing a renovation. Management tells residents they will be planting many trees. If there's room for many trees, then there would be room for great blue heron nesting trees, too. They just don't want these birds. Protecting the rookery was a condition for Mariners Village lease renewal. Is there some legal liability here? Secondly, let's fund a heron live cam and put the money into monitoring the Mariners Village and Bora Bora Way rookery. Mariners Village is unique. It's an urban garden. Let's protect the great blue herons, hummingbirds, owls, raccoons, and other wildlife who thrive in this amazing place.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, Robin Rudisil, Chris Koo, Anne Cantrell. Robin Rudisil, go ahead.
Hi, Robin Rudisil opposed. Steve Ray said it really well. I don't like these payoff in-luffy permit approvals, especially when the payment is not going to a group that would directly address the harm done. I really don't think this is the way the Coastal Act should work. If this is approved, it sends a message that it's okay to destroy nest sites or other natural habitat by simply agreeing to give a big payment to a chosen group to use for a project for an unrelated species at a different location. It makes no sense. It was the great blue heron rookery that was harmed and when their nests were removed and destroyed. And if large enough trees can't be planted for immediate use by the great blue heron, then temporary nesting platforms should also be installed at Mariners Village while the trees grow larger. This payment does not make up for the harm done. Making up for the damage should be required at the site and in a manner that supports the ecological function that was lost. It's not okay to destroy the coast habitat and do a payoff later that doesn't even address what was destroyed. Please either postpone or deny this permit amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Koo?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, great. Yes, everybody, Commissioners, please do not be misled about the word unoccupied relating to the nests. Unoccupied nests are actually very significant from a legal, ecological, and conservation perspective. Okay? Legal protections in many areas, especially North America, herons and their nests are protected by law, even if the nests are currently unoccupied. For example, under the Migratory Bird Treaty Act in the US and Canadian Migratory Birds Convention Act, it's illegal to disturb or destroy active or inactive nests. And I, I really think that it's misleading the public, it's misleading everybody to insert that word, unoccupied, when it's actually very meaningless because these birds come back. Okay? And if you destroy them, disturb them, it will disrupt future breeding and discourage the colony to reestablish. And basically, these herons often return back to the same nest each year. So unoccupied nests may be just.
Thank you. Next, Anne Cantrell, Michael Fujimori, Annie Abram, and then Jane Velez Mitchell. Anne Cantrell, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Anne Cantrell, Sierra Club Coastal Subcommittee. Our written comments ask for postponement or denial of this item. This amendment needs to address mitigation for removal of great blue heron nests at the site, not miles away. The money could be used to plant trees and a couple of nesting platforms and put up a Wi-Fi camera to show breeding, hatching, and feeding of the great blue chicks at Marina Village. Live cameras have been a tremendous success for the bald eagles. I tried for years to get my children interested in birding, but Jackie and Shadow were the ones that created a real passion for all four of them. A nest cam for great blue herons can help change public perception that these are messy birds to enjoying their majesty and great family life. In conclusion, there are a number of better amendments for this mitigation, and we need to postpone it to work these out.
Thank you. Michael Fujimori?
Yes, thank you. I'm calling today to express how upset I am about the recent destruction of the 11 great blue heron nests at the Mariners Village, which is a violation of the Coastal Act. And for the Commission to approve of a donation to make up for the damage done to the rookery is sending the message that it's okay to destroy nest sites and then write a check to an environmental group that can use the money as they please. This is not acceptable. I'm asking that the money be used specifically to plant trees at the Mariners Village where herons can build their nests again, or to build temporary nesting platforms at the same site, and to fund monitoring at Mariners Village and Bora Bora rookery, so this destruction will not happen again in the future. So unless these requests are met, I'm asking for a denial or postponement of the stack recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Annie Abram, Jane Velez Mitchell, Robert Roy Van De Hoek, and then Karen Lakava. Annie Abram? I see that you're in muted. Go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, yes. I'm calling in regards to the blue heron situation. Once again, I will repeat what everyone else ahead of me had said. 11, removal of 11 trees, mature trees that had nests in, on them for blue herons. It is a crime that is written by the Coastal Commission. These trees, the mature trees, need to be replaced. And these blue herons belong to this ecosystem, and they have their reasoning to exist. Please do replace these trees, mature trees, back again in the same location. Giving $134,000 or $136,000 to another organization to try and use as they please for other species does not heal the loss that has happened here in the Mariners Village and Bora Bora. We need cameras, live cameras, to watch these herons. But first of all, we need immediate action to replace these nests until the mature trees are replaced in the same location. I am against it.
Thank you.
Please do not pass this. Thank you.
Next, Jane Velez Mitchell.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm Jane Velez Mitchell, a journalist resident in Marina Del Rey. I live near Mariners Village, and I'm 100% opposed to this idea. It's obscene to let them pay off their horrific abuse of the herons by writing a check. But hey, this is the Elon era. If you have enough money, you can just violate the rules with abandon, and no check will solve it, right? Great blue herons are not preying on the lease turns. That's a greenwashing strategy. Part of the big game. I think we all know that. These herons are under assault from human beings. They are under assault from fireworks in the area. I should say that again. Fireworks in the area. And they are under assault from the destruction of their nests. And they are under assault from the agencies that seem to not care a whit about them. But do you know who does care? We care. We live here. We know that Teslas don't make this area priceless. It's the lease turns and the herons. Do the right thing, please!
Thank you. Next, Robert Roy Van De Hoek.
Don't start my timer. I have a, I have a PowerPoint. Thank you. My name is Robert Van De Hoek, and I'm a biological scientist and an ornithologist. Next slide, please. These are young great blue herons, about two to three weeks away from flying. So they are about 40, 40 days old. You can see this pine tree's been pruned. All the little branches in the nest are coming from pickleweed salt marsh. And there's going to be harm if you continue with this. I just wanted to give you a little biology. Next. The feasible, feasible alternative that exists is to plant trees, but not spindly trees, as you see here, that they've already been doing, and inappropriate. Next slide, please. And to install platforms. Another view of, of the spindly tree placement and young great blue herons have branches that come from the Biona Wetlands State Ecological Reserve. Next slide, please. Okay, this is a map. I don't have time. I'm asking for a postponement of this. It's not legal to have cut me down to one minute when others got more. I need more minutes to finish my PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you.
So, thank you. So.
Next is Karen Lakava, followed by Susan Kirks, Nancy Okada, Anna Christensen, Leslie Purcell. Karen Lakava, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, yes. My name's Karen Lakava. I am on the Board of Directors as a Venice Chamber and the Venice Art Crawl, and also wildlife photographer and Realtor. I, I enjoy the wildlife. I walk my dogs around there all the time. This is horrible. This is money over lives. We need to replace these trees with big trees that have already matured to support these nests. These birds should stay in the area. This is the ecosystem that we need. And we should also put platforms up there because the odds are even the mature trees that this company plants are not going to necessarily be supportable to their nests. We need to bring these birds back here because right now they're not because their nests are gone. Empty nests don't mean anything other than they're going to be coming back. Okay? And we really need to protect them. Also, we need to protect them from fireworks, too, as Jane said. I, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Kirks?
Thank you. Good afternoon again, Commissioners and staff. Susan Kirks, Madron Audubon in Northern California. My colleagues, of course, are LA Audubon in Southern California, and they do excellent, excellent work in programs. So this is not a negative comment at all about them and the possible program they could do in monitoring for lease turns. But my question is, what exactly does quote-unquote "unoccupied nests" mean? Did the tree printers go up and literally take the nest out of the trees? Did they chop the trees down? What time of year was this done? This is information that's very important to have in your staff reporting, and I have not seen it. Actually, the great blue herons have a great fidelity to their nesting site. That was a rookery, and those great blue herons want to return to their nesting site. And I, we support tree planting without any doubt whatsoever to replace that nesting site. We also know that there really is no evidence that great blue herons are.
Thank you.
Predating on lease turn chicks. Thank you.
Thank you. We have five more speakers. Nancy Okada, Anna Christensen, Leslie Purcell, Gleb Satyakov, and Catherine Satyakov. Nancy, Nancy Okada. Nancy, I see that you should be able to unmute. Okay, we'll move on. Anna Christensen? Anna, you should be able to unmute now.
I'm here to support the environmentalists. I'm really hoping that the coastal commissioners understand what, what these organizations mean. When we talk about the Sierra Club's Coastal Subcommittee, "Defend Biona Wetlands," LA Coastal Protection Alliance, "Protect Biona Wetlands." These people, these are individuals who have committed their time, mostly unpaid, for not a year, not 10 years, decade after decade, to study specific areas and specific populations of wildlife and even communities in order to protect them. I felt like in that last hearing, we were written off in favor of, you know, a guy who just, as a fireworks guy. The fireworks guy won that round. But we're still here. We're not going anywhere. But who is going away are great blue herons. In the Alameda Bay, we went from 100 nests down to maybe 10 this year. Please, listen to us. The Coastal Act protects wildlife. Please do not pass this motion.
Thank you.
Listen to the environmentalists. We really are legit environmentalists. Thank you.
Leslie Purcell? Leslie, you should be able to unmute.
Okay, there I am. Thank you. I wanted to relate that some years back, working on the Biona Wetlands issues, I was told by Gabriele Natafanga members that the great blue herons represented their ancestors. And I just wanted to put that out there because it's a profound connection that many of us feel with those birds in particular. And I believe that the unpermitted cutting of these trees and the destruction of the nest is not to be mitigated by lease turn monitoring, as valuable as that would be. But we need to protect the great blue herons and their ability to have young. I live in Ventura now, and there's a, a large pine tree. We had at least five heron nests in it. And one year, the tree was so severely cut back that the herons could not come back and nest there. They'd been coming for years, and everybody in the neighborhood. They'd been coming for years, and everybody in the neighborhood appreciated them and loved them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, Gleb Satyakov.
Hi, thank you for my time. As a longtime resident of Mariners Village, actually, in the marina in general, we love seeing the great blue herons, and we counted many nests actively being used by the blue herons right now in the Mariners Village, so they're active rookeries. You know what, you know what I haven't seen? The least turn. So I would agree with others. We need more time to collect more data. And there is feasible solution. These two birds are not mutually exclusive, and they can cohabitate. There is no evidence of them being preying on each other, preying from blue herons on the least turn. I don't even know why that is the focus. And the feasible solution that exists is to protect the existing trees and to nest, to plant more of these pine trees that they like, and they're so beautiful, in other areas of the marinas, so they can become future nesting locations. That is all I have to say. I would disagree with the staff's suggestion and move to postpone this. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you. Next is Catherine Satyakov.
Hi there. My name's Dr. Catherine Satyakov. I am a longtime resident of Mariners Village, and I grew up in Culver City, and I would visit the Biona Wetlands as a kiddo, and I really grew to appreciate the importance of great blue herons throughout the years. I think the California Coastal Commission, you really need to listen up, because the people are speaking. We are the people that live in Marina Del Rey, and we care about these birds. And if you are going to side with ENS Ring, who are absolute crooks, and think that they can cut down these trees at will, and then write a check for an arbitrary amount of money, you, as the California Coastal Commission, are absolutely failing the people that live here, who care about the environment. I hope that you can hold your heads up high, and you could say no to large corporations like this, and side with the people that care about these animals.
Thank you. And then there were three names that we weren't able to find. Nancy Okada, Jen Kerland, and Mary Beth Troutwine. I do see one hand raised under the name iPhone. Can you please unmute and announce who you are?
Hi there. Jen Kerland.
Okay.
I have lived in Mariners Village in the marina since 96, and I've been paying attention to the Coastal Commission minutes for a number of years uncountable. And I would like to say, I think the Coastal Commission owes it to us, the percentage of projects by developers and destruction by developers where they ask for forgiveness after, and the Coastal Commission is continuously recommending after-the-fact approval. It has to be an astonishing percentage. And on your own website, the mission says, "The Commission is committed to protecting and enhancing California's coast and ocean for present and future generations." It does so through careful planning, and that is not what's happening when you give these after-fact approvals, this in lieu of check money which does no good. The Terry trimmers are professional. They know better. They should also be fined.
Thank you. And there are no more speakers.
All right. I'll bring it back to staff for any response to some of the comments that were made, so please.
I'm sorry. Sorry.
Thank you. I was just going to mention that Eliseba will provide the first half comment, followed by Dr. John Engel, and then I would like to provide a quick wrap-up comment.
Yes, I'd just like to point out that the matter before the commissioners today is the nest removal. The nests were removed as a part of the trimming activities, and trees were not removed as per the underlying permit. And now I will pass it to Dr. John Engel to clarify some things. Thank you.
Thank you, Eliseba. Couple things. Great blue herons definitely do prey upon California least turns, and therefore, our sister agency, CDFW, is very concerned about the population of great blue herons in Marina Del Rey. And it is also important to let everyone know that over the past five years since the trees were trimmed, those trees still exist, and their foliage has been able to regrow. The violation was because they over-trimmed the trees and made the trees not as suitable to nesting, but they are now on alert, and the foliage cannot be trimmed as much to make the trees suitable for, they have to be suitable for nesting. The other thing is that the population has been stable, the great blue heron population has been stable over the past five years. Great blue herons are not a sensitive or listed species. They are doing well in California. We appreciate them, too. We do not, we are not against the great blue herons. We support waiting birds, for sure. But we are, we support our sister agency, the CDFW, and we are in alignment. We agree with this approach to dealing with this violation. Thank you. I'll talk to you in a minute. Bye.
Bye.
Thank you. Thought I heard an echo for one moment. I would just like to add a brief wrap-up statement and note that the majority of issues that we just heard from, from many of the opponents, primarily had to do with the original violation and their concerns regarding the impacts that occurred. Now, an important point I would like to make is the commission did not approve any development after the fact as part of that original proposal. There were impacts to the trees and non, or bird nests that were not inhabited at the time. Our commission action several years ago was only for the mitigation program. Now, the question of whether that mitigation program was adequate was already dealt with by the commission as part of its action on the underlying CDP, when it required the mitigation plan for the planting of five trees and the two nesting platforms and the removal of the concrete debris in wetlands. The only action before us today is whether the amendment for those changes to the required mitigation plan provides equivalent benefits. As Dr. Engel mentioned, the commission originally required onsite mitigation, but that wasn't feasible due to the Department of Fish and Wildlife's objections, and they were concerned about that predation by herons. And thus, we believe that this alternative approach for the in lieu fee, in addition to the onsite mitigation that would include the removal of the concrete debris, is the best and balanced feasible alternative. With that, I'll just conclude staff comments and note that we're available for questions.
All right. Thank you very much, and thank you for the presentation. I also want to thank the members of the public who spoke to us on this item. So I'll bring it back to the commission for any questions, comments, action. Commissioner Aragó.
Just curious about the size of the tree replacements. Are they feasible or not feasible?
The county, the Beaches and Harbors Department, have informed us that they don't believe that tree planting is feasible, because they don't believe they have adequate space. We don't have all the information to support that, in my opinion, but we also have the requests from Fish and Wildlife, which has requested that we not include the tree planting and, which would serve as nesting habitat for the herons as part of this plan, because their specific concern is that any additional nesting for these herons could cause these additional impacts to the nearby colony of least turn, least turns. And thus, that, because we did require that this plan be approved by Fish and Wildlife, it created a bit of a conundrum, which we're trying to resolve through this alternative.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Nadav.
I just want to say on the record that we do hear these comments and understand that, and, you know, we have a very narrow decision in front of us right now. It's just an amendment to an existing permit. So I, I think that, you know, it's good to hear from our staff biologists that the heron population is stable in this area. And I didn't hear, I hope that the least turn population is stable as well. And so I see that, you know, this is an area that's been very disrupted and is, has a dedicated community that's helping it be, get back to being healthy, and it's gotten healthy. I've seen it over the years. Things are getting better, and thanks in large part to the diligence of the community there, and to the management of our state agencies. So I just wanted to reassure the public that we hear them.
Commissioner Gary.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to associate myself with Commissioner Nadav's comments and obviously understand the passion from the community, but also our need to protect those species that are threatened and endangered. As was mentioned in the previous conversation, the previous item, I, I believe, and the Ann Contrails and the Anna Christensens of the world, and the Steve Rays of the world, were so grateful for your concerns and ongoing stewardship of our coast. And I, for one, am extremely grateful for you all always bringing your concerns, perspectives, and, you know, a passion for protection of our coast to this commission. But in this particular case, I will support staff's recommendation. Thank you.
Heard any other questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll just make a couple comments real quick. One, I want to appreciate all the staff's work and the many people who've spoken in favor of environmental protection. I think what happened in this situation is very unfortunate, that these nests were removed without permits, and they should not have been removed. And it's, we're in a little bit of a difficult situation, because, you know, we moved forward with a certain, with certain criteria and requirements that weren't accepted by another one of our state agencies. And so I think this is, we're trying to figure out how we can move forward and how we can hold the violators accountable for what they've done, but, you know, given that CDFW did not accept those terms, our hands are kind of tied. And, you know, personally, I think there's some moral conversations we need to have around, you know, especially as we see climate change. Like, if there's one species that's expanding, and they predate on another species, why should we go and try to reduce that species' population to try to save another one, especially if that other, if that other species is not endangered? The least turns have, they range from California down to Baja, into parts of Mexico, in terms of their breeding colonies, along the eastern coast into the Caribbean, and also into South America. So they're not an endangered species, and so why we're impacting, you know, the great blue herons, and why we're intervening in this biological relationship, I mean, I don't, I don't know if humans should be the ones who are intervening and trying to mitigate and manage those populations in that way, given that they're not endangered, and our activities aren't what's causing any reduction in the population. That all being said, what's before us today is us trying to resolve this issue, given that CDFW is not in agreement with our previous approach. And so for those reasons, I'll support the staff recommendation, and would like to ask if there's anyone who'd like to move, or any other comments? Escalante.
I'm sorry, Chair, that I, this is, this is hard, and it's emotional. I'm thinking, well, why these, you know, when, when there's this such closeness of people living in the urban spaces, living to this very, you know, oasis of nature, you know, this, this action by the violator was so traumatizing to this community. I think that, you know, it needs to be sort of really recognized. And, and I hope that, you know, the message is sent back to CDFW that, you know, all of these things also need to be taken under account in terms of how we, we manage these, these actions from, from developers or folks that, you know, find these, think trees and birds inconveniences, right? And I'm sure this doesn't just happen by, by complete accident, but every day more and more, as these ecosystems disappear, their value to the people who live around them increase, right? And their attachment to it. So I hope that, I know that, that CDFW in particular, you know, is focused a lot on just sort of the, the numbers and whatever's, is peer-reviewed, but there's an extra piece of psychology around the communities that live around these very, very limited natural spaces that needs to be considered. So I'm gonna, you know, I don't want to drive anybody over the edge, but I think I've kind of hit my limit for today, so I'm going to go no on this one, but, you know, sort of in recognition of, of the community's opposition to it.
Commissioner Wilson.
I know it's the end of the day, but I just wanted to say that Justin and I were walking on the waterfront today, and actually, one of the nerdy discussions we had was about our relationship, this agency's relationship with Cal Fishing Game, and how it's some, it kind of, it, we find ourselves kind of pushed into these spaces, both from the mitigation end and just from the policy end. And we mostly align, but there are times when we're really put into some uncomfortable places, and I would say this is, this is one of them. And it makes me think we may have to, especially as things are moving forward around the, around what we're seeing in the changes to the legislature, and especially what we're seeing in the changes of SEQA and these other things, we may have to, I don't know, reconfigure that relationship a little bit, or at least reevaluate it. And I don't mean in a negative way, but really understand how we can actually, how we can effectuate the role that we're supposed to be doing, while at the same time not be completely overtaken, I guess, by, by some policies that maybe don't, we feel like don't, we're not in alignment with. So I just want to put that out there. I'm willing to...
Could I ask a question?
Yeah.
I did, I mean, did mean to ask how, in general, you know, in lieu mitigation is, I think, not the, not a preferred way to go, but in this case, how was the donation amount determined? How'd you calculate that?
I missed that question.
Oh, sorry. The, how was the donation, the in lieu donation amount calculated? It's a very specific number.
Yes. I could provide a brief, a brief description, and then Eliseba could always add more detail. But that money was based on the calculation of the cost for the planting of the five trees and the two platforms. And then that equivalent amount of money was calculated at that $140-plus thousand.
So it doesn't really have a penalty calculation into it? It's a in...
It, it is not a penalty. The original mitigation was considered part of that, that penalty was included as part of the mitigation, so that was what the commission required it, as part of its original action.
Do we have the discretion to amend the in lieu amount?
Yes.
To add a penalty?
You have, well, you, this is our recommendation as this amount, based on what we believe was the resource impact. We don't have an enforcement action before us today, so we're not assessing a penalty, but the commission has the discretion to determine if this mitigation does the job in terms of, is it equivalent to what you all thought was being required at the time that we took the original action to mitigate the damage.
I would make one additional comment.
So not as a penalty? No.
This, you know, this is not the fault of the violator in this case, that this was sort of, they, there was a requirement to do this mitigation. They were not able to, based on the feedback that we heard about CDFW, so they, we are recommending this as an alternative. So it, I don't think a penalty would be appropriate in this case, but it's up to your discretion to determine if the amount is equivalent to the, to what the initial mitigation was. Again, we, we did it a cost estimate. We, that's how we determined what we thought was the right amount, but it's in your discretion to determine a different amount in that case.
Okay. I understand the difference between the enforcement and that. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Wilson. Oh, Commissioner Escalante, sorry.
Well, back to, sort of, this kind of maybe ties up to the issue of the value of, sort of, the loss of, of, of that particular nesting ecosystem to that. I just, honestly, I do feel I agree with Commissioner Nadav, that that, to me, doesn't sound like it's enough to really rescue, I don't know how many birds they can rescue in another location, but...
Could I, could I just add that this is a piece of the mitigation package? This is not the entire mitigation package we're talking about. They've already done most of the mitigation package. This is one piece of it that they were unable to do because of the potential impacts to the California least turn. So it's not the whole thing. You're just, the amendment is for a small piece of that mitigation package.
So...
Yes, our recommendation remains the same.
Commissioner Wilson.
All right. I'll make a motion, no matter how this works out, we'll see. I move that the commission approve Coastal Development Permit Amendment Number A-5-MDR-19-0217-A1 pursuant to staff recommendation, and staff recommends a yes vote.
I'll second. So a motion by Commissioner Wilson, seconded by Commissioner Cummings, the maker of the motion asking for a yes vote. I'll turn it to Ms. Miller for a roll call.
Commissioner Redoni.
Reluctant yes.
Redoni, yes. Commissioner Nadoff?
No.
Nadoff, no. Commissioner Uranga?
No.
Uranga, no. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner Akiri?
Yes.
Akiri, yes. Commissioner Escalante?
No.
Escalante, no. Chair Cummings?
Aye.
Cummings, yes. The vote is for, yes, three no.
All right. That wraps up our regular agenda. We do have a special announcement from Commissioner Gary before we move into closed session.
Thank you, Chair. All right, I'll be brief. I want to start by thanking the IT team, Anthony and the team, Chris, for your incredible ability to facilitate the people's voices. So thank you. And to staff, you are amazing. I love all the work that you've done and your flexibility, expertise, and drive and passion for everything that you do, so thank you. And to my colleagues, incredibly grateful to you all. But I do have to let you know, as your duly vice chair, elected, elected vice chair of this commission, that this is my last meeting. So I want to thank you all and the public for your passion and your contributions in helping us protect the California coast, which belongs to all of us. And I am incredibly grateful for the work that we've done together and incredibly grateful for all of your work and in times of great difficulty, especially as it came to the sewage crisis. You all had my people's back, and I really appreciate that. And just to the public, thank you. Thank you. It's been the honor to serve as commissioner, as a vice chair, and to bring the experience that I've acquired over my last 20 years as an environmentalist, as a graduate of Scripps, as a NOAA Sea Grant Canals Fellow, and as the first Latina elected official to the city council in Imperial Beach and the first mayor. It's been the honor of my lifetime, and I will continue to see you in different capacities, and you all will always be in my heart. So, thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And so Commissioner Roga.
I said my goodbyes on Wednesday, but one group of guys I forgot to say my, my too, is the incredible IT team. You guys have been wonderful in the support of the commission. And if your contract comes up again and they give you a hard time, let me know. I will support you. And to Commissioner Gary, what a pleasure it's been knowing you and working with you. We don't always agree, but that's part of the fun. That's what makes it, that's what makes it fun to be here. And again, to the audience out there in the, in the eye zone, thank you so much for your support. Take care. God bless.
Commissioner Wilson.
Well, I've said what I said about, about you two days ago, so I will reserve my comments for Commissioner Gary at this moment. Thanks. Yeah. I want, I want to say, like, I remember very clearly when Commissioner Gary was an alternate and came, and came to her first couple of meetings and how she was just so enthus-, she remains enthusiastic, but I can, those were, I had not seen a more enthusiastic alternate, no offense. They come, come to this commission, one that just was really there to learn, engaged, really saw this institution, I'm sure she still does, as, as the vehicle for the protection of the, of the coast, for the access, especially for all Californians, especially those, the working people and, and others. And, and just a, just a driver for bringing that, just very authentic and heartfelt vision and, and work ethic, really. I mean, I have to say, we don't really have a lot of commissioners that are at the level, and we have, people have to understand that for the electives that are coming here to do this job, we have two kind of, two groups. There's the county electives, and most of, and most of the county's electives, their job, we get paid, right? And then there's the city electives, and many of them do not get paid for their city work. And so then add on top of this, this other unpaid obligation. I, I think people have to really appreciate what, what dedication it takes to show up and be here every month for what takes ostensibly a week out of your, out of your life every month to do that, to then also be elected to your city council, which, as anyone knows, is brutal, and, and, and then, and then also have to hold down a job, you know, and keep it together in all your, all the rest of your life's relationships and, and things. And so I just want to, you know, thank you for that dedication. I think people, it's underappreciated, and, and I want to just, you know, give you my heartfelt thank you. And as a friend, I mean, Paloma's fucking rad, oh, excuse me, really rad. She's super cool. I mean, I just want to say, like, if you, this is one of the best people we, we, we could have on this, in this, in this institution, and any governing body that has you there is lucky, is extremely lucky. I hope I don't get into trouble for what I did. But anyways, with that, I just, you know, I can't say anything more.
Commissioner Nadoff.
Commissioner Gary, the way that you integrate the needs of people and the environment in such a thoughtful and knowledgeable way is an inspiration. I've learned so much from you, the way you stand up for your community and have really brought this commission and the state of California to that important fight. You know, I, I commit to standing, continuing to stand with you in that fight, and I, I'm quite confident we'll have a lot of opportunities to work together going forward. You are rad or awesome?
Commissioner Escalante.
I start the meeting crying and end this meeting crying. I'm devastated. It's, if all of us had just a little bit of the strength that you have in your petite little body, we would, I don't know, reach for the stars, wrap our fingers around, you know, Mars and then some. So I will always just be following your leadership, listening to you, hoping that, you know, getting your bestie advice, and you'll always have me, have me in your corner like a fighter. And an extra level of sadness is losing the two members of our Latino caucus. The great state of California body like this, you know, to sort of have that representation. So I hope that our leadership is gonna, is gonna, you know, continuing to reflect that on boards like this. So I'm going to miss you so, so much, but I know you're going to be kicking butt, and soon enough, you know, you will be the one picking the seats, I'm sure. So I look forward to that. In the meantime, I'll be, I'll be with you in every fight.
Thank you.
Well, I don't even know where to start because it's just been so great getting to know all the commissioners, but in particular, it's been great getting to know Paloma and just the passion that you carry for, like, that's already been mentioned, but around, you know, your community, helping underserved people, protecting our environment, and trying to do best for the coast. I mean, it's just, it is embodied in everything you do. And, for example, I knew nothing about the, the issue with the Tijuana pollution, and having you be such a strong advocate for it, having you bring us down to actually see what's happening, and keeping it at the top of our priorities to the point where we're going to be carrying that forward still, I think just really goes to show your commitment to our community, to the state of California, and to our environment. And it's that kind of passion that makes this body function really well, and it really is that passion that created the coastal act in the first place. And while you'll no longer be on this board, I think the one thing that we all know is that you're out there fighting for the coast, you're fighting for what's right, especially during a time when our environment is under attack. And so while it's sad to see you leave and we're losing, I'm losing a member of the renter caucus as well, I know that you'll be out there kicking butt, and I think a number of us will be down there helping to cheer you on as you continue your race for Board of Supervisors, and, and we're going to continue to, to be your cheerleaders as you continue moving through life. So just really want to appreciate everything you've brought here, appreciate that you're my vice chair, and definitely will be missed. Okay. So with that, I don't know if the executive director wants to say any words.
I would like to thank you, Paloma, Commissioner Gide, for your service. It has been an honor to work with you and to get to know you. I have learned so much from you in, in so many ways. I can't, I can't even, can't even probably accurately describe it. But your grace, your humility, and the way that you approach problems and always look for ways to acknowledge and recognize all of the elements and try to find a solution has taught me a lot, and I've learned that, a lot from you on that front, and I'm grateful for that. So I want to, again, thank you for your service to this commission and to our coast. You're a true coastal hero, and we will be back in Imperial Beach sometime soon. December, in fact.
All right. So with that, we're going to conclude our meeting. Come on, why not?
Well, if I may speak for the public, you know, the fourth branch of the commission, you know, commissioners, staff, the other staff, and the public, this is the announcement I've been dreading, and I'm sorry to hear it. I know you are going to go on and do great things, Paloma. It's been a real pleasure seeing you rise to the firmament, as I said a few months ago, you and Justin have risen to the firmament in this group here very, very quickly. And that's just an example of, of what everybody thinks of you and what your capabilities are. So I have no doubt you're in for a great future, but we're going to miss having you here or listening to us every month. But good luck and Godspeed. You're a dear.
And if I may add, Paloma, you are revolutionary, solutionary. You find solutions to problems, and that is my highest honor I used to bestow upon my students. Revolutionary and solutionary. Thank you.
All right. With that, I'd like to just thank everyone again for joining us, and I used to say Billy and the boys, but now we got Anthony and the AV crew. Thank you guys for your hard work and for making sure we are accessible to the public. And with that, we will adjourn this meeting and we'll go into closed session. So we need to report out a closed session, and so I'll turn it to our council for a report on closed session.
Thank you, Chair Cummings. The commission met in closed session, and I've received litigation information and advice, and took action on Ruby Falls Fund LLC versus Coastal Commission et al. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. That concludes our meeting. We will see you next month in Fort Bragg? No. San Diego, that's right. All right. Take care, everyone.